Okay, so I would like to open the Selectmen's Meeting Monday, June twenty ninth, two thousand fifteen, at six thirty one. And can we do the pledge allegiance? I can't open it, no.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, at six thirty, do we have any resident of public comments? Mike, if you want to do the approve the warrant?
Motion to approve payroll, payroll warrant fifteen dash fifty-three for a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve deduction warrant fifteen dash fifty-one A for twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve bill warrant fifteen dash fifty-two in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
Go ahead, Ed. Second, Ed.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve bill warrant fifteen dash fifty-three in the amount of four million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand and fifty-one cents.
Go ahead, Ed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to approve bill warrant sixteen dash oh one in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-one cents.
Second. Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it. So, we are a little bit early for appointments. Denise, can we talk about the appointments that aren't, the ones that aren't be present? Do those ones now?
The annual appointments?
So, we'll go down through the annual, annual appointments.
So, you have several lists for the annual appointments. You have the list of boards and committee members. Then you have the list of reserves from the police department. You have a list of the call firefighters, the harbor master, emergency management, constables, animal control, matrons, and lockup keepers. So, on the annual appointments, I've made some notes, you'll see to the side. On the cable TV advisory board, in your previous discussions, you've selected Ed to replace Joe on that. Same thing with community preservation. You selected Dan for that role. The council on aging, you'll see in the packet, there is a letter from the current chair of that committee. With two members not being reappointed, their bylaws do not allow someone to run for two concurrent terms. So, they have two vacancies. So, one is filling in for a new term and one is filling in a vacant, due to a vacancy. Someone resigned due to some health issues. In addition to that, the open space and trails committee, Alex Johnson, the chair, who will be here shortly to talk about the Center Street Committee, he has requested that that committee drop from seven members to five. They're having a hard time filling those seven spots, so he'd like to drop that to five. And he has asked that Fred O'Connor not be reappointed because he does not actively participate and they have somebody else that he will be recommending in a future meeting for that role.
And that'll give them five.
That will give them five, correct.
They're at five.
That is correct. And the only other, I have two other questions on here. One is the forest fire warden. It's currently vacant, but in the past, it's always been the fire chief, just by title. I would recommend that you appoint either the fire chief or firefighter to hold that spot. We really should have somebody. And lastly, I did not put on this list the building inspector, who is up for an annual appointment. Given the job posting, I'm currently in the process of conducting interviews for all three of our vacant positions. My recommendation to the board would be to reappoint Mr. Skeena for the month of July, through July thirty first, two thousand fifteen. That gives us one month to finish the interviews, have the candidate come before this board and be reappoint, and be appointed, or reappointed if you choose to stay with Mr. Skeena. But technically, as of Wednesday, we would have nobody filling in the role in conducting permits and signing off on documents.
I'd like to make two motions. We'll do one at a time. The first motion is to recommend us to appoint the fire chief, our current fire chief, Chief Lay, as the forest, what's the name of the position?
Forest Fire Warden.
Forest Fire Warden, okay. There's a second and a discussion.
I'll discuss it.
I made a motion to appoint, so let me redo the motion. I'd like to make a motion to discuss the appointment of the fire chief as the fire.
I agree with the same Joe, but can we, can we leave it open to him and are a firefighter? Just in case he doesn't want to do it and the firefighter does?
I don't believe there's anything actually to do in that role. It's just we should have, there are certain roles that I would suggest looking at over time, whether it's in our bylaws, that we need to have some of these positions that really aren't being used.
Do you know if he wants that, or does he want to appoint somebody else in his place?
I actually hadn't spoken to him. It was always the fire chief, but when he was appointed fire chief, it was never, it was never appointed to him.
Let him do it and if he doesn't, maybe he can find someone, would that be okay?
Well, today's June twenty ninth. We have to have this wrapped up by July first.
Well, it's vacant currently. If you want to, if you want to take that off, we can take that off and we can.
Leave it with the fire chief.
Okay.
Well then, all right.
So, I'll second it.
Okay.
So, is my motion still valid?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Not on that, but on some of the appointments.
Aye. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I had, I had one that I think might have got missed and maybe it's just me. The zoning board of appeals, I believe Michael Caves on that board, isn't he?
But not everybody is up in two thousand sixteen. So, these are only the people that expire tomorrow.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed.
Just a couple of things that I have concern over. You sent out messages to these, some of these people. We have paperwork we get back, board of registrars, no response from those people. Cable TV advisory board, no response. No response from the finance board. No response from the recreation. No response from the zoning board.
Who did respond?
I emailed the chairs of all the committees. You have the responses in here of the committees that did respond. Those that didn't, I just made a note that they did not.
Are they? How can we reappoint these if they're not, if they haven't indicated that they want to continue? I just want to wrap a discussion. I know they're important. But you would think that if these people were really that interested in continuing on these different boards, that they would have, they would have responded unless they didn't get the paperwork back from the chairman of the committee.
That's what I would guess, is the chair or whomever the email went to did not forward it to the rest of their board members asking them. Is what my guess would be. So, anybody that was a standing board member, I did list on there to reappoint because I didn't hear from anyone to say they did not want to continue in that role, even if I didn't hear from the chair.
That way, negative affirmation. If we don't hear from somebody, then we reappoint and then if they don't want to be on it, they resign.
Correct. I will say, there was some question on the affordable housing committee with Bruce Adams.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up. I believe Bruce has moved out of town.
He has moved out of town, but there's nothing to prohibit appointed people from living out of town. He was originally going to step down from this committee.
That's what I was going to bring up.
But I've spoken with him. He would like to continue until the two new members who are being, who are on the list to be appointed, are broken in and transitioned and then he will step down at a further time. So, he has asked to be reappointed for this time so that he can help transition that group.
Well, he's certainly been an asset on that committee and probably should, should continue until, until he decides to step down.
I've also had, I've, just so you know, anything that's listed as vacant has been on our website, advertising these vacancies, if anyone's interested. I did receive a letter of interest for the stormwater management committee from a gentleman, but I just received it this morning. So, he is not able to come in until July twenty seventh. So, at that point, we'll have him on there to be appointed. But we actually have nobody on the stormwater management committee.
I think, in addition to that, I think you should have him come in.
He will be coming in. Yeah, but that's, I had him on for the next meeting. He can't make it. So, I have it on the July twenty-seventh meeting and he'll come before you.
Okay, so Fred O'Connor, are we going to let, we're going to let that go? Are we going to make a, I'll make a motion that because he hasn't been shown that we don't reappoint him?
Yes, and I mean, you could certainly wait if you wanted to when Alex Johnson comes here. I can just read you his email that he just sent me. If there, if the board's willing to reduce to five, then Fred should probably be pulled as I don't believe he wants to be involved. We have another person who's willing to take the spot, but not yet confirmed. So, that was based on the chair.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we drop Fred O'Connor and we will make it a five-member board and we will wait for the new appointment to come in.
That's perfect.
So, the reconfiguration of these boards, does not require bylaw change?
No.
Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint the current building inspector, Pat Skeena, for a period of thirty days effective July first until July thirty first, while we are in the hiring process or evaluation of candidates for the position.
Anyone wants a second, Ed?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, Mr. Skeena has also applied for the position.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this point, Denise, can we do, talking about that subject, can we do an overlay of what's, no names, what's in front of us?
Do you want to do that now or do you want to do the rest of the appointments and then we can come back to that? That's fine.
Yeah, we might as well.
So, for the building inspector position, and again, all three positions, I am interviewing all week. We have three candidates for the building inspector. I have about ten for the custodian and about fifteen for the administrative assistant position. From that initial resumes, I've narrowed it down to who I will be interviewing. I think it's five custodian, nine administrative assistant. And I will interview the two other than Mr. Skeena who have applied for the building inspector.
Okay, so moving on with the appointments.
Just, I have a question. Dan, you're staying on the zoning board, correct?
If you guys reappoint me, I am.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. McDonald on the zoning board for your turn.
I'll second that.
Can I just, are you doing them all individually?
No, just, just.
Just that one?
Just that one, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, I second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Mike, we don't give you a choice, yes, Dan.
So, I was under the assumption we're going to do them all.
You could do each group if you wanted. You could do them individually or you could just, you could just appoint the rest.
I don't mean to confuse, just as a courtesy, if they're not here, we, you do a whole group. But if someone is here, physically dance here, we owe the courtesy of saying thank you for, you know, this. Appreciate that. We definitely want to appoint you.
Thank me later.
I will just make mention of one more item. The assistant harbor masters that are listed, and I don't know Bill based on our previous discussions. The police chief recommends the harbor master and the one assistant harbor master. Somewhere along the line, the board has appointed additional assistant harbor masters. But at the July thirteenth meeting, we will have a discussion with the harbor master and assistants to discuss some needs and some issues. The gentleman who has been facilitating much of the harbor master work is not an assistant harbor master. So, I don't know if you want to appoint the two assistants that have been assistant harbor masters or?
I would like to, I would definitely like to leave the situation the way it is, appoint them there now and then on the thirteenth, if we're going to change things around, we'll change it around on the thirteenth. So, that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, you want to just, you want to vote it completely now or do you want to just vote it until the?
I'm just doing the harbor master because we have.
Until the thirteenth.
Right. So, any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, I did miss this one and I'd like to make a motion because Mike is here to appoint Michael Wood as an alternate on the zoning board, if you'll so accept it.
I think they gave me a choice. I think they asked me to stay until they put him on.
Good, good. Will you accept it?
Sure. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, just to be clear, those that, no, no response, we're going to reappoint. For some reason, somebody says, well, I didn't respond, but I don't want to be on, they'll have to resign.
Well, I will, once the appointments, I will actually send everybody a reappointment letter because everyone will have to be sworn in again. So, I guess at that point, last year, I don't believe they received anything if they were reappointed. So, there was some confusion last year. But I will send everyone a reappointment letter.
And just for knowledge, there's, I know there's a timeframe that they have to be sworn in by?
Before their first meeting.
I thought there was a timeframe, so many days that they, and then the appointment became null and void. Are you familiar with that?
No. They just can't take any action as a committee member until they're sworn in.
Okay, so we done through, is everyone done with their?
Yep.
So, we're going to go ahead and vote on the appointments that has presented to us from Denise. Do I have a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Any, one second? Second, Ed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Unanimous.
So, I see that the chief is here.
Can we just, I'm sorry, before we get, can we just finish the, you have the police and fire appointments as well? Do you want to just take care of those?
Will those be separate from these ones?
Yes, because they are on separate lists. So, you should at least go through there. The fire chief presented his reappointment list. He has his deputy and then the central station and south. I did send a revision, Mike, I don't know if you received it today. I printed it out for Bill and Ed. There was one addition today to the appointment list. So, I had emailed that sometime this afternoon. Okay.
Yeah.
So, if you want to vote on that.
So, I'll make them, I'll make a motion that we accept the fire department's yearly appointments as presented by the fire chief, Robert Lay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
And then we'll move on to the police department, presented from Robert J. Homelwitz, chief, his list of annual appointments.
So, you have two pages for him. One with reserves, lockup keepers and matrons, and one with the harbor master, emergency management, constables, and animal control.
So, can I get a motion to accept them?
We'll take them all, all of them at once. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Did you make the motion? You made the motion.
Aye.
That's all set.
Okay.
So, now we are on to six forty-five, appointment of Alexander E. Dottro of Linfield as a full-time police officer patrolman effective July first, two thousand fifteen. Hello, chief, how you doing?
Good, good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
McDonald, how you doing?
I'd like to start by congratulating the new members. I haven't been here before you yet. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Just give you a little history on the full-time appointments for the town. For the last twenty-five years, we've been in the habit of hiring full-time officers from our reserve list, with the part-time reserve offices. It's worked out very well. Since my appointment to chief in two thousand eight, I've hired or recommended for appointment the last five offices. Mr. Dodo will be the sixth. I think we're doing something right. As you all aware, we were voted the safest community in Massachusetts out of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. So, whatever we're doing is working. Normally, when we have a full-time opening, I go through a very extensive hiring process. First, I post the job, then I do a written examination from, with an outside agency comes in and administers the test. Then I do an oral review board, usually comprised by three ranking officers from outside agencies, outside police departments that don't know any of the candidates. And then usually the third phase is an interview with myself and the deputy. And we go over, because they're all in-house, we have their records. We go over years of service, education, specialized training, et cetera. And then I take the top score candidate for the job. Well, in this particular case, this time, as you're aware, at town meeting, we were approved for a new full-time officer July first. But there was a stipulation that it had, the officer had to be full-time academy trained. Well, Officer Dodo was our only reserve that had the full-time academy, so I didn't have to go through a process. He has an impeccable record. He comes highly recommended. I believe you've seen his resume. His former job up to a couple, a month or two ago was Massport Police in Boston. If you have any questions for him, he'll be happy to answer them. And he would be, Alexander Dodo would be my recommendation for appointment for the full-time position.
Well, I would like to say that number one, touching on what you discussed with, is it wasn't this board that made that stipulation, it was the prior board, but, and I want the other reserves in the department to realize that we weren't not trying to put them forward or what have you. We just had a new criteria to try and get the best we can and get the best criteria with an officer. So, I know there was a lot of people that were up for the position. They could have had the position, but they didn't have the training. There wasn't anything that, I can speak for myself, that we were trying to not take them. So, I mean, hopefully they get the training and they can come back before us and when another position comes up, then we can hire them.
But we actually have two reserve officers now in light of, you know, how this happened. They want to put themselves through the full-time academy.
Right, and it's kind of an incentive to get them to move forward, which, you know, the highway department, they have to get all their licenses and, you know, and different equipment they've got to run or what have you. So, I think it's definitely going to be a plus for the town. And I think this gentleman here has done his work and he deserves where he's sitting tonight and because of that. Did you have any you wanted to say to the board or?
It'll be an honor and a pleasure to work here in Groveland for the short time that I've been here now. I, I really love being here and working here. Like, like, you know, I grew up in Linfield, kind of similar community to Groveland. So, I, you know, I think I'll be a good addition to the department and the community.
Good. So, I'll ask the board if someone wants to make a motion to accept this appointment?
I'll make the motion to accept the appointment.
Does someone want a second?
Second.
Second, Ed? And any further discussion?
I want to ask some questions. I wasn't on the previous board, obviously, but this isn't an expansion of payroll. My understanding was it was you, the full-time position would take the place of the reservists or auxiliary police officers. Is that true?
Right, well, we currently have.
It's not an expansion of the payroll. It's kind of a.
Correct.
Some other.
Well, we have, currently have two full-time positions open, basically eighty hours a week that we're filling with reserve offices. This position would cut that in half. And what we did at the, prior to town meeting and then what was approved at town meeting is money was taken out of my other wages account, which pays the reserve offices, and put into the full-time account. It's, it's a slight increase, but minimal.
Terms of what, benefits?
Well, yes, you have to, you know, benefits and minor increase in pay. But Denise could probably explain better on the actual numbers. I don't have them in front of me.
Well, if there's eighty hours, why wouldn't you get two, two full-timers? It just doesn't, it's not convenient to do that?
I don't think the town would be ready to accept that at this time.
Well, who knows? But what's the difference between a full-time academy-trained officer and one that isn't? I mean, is there a big difference?
Well, you're talking approximately.
In terms of safety, quality, education? I mean, what do you, what do you get with that? I'm ignorant on that subject.
Well, just the training in itself, the academy, and don't quote me on the hours, but it's approximately three hundred hours for the reserve academy, where it's close to eight hundred hours for the full-time academy. An officer is going full-time, five to six months.
So, you get a, you get somebody that's more professional. They're putting situations, put to the test and you get a better officer.
Like, as you just stated, you weren't here for the previous board, but the conversation was at the time was that we had reserves on at some times the hour of the night or whatever. They weren't qualified, not, they were not a hundred percent qualified, I should say, or.
Well, the level of training.
Right, the level of training wasn't there and we needed to get someone with a different level of training. So, we decided to go ahead this route and get another full-time officer to cover it, not have so many reserves on one given shift.
I prefer full-timers to part-timers, you know, you're just more invested in.
That's part of it, right.
More invested in the job and the community and, you know.
Yeah, reserves do a great job. They, they do. They work nights, weekends, holidays. They sacrifice. They get called last minute for shifts. But again, the, the level of training, the commitment, you know, it's definitely more desirable of a full-time officer.
One, one big thing is it's, it, history, the academy-trained, it's cut down on some of the lawsuits against the police officers across the state after they've been academy-trained.
Well, and the board, the reason the board decided to put the stipulation for academy-trained, so regardless of who they hired, they would have had to go to the academy. But then they would have been without the officer for five or six months and then they would have had to backfill that with overtime and other reserves. So, the reason they put the stipulation in initially was so that we weren't going to go five months sending someone to the academy. So that if we could have someone academy-trained initially, that that's what their preference was.
One more question, and I won't belabor this, but we're appointing or reappointing reservists. So, hiring a new full-timer, would that cut down on the number of reservists? So, you just leave them on a list, how does that work?
Well, we normally run approximately twelve reserves and we're down to, I believe, eleven right now. And one of them is a retiree that only does details. So, we're down to ten reserves. And I feel that for now, we'll probably be a good number with Alex coming on full-time. But one of the problems we run into with reserves is they all have full-time jobs, so the majority of them. So, you could go, you could have an open shift and go down the whole list of ten to twelve officers to try to fill a shift. And that's one of the benefits of a full-time officer, the less open shifts. You know, as it is, you're always going to have vacation, holidays, comp time, where the officers have time off and we have to fill the shifts. But on top of that, you're trying to, we're trying to fill eighty hours, two full-time rotations, plus all that extra time. So, it's, it's been tough and this is going to help considerably.
All right, so, do we have any more discussion?
I have a question. Your qualifications are excellent and I very much appreciate your commitment to Groveland. Based on when you graduated from high school, I can guess how old you are. My, my question to you is, and this is not anything negative, but just a curiosity. I noticed that you had two full-time positions, one at Massport and one at Wentworth. Was there a particular set of circumstances that led you to move on to other opportunities? Because they were both short tenures.
Wentworth was a college police department. It's more of a stepping stone, so I did my time there. As I was working there, I was looking for other jobs. Massport came about. I applied there, went through the process with them, got there. Not what I expected, not really what I was looking for, very non-traditional police work. I felt the twenty-six-week police academy that I went through and the training that I went through, I wasn't really applying it there. And I think working in a city or town. And I think working in a city or town like Groveland, my training and qualifications are more applicable here.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it.
Alex said to me that he felt more like a security guard at Massport, it wasn't, you know, real traditional police work.
Yeah, that's understandable.
What's that?
We got state police too there, so that's, that's why, they do mostly port work. It's tough, I wouldn't wanna mess with some of the Southie boys, though.
Move the question.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so, all discussions are set? Also, we will vote to approve this officer, all in favor?
Aye. You're unanimous?
All set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good night, thank you.
Congratulations. So now it's seven o'clock, and we have Alex Johnson, Senate Street Committee discussion. I see Alex is out in the audience.
And he's a lot older.
Every day, Joe, every day.
Thank you.
I don't know if you were here when we just discussed about making it a five-member-
I wasn't, but I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there was one person in there that you, someone had made a suggestion that they didn't show, and we're gonna turn around and make it a five-member, you had someone possibly in mind to fill that other position?
Yeah, we may be coming back to you with another appointment.
Yes, so they chose not to re-appoint Fred, and make the board seven to five.
So, we'll try to make the explanation brief, so this is a discussion, a dialogue that had started with the past board, I think last spring of two thousand and fourteen, maybe, summer two thousand and fourteen. I think when we, when we as a town moved to purchase the bussing property, there was a concern, obviously, and I think everybody's recognized it, we did not purchase the bussing property with CPA funds, it was a decision made to purchase it with a bond, and the decision was made to keep it unrestricted. Which was fine, because it certainly gives the town control of the land, which again, first and foremost was the priority, to get control of it and preserve it for an aquifer standpoint. But the other side of it is it's unrestricted, so we certainly could do a myriad of things with it, and I think people were concerned off the bat that, that there might be a lot of requests, what to do with the property. And I think everybody will recognize it's a lot of money that we spent on the property, and so the question was, or at least the proposal was, if we're gonna, if we as a town are gonna spend this much on the property, and if we have the option to do something down the road, would it make sense to try to come up with a way that would harness the broader view of the town, try to get a consensus on what types of thing or things the town would like to do with the property in the long term, and try to develop a long-term plan? So that we can be thoughtful about it, so we can get a bunch of different perspectives involved, consider all the options that I think we can gather and conceive, try to give ourselves a lengthy runway, because I think we're not desperate to do something with the land up front, but to do it in a thoughtful way that we'll look back fifteen years from now and say, you know, we as a community, and say, that was the right decision, we did that in the right way. And again, I recognize the fact that there's a whole bunch of ideas out there, from, from doing nothing, all the way to athletic fields, to rental housing, to industrial sale property, to gun ranges, and everything in between. And so, and so the idea here was to create a committee that effectively would include both representatives of a number of committees, because certainly there are some perspectives that are required as you're going through this process, and considering what to do with a property like this, you'd want those committees involved. But then there's also the idea of, sort of what we've tagged citizen-at-large, but the idea being, you know, let's not just pull from existing committees, let's also try to pull some people that are unaffiliated with current town committees, and might give you that broader perspective. And I think as Joe and I talked, sorry, Dan and I talked about this at one point, but the idea was, you know, if I can't, or if we as a town can't find enough people on this committee that everybody doesn't agree, I think the idea would be to get a committee that does not all agree on the approach, and doesn't necessarily all agree on what the right answer is, and that would have to take the time to work through, develop a plan for the board of selectmen, and put that forward for the board of selectmen to consider adopting, acting on, et cetera. You know, that would at least give us a more well-rounded, fundamentally thought-out approach. So, so the document I handed you just sort of lays out, again, the mission statement, the concept of the committee, some of the parameters around the committee, some ideas around membership committee. I have, or had at one point, identified, I'd say, sixty or eighty percent of the committee, proposed committee members. I've taken the names off, because frankly, some of them had accepted so long ago at this point, that I didn't want to assume they're ready to commit again now, but certainly the idea would be if we want to move forward with this, if the new committee, if the new board wants to move forward, the idea would be certainly to go back to those people first, say, do you still wanna do this, and then we've got a couple more slots we've gotta fill. And I would put out there the same thing I put out to the prior board, which is, you know, I, I had to call around and get a lot of ideas from people about who to ask, because I don't know everybody in town, and I didn't want to just ask people I know. But the idea with the last board was, if you all have suggestions of people that you think could fill various spots on this, that certainly would help to round it out as well, because I don't want the names to be coming from me or just people I know. So, with that, I, that's sort of the general overview, I'd open it up to questions, comments, concerns, thoughts.
Well, as you probably know, and I'm, I'll still stick with it, I would like to see out of that land, the front half of it, or the front piece of it, street lots, turn around somehow, if we could turn around and get our debt load down, possibly some of the commercial lots. I would like personally, I'm only speaking of me, you know, I would like to see that we got the rail trail passed, somehow tie the rail trail in, and maybe turn around and use the back piece of that property for like an indoor facility, like sports facility, concerts, or whatever, I mean, there's a lot of different, like you say, a lot of different plans and what have you, but I would like to see it try to generate money as well. So, yeah, I'm on board, and I would like to see the committee, like you said, have a diverse group of people involved, and that would give a good steer look at it, and I think we could maybe do something with it. I don't know if anyone else has anything they wanna say?
I concur with that, I just, I just wanted, I just noticed, you don't have anybody from, like, the affordable housing committee, or the recreation on this?
So, we certainly could do that, I think part of the idea was, at least at the outset, was to try to, you know, affordable housing could be viewed as a specific interest for the property, right? Recreation could be viewed as a specific interest for the property, while those inputs would be really critical, and frankly, they are critical, I didn't want to just assume that we wanted to go that route on day one. Now, that said, affordable housing and recreation are two topics that get bandied around enough in this town that maybe it's worth including those two explicitly, to make sure we've covered those bases at the outset, because I think most people probably would agree that that, there's enough discussion about those two particular topics. Again, with no guarantee that either one necessarily is the right answer, but that at least that would make sure those interests are considered.
Why would you include conservation and open space and trails, but not others?
Well, so the open space is on there because we essentially spearheaded the purchase, and wanted to make sure that ultimately, at the end of the day, the main goal of the purchase was to protect the aquifer. So really, the goal was to make sure that that mission had been maintained throughout this process, and that was really the only driver there. Conservation, similarly, there are some sensitive areas at the outskirts of that property, and so depending on what we decided to do, it felt important to be connected to Concom concerns, certainly around the wetlands at the outset, outside of the property. If we're developing something, or selling something, or building something, given the, given what we're talking about in terms of sensitivity of the property, wanted to make sure we had included that. So that was the driver of those.
I spearheaded the opposition to buying that in the interest of the taxpayers, so my concern is conservation and open space, from my perspective, hasn't historically cared about the taxes in town, so I'd like to see some more conservative minds on that committee, and some people with some business backgrounds. So that's my agenda on this issue, I, with Bill on, you know, you need to look at a piece of that and make it profitable so that it pays for itself. So we're not just going back to town meeting with ten signatures on a warrant, and fifty or sixty people voting on special interest, so I do have some concerns about, you put yourself number one and two in that, in that list of thirteen, and I'd rather see some business minds in there, and recreation, certainly, it was proposed at that town meeting two years ago, they had the big billboard of the mega sports complex as a proposal, and somehow they got, they're in afterthoughts. I think recreation absolutely should be on there. Affordable housing has complained that nothing's been done in thirteen years, maybe something could be done, so why can't they have a place at the table? And I'd like to know, you know, I'd like to see some business interests represented in town, this town doesn't have a business group that's organized to represent businesses in town, but I, you know, the top of the list here is conservation people, so, you know, if we're gonna come up with a committee, you know, again, I, I, fine, we could have a committee, but if it's not a balanced committee, I can predict your, that your recommendations will be slanted towards open space, and rail trails, and connect to this, that, the other, that's all wonderful, but who's gonna pay the bill at the end of the day, and you're gonna have the right minds on that committee with financial backgrounds, business backgrounds, to even come up with the ideas.
I don't think that your, your list here is weighted, number one being the most important. I think it's just a list of people that you have on plan now, with your other to-be-determined to be filled in, right? I think you want diversity on this, so you get an overview of what the town represents, not what your board represents, am I correct there?
Correct, that was sort of the intent of having so many of those open spaces.
I get it. So, are you looking to put this group together, and then come back to us with recommendations on what you think should be done based on your group's decision?
So it's been a little iterative, because we haven't been able to get it to a stage where we can start, but the idea would be-
Ideally, that's what you would like to do.
Ideally, we would, we would get, I think the way the process works is, we would get the willingness to go forward with this idea, I'd go back, finish putting names together, which frankly, I'd like to get from you guys, come back to you with the list of names, get you guys to appoint the committee, adopt the general mission of the committee, send us off, and essentially have a long-range, you know, plan. It's not gonna happen in four months, it's not gonna happen in eight months, it's probably gonna take a couple of years, because frankly, there's, you gotta have some time for people to come up with ideas and submit ideas, and you gotta have some time to do things like surveys, and visit, you know, the various parts of the community, and really get the feedback that you need across the town. And so, you know, whether that involves some periodic update to the board, you know, every couple of times a year that says, hey, this is where we are, this is what we've done, this is what we haven't done, this is where our thoughts are right now, sort of whatever your mandate is, but that would be the idea, with the idea, that at some point, we'd have a written plan that we'd bring back to the board, whether that's four months down the road, or two and a half years down the road, that says, okay, we've spent all this time and energy, we think we've got what the town wants-
Encompassing some business, encompassing some affordable housing, whatever the-
Whatever everybody wants.
So, Alex-
Yes.
My, my thing would be, you have some people in mind already, that you've talked to, and you might be able to go back and talk to again, can you guys get together and discuss getting more members to, for the board? You know, start with the people you have, and try and get some business people involved, and try and, you guys try to work as well as us, we're asking us for help, we'll give you the help you need, but I'm trying to use the people you already have in place to try and maybe just have a meeting and say, hey, what kind of business we can go to, we can write them a letter, you know, see if they wanna be on the committee, you know what I'm trying to say? Kind of use your beginning board to try and get to the real board.
And just, and, and, yes, but, but I do wanna be sensitive to Dan's point, and that is, so I don't want-
I clearly understand what you're saying.
Me and a group of my-
Right.
-cronies, for lack of a better term.
Piers, piers.
Piers, that's right.
I'd like to break it down differently.
Yes.
If you can hear me out.
Please.
I'd like you to decide, and again, you carve it up into three parts, could be four, could be twenty, but I see three. I say you gotta protect turtle land, right? So nobody ought to use that, stay out, keep people out of there, some places you shouldn't even be walking through.
Mm-hmm.
All right, identify the sanctuary, that you got an area that's potential, has a potential for recreational use, that might be open trails, might be the movie theater, or the concert venue, or the sports complex, right? Okay? I think you need to draw the lines, and then there's a third spot I see as commercial development. I think a more efficient way of handling this project, 'cause it's gonna give everyone a popsicle headache, and you're gonna get conflicting interests, so to avoid the conflict at the table, if you could draw those lines, I'd rather see, you know, three different committees of specialists. Once you draw the lines in the sand over there and say, this is gonna be the sanctuary, this is gonna be our recreational use area, then put all the conservation people and the recreation people on one project, and then get all the business people to develop the, the commercial location that we can generate some revenue for. Otherwise, you're just gonna have a rope and a tug of war going on, I don't think it's gonna work.
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Who's gonna draw the lines? I don't think he's, I don't think-
We already have the lines, I think, and, and, and I could use some help on it, but I, I have, I have the-
Right, but I think that's putting the cart before the horse, I think we need the committee together first.
No, 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 all the lines were drawn on the proposed development, okay, for that white birch place there, you call it strawberry fields, right? But all the lines were drawn there as to where the wetlands are, where it could be developed for residential housing, or that plan, that, that, all of that groundwork was already done. All you gotta do is look at those plans, and you know what's, you could build on, and what you can't build on, that was already worked its way through a process, and it took about ten years, I got a copy of that at my house, you know, all of those tests were done and everything, so if you separate those areas, you know, otherwise, if I'm a conservation guy, I'm gonna say, hey, all of it's conservation, or ninety-nine percent, are you gonna argue over where the line in the sand is? You know, that's how I see it played out.
And Dan, I, with all due respect, I don't know if we have enough information to do that, I think you're, you're talking about proposing or adopting as a town an existing plan that was proposed by a developer, previously.
No, 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 I'm saying using those plans as the way you can draw the lines.
Right, but if you, if you carve out the, the land that is clearly conservation-restricted or turtle land, right, then what you're left with is a-
Off limits.
It's off limits, but then what you're left with is a big piece of developable land, which frankly, could be split any number of ways, and, you know, whether you split it fifty-fifty between industrial or commercial and, and, you know, recreational, or fifty-fifty between industrial and commercial, and decide you don't want any residential, recreational, I don't think we're in a position to necessarily know what that split is or to cut that off. And so I, I just, again, I wouldn't be, wanna be premature and assume that that's the right answer. Now, the other thing I wanna throw out there, I think some of them mentioned it, but there is, obviously, there are other ways to raise revenue for the property, I'm not the best entrepreneur out there, and so I wouldn't wanna assume that there's not a proposal that somebody could put forward that would raise revenue for the property, that would offset some of that cost, in a way that would give you other options as well, right? And I assume that your bigger concern is, is frankly, the impact on the taxes, and less so how it's mitigated. So I assume if somebody were to put some other proposal forward, again, the concert venue idea, just to throw an idea out there, right? And somehow that raised enough rent and revenue that you never had to sell off and, and commit to the front of the property, maybe people would be open to that, right? And I just, I don't wanna assume at this point that we as a town, certainly not me, know what that answer is, or know-
My preference would be to have an industrial park there or some sort, and to do it groundly, so that we may take control over it, never sell it.
And Dan, and Dan, I'm-
And, and-
You're, you're the selectman, so I will defer to you-
Bust the numbers, start with the answer, work backwards, and figure out what it would take to pay for it. Make it free.
I'm, I'm just saying, Dan, if I wanna be involved, all I wanna, I just wanna try to do it in a way that's, that's helpful and gets-
But, well, we set you loose with this committee, is it gonna come back two years later, and it's, you know, what is this?
Well, if it comes back two years later, hopefully it would have some information behind it. Hopefully I haven't spent two years, you know, but anyway, I don't wanna waste a lot of your time, but I-
I think what Alex is trying-
Well, the other thing is, you know, Bill is, it wasn't, it wasn't CPA financed, so it's not CPA-controlled.
It's a good thing it isn't, 'cause now we can do something with it, otherwise we couldn't do anything with it.
So the board of selectmen has-
Right.
Control over it, and the town- Control over it and the, the town legislature, the people. So I don't, I'm cautious about delegating authority to a board if we're gonna stack them with, you know.
But the.
What, what, what I call the, the tree huggers in town, 'cause the tree huggers aren't paying all the bills.
The point is, is Alex is gonna come back before us with this committee and we're gonna have the say, we like it or we don't like it, am I correct? That's, we're gonna have the say, ultimate say is gonna be, yeah, so you're gonna come in with this committee.
If you don't like the people.
You don't like the people, we have the same.
Then you don't, then you don't appoint us, and then you don't find yourself two years down the road.
I, I want to, and again, it's, I, I want to, but it sounds like I'm getting resistance from, uh, the board here. Oh, here we go. They're getting resistance that, you know, i- if we started off with just a blank canvas without any direction, then we're gonna get back anything. All right? So I would like, if we're gonna make a charge here, you have a mission statement, if whatever plan you come up with. It has to be self-sufficient.
Correct.
If this Board of Selectmen can do that, then that'd set you loose and say, come up with the plan, but it needs to be self-sufficient. And I'd like to see it ultimately pay for that note, that bond, that three-point-six-million-dollar bill that we're all gonna pay.
All right, Dan, I think we need, Denise wanted to talk to Joe.
No, I was just gonna say that the, so Alex's plan was to come back in about September with his nominees for appointment. At that point, the board would decide to appoint or not appoint. In addition, this group has to decide what the charge of that committee is. So at that point, you would define what you want that committee to do. What avenues you want it to pursue, that's something that this board could decide.
Joe, you wanted to. Yeah, I, just to reiterate that, it shouldn't be that difficult to put together a committee. You can operate without a charge. You can go out and recruit people, get them interested, tell them what they're, you know, what this is all about. You can even have a meeting, just take minutes. And when you get all those people together, you come to us, we either approve or not approve that body. And then we'll figure out what the charge is, which will be probably very focused and limited. We did it with the Government Advisory Council. We can do it here. Um, I, I have a, a couple of things. You have seven, um, boards and commissions represented. I think if you added, if you offered the opportunity to the affordable housing and recreation, that would bring in nine.
Mm-hmm.
And I am very much in favor of dissenting voices. We had those on the Government Advisory Council, even people that didn't even like the idea. So I would, for example, rec strongly hope that Dan McDonald or Ed, perhaps, would be the Board of Selectmen member of this board. I can also say in terms of balance, based on conversations that I've watched, tapes, minutes that I've read. And meetings that I've attended, I can tell you that the Board of Selectmen, shoot me if I'm speaking for all of you, the Finance Board especially. Capital Improvement Committee would be strongly what I would consider dissenting voices, people and committees and. Members of those committees that would be very strongly in favor of developing that land and trying to recoup some tax money. In fact, I'm in favor of that. When I ran two times ago, I had, you know, proposed the idea of a conservation sub- subdivision. So, so I think we're gonna have the balance, but you're right, it's all going to be self-evident when you come to us and say, I'm done with the recruiting. Here are the people that I have, will you approve it, yes or no? And then if we do, then we can give you a charge.
And then, and then from there.
Really simple.
And then from there, your, your committee would go sit down and you'd talk about some ideas and what have you. The only thing that I would like to add to it is on the, on the, uh, to be determines, if we can find some local businesses that wanna be involved as well. Local, people that own local businesses that would wanna be involved. I mean. Hopefully they would come out, hopefully maybe someone from Chester then.
All five of them.
You know?
And I'd be all for that. I, I just, I need suggestions and I need to know, does it matter, do they have to be residents of the town, or can they be?
I think they would be.
Some prominent, prominent businessmen, uh, and there's, and there's certainly some that have been, been very successful here. And also some that have had problems with some of the boards, uh, with permitting processes and that stuff. One of the places you can start is probably some of the businesses, uh, that are down in that area, uh, close proximity, uh.
Whether, whether they're residents or not, they're invested in the town of Groveland, so to me it matters not.
I just, I just wanna get a distinction.
If they have a business located in town, I think they should have a say.
That's good, that would be a good qualification, I agree.
What I'm saying, if you can get one of them even to be on the board or to be involved in the dialogue, that would make sense. But, um, it's, we're starting to burn up time here, and I'm not trying to cut your short.
It's fine, I just, I wanna be sensitive to the fact that if I'm asking people to volunteer, 'cause it's hard to get volunteers in this town. That I'm at least asking them that it's your will that I move forward with this, and that I don't wanna, obviously, I don't wanna waste your time, I don't wanna waste their time.
You can operate as an ad hoc committee, in other words, you can hold meetings and just to get, you know, recruiting done.
And Joe, Joe, with all due respect, I don't wanna go too far down this road until you guys have bought off on this.
So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion as the chair, and my motion is gonna be that Alex Johnson will reconvene again with a. Uh, to try and come up with a committee for the, um, Senate Street Property Greenway Committee.
With actual members.
With members, and he will take, and he will try to include the rec, affordable housing. And as many local businesses or anyone with business sense savvy on that committee.
In addition to that, that list, that's already.
Right, the list that's here.
Yep.
Come back before us, we'll try to come up with ideas as well for you. And come back before us with that committee and then we'll discuss it, hopefully approve them, and then we can move on to the next step.
Will you accept a friendly amendment?
Go ahead, friendly amendment.
You might. Whatever timeframe that is suitable, sooner rather than later. It doesn't have to be September. If it is September, that's fine, if you can come in in August, that's fine.
Okay.
Do you accept that?
I accept the amendment, yeah. Any, um, anyone wanna second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And we'll second it, and any more discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Alex, very well, done.
Okay, so at seven fifteen, which we're running late, we have the Finance Board coming before us.
I'll go check on them. They have a meeting in the other room.
You want something else?
If I can, it's gonna be a long discussion, seven thirty-five is a long discussion. What's that?
So the Finance Board's only scheduled for twenty minutes.
Right. Joe, while we're waiting, do you wanna do the liaison policy? Is that gonna take a long timer?
No, no, I, um, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and do that then. Um, I would ask the board to consider adopting another policy for the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the concept of liaison is a, is a kind of a unique situation for us as a five-member board. It seems to be customary. Everywhere I've looked, where there's a five-member board, they have liaisons. And my only concern is that we, we don't misinterpret what that means. We, we don't wanna be in a position where we interfere with boards. Or we, uh, influence boards in any way. So I looked up a, a couple of different, uh. Policies out there, and this one was the one that I thought was generic enough and soft enough that kinda got the message as to what a liaison is. So I would request that you take a look at it and consider adopting this or something like this, basically what this is. And I'll read it, uh, so the public understands the assignments. Lia- liaison assignments are generally made by the Chairman of the Board as soon as practical after the annual town election. Uh, there's some other language there about how soon, and then it is requested that each committee board, committee or board which has been assigned a selectmen as a liaison. Include the Board of Selectmen liaison in the distribution of all general meeting correspondence. So in other words, if I am the liaison for the zoning board, which I am, then I would be receiving minutes, meeting agenda, agendas and so forth. This will make for a more effective liaison assignment. Each committee board which has an assigned liaison should use that person as the final point of contact to the Board of Selectmen. Then we have a, some language here about temporary assignments. The Chairman shall appoint a liaison, that's you, Bill, to each ad hoc committee created by the board. The Chairman may also make temporary liaison assignments to other committees. But here's the most important part, the expectations. What, what is the liaison? Each board member will maintain some level of communication with each committee or board to which he or she is assigned. Attendance at every meeting is not required. However, regular updates to the full board are expected. It is especially important to keep board colleagues informed of critical issues. And liaisons are encouraged to invite committee and board members to report to the full board. So if I attend a zoning board meeting, there's a critical issue, I probably would take those minutes, ask the Chair to put it on the agenda. Discuss what the critical issue is, and certainly the Chair would, or through the Chair, I can extend an invitation to the zoning board member or members. Or the Chair to come in and talk about those critical issues. It's just a way of elevating issues, so they don't stay kind of boxed into individual committees. It is not the responsibility of the liaison to report Board of Selectmen activities to assigned committees and boards. And the last piece, which is very important, the Board of Selectmen liaison is not considered a member of each assigned committee or board. He or she should not actively participate in meetings unless invited to do so, as needed to provide or obtain information and feedback. So as Denise had mentioned the last time, we looked at this, um, you know, based on her experience with small government. The liaison basically is just an extra pair of eyes and ears, uh, with committees and boards. It's a light touch. I know that the way that I would serve is if I'm invited, I will go to a meeting, there's something critical that I see on TV or read in a minute. Then I certainly will, will, will bring that to the board. But most of my service will be by examining minutes and meeting, uh, minutes, uh, that are, especially minutes and agendas that are sent to me. That's, just a little bit of a guideline, just for safety.
I, I have some comments. The town of Groveland is, it's a, we're a small town. We're not like some of these other places that you have mentioned here. I, I think what you're trying to do here is add a lo- a layer of bureaucracy that's not needed in this day and age. Uh, you mentioned in your paperwork, you mentioned that each board or committee that's assigned a liaison. Include the liaison in a general meeting correspondence, meeting agendas and minutes. Meeting agendas are posted outside the city clerk's, uh, town clerk's office, most of them are available online. Minutes of the meeting are, are available for the asking, it's all public information, some are available online. Most of these meetings are on cable TV. You mentioned, in fact, uh, regular updates to the full board are expected. It's important to keep board colleagues informed of critical issues. Any board member can attend any meeting of any of these other boards, they're all public meetings. Uh, we should be able to pick up on these critical issues by reading the minutes and reading the agendas. Uh, I, I don't think a liaison is necessary, I, I, I can't support it, I, I think it's a waste of time and energy. And, and I don't believe that majority of these committees, uh, boards really want one. Now, I, I appreciate all the work that you've done, but I, I, at this time, I can't support it, I think it's not needed.
It's fine.
Anyone else have any comment?
Well, I, I just, um. I don't know whether or not the committees would think that we're just meddling in what they're doing, I mean, that's, you know. You know, what do you think to that, Joe? I mean.
I'm, my only real concern is that none of us are found in a position where we're acting outside the board. That's my only real concern. So we don't engage with employees on what could be construed as contract negotiations, we don't engage. So we're, we have an official position. If we attend the posi- if we, if, if I'm the liaison to the zoning board, then it's, it's transparent. And, and I have a very cut set of rules as to how I can engage with them, other than just showing up at a meeting which anybody can do, that's all. That's my only concern. You know, I'm just taking what other towns have done, and some of these towns are small, and I, Bauxford has this, uh, Byfield, I believe. Newberry has these, so we're not talking about cities here, we're talking about small towns with even less population than we have. It's, it seems to be a customary thing, so I'm not pushing it, I'm just suggesting it, that's all. But that was probably my only concern. Dan, sorry.
I think the purpose, I think Bill has talked about it a number of times, you, you, you open up communication between all of the boards. And I wonder if, in lieu of having a liaison, we should just periodically put the Chairman or the committees on a docket and just get them in here and say, hey. What, what's going on?
That's a very good point, because we do have a policy where we are trying to cycle everybody in every ninety days or so.
We've been doing it.
Maybe that might be enough.
Harbor Master coming in, I've been doing it, I've been getting them through, so.
So, I, I'm not against it, just kinda like, you know, is it just another way to accomplish the same goal?
That person's in front of all of us at the same time.
Yeah, that's.
But, but not to, not to undermine what we did in the previous.
We could still be points if they want someone to go to.
Right, a go-to person that we've already previously done.
I, I can only say.
We had the list here that we have, we talked about before.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I forgot which ones I was a liaison to, and I asked for it tonight, but it was in the packet.
Sort of mords, uh, water and sewer, zoning board. School committee. And Board of Health, and Library Trustees. So, I mean, I don't, I, my opinion is, I, kind of what Joe's saying, I'm not trying to micromanage anything. I definitely like to have a person, if someone needs to go to, person, that's why I did what I originally did.
Yeah.
And I think it would help, but I also am trying to cycle each board and each committee through here, so that we can get to talk to them. Like I just said, we have the Harbor Master coming in, we have the Finance tonight, we're gonna just keep trying to cycle them through to talk to us. So I'm not trying to undermine what Joe did, thank you for your work.
There's no undermining, I think the, the consensus of the boards is, let's table this and let's maybe really ramp up. That other policy of getting people in front of us every ninety days, you know, checking in with us, it's a good idea.
I'm not against the liaison, in fact, I think we could try it, but I just, uh, um, the key is, the key is to.
I think what you're saying is.
The key is to find out what's going on in town, because we don't know. The right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing, over and over again.
And, well, we, we.
There's a pattern of that.
We have liaisons appointed, that doesn't change. This is only a policy to support that, so if we have the liaison, we're, we're not undoing that. It's just that we're operating without a set of rules, and we gotta be careful with that, that's all I'm saying.
And, and one of the reasons is that, that all the town boards and committees have never had any kind of communication. Is because they would, I don't think they were ever really regularly invited before the selectmen. So I think if we, if we keep cycling these people through and talking to them and working with them, I think we're gonna get the same, where Joe's trying to get the same way. I mean, we just never really had that policy where they were, we didn't have that open-door policy.
That makes the most sense.
I think they ran their thing, we ran our thing, everyone ran their own thing, but no one really talked. So I think if we all get them in, talk, we'll all be on the same page and we can all work together.
So do you think we need a liaison?
Oh, I think Joe's talking about one thing, Joe's talking about more of a legal, more, am I correct when I say that?
Not legal, just.
More point.
We have a list of liaisons now.
We already came up with it.
I need a job description. What is it, what is a liaison? If I see somebody at, you know, on, in town and say, well, I heard that you're the liaison for zoning board, I'd like to answer that question.
A liaison would be, in my eyes, only.
I, I can answer the question, but I, to me, it seems sensible to have some, some, it doesn't have to be this, but some kind of, of a protocol. So that we don't get in ourselves in trouble. We don't wanna interfere with boards, we don't wanna create the wrong impression. We want a clear set of rules that if we attend meetings, because we're the liaison, then we, we, we have a set of expectations. I, again, this is not an item to vote tonight, just take it home and look at it, and maybe you can rewrite it, but look at the set of expectations. Each board member will maintain some level of communication with each committee and so forth. You know, I've read it out loud already, I wanna read it again. So, I'm struggling with it, only because we feel comfortable having a list of liaisons, but we don't have a set of rules as to what that is. I, I'll give you an example from my experience. We had a very, very extensive policy. At the school committee, and we had a liaison to the state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And then it was very, it was like a job description. It was very clear, so if you were the school committee, the Penticat School Committee's liaison to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You know exactly what the heck your expectations were, what you could and could not do. It's, that's all it is. I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not asking for you folks to vote on this, I'm just asking to reflect very thoughtfully. Carefully over the course of this summer, whether or not we should have some rules, that's all. To, to back up that list that we created.
All right, so do you guys wanna table it tonight?
We'll make a motion, make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Dan, did you have another thought on it?
No, I'm, I'm good with it, I mean, uh.
Thank you.
I, I think it's okay to define the term and expectations, I think I'm okay with it.
Maybe you can look at it and.
I, I read it, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I.
Okay, all right, let's table it for now. All right, let's table it for now. If I don't hear anything, I'll bring it back out in August.
Okay, so at 7:15, we're going to bring the finance board in and have them sit down with us for some discussion, finance board. We're a little bit late, but...
I got one of the later ones.
I don't, probably...
Well, we did the liaison portion.
So I would like to say thank you all for coming, and it was me that dragged you in here, pretty much.
So you're responsible.
And the reason I would like you to come in is because in the last, in the last budget session we were having, there was a lot of, I wouldn't say controversy, but a lot of people didn't know what they wanted, what we expected from each other. So what I wanted to do tonight, without going into any kind of lengthy discussion, no fighting, no arguing, I want you guys to know what we want from you, I want to know what you want from us, and I want Denise to know what she needs from you. That's all I wanted to do. So as we go on through the year, from this point forward, we all know what we expect. And I understand there was a previous finance director here, he did things his way, we have a new finance director, she does things her way, or whatever. You guys, we just need to get on the same page, and that's all I was trying to do tonight. And I would ask if you guys had anything you'd like to discuss with us while you're here, what you, questions that you've had, what that you want to clarify from the finance, from the selectmen, or whatever. And we'll start with you guys and then we'll go around.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If you can just say your name.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Wiles, Finance Committee. What, what I think we really need to put into place is some specific dates, as to one, all committees and boards that have any kind of budgetary needs, they have a budget, they need to be in the hands of the finance committee by the end of February. And they need, if they want to meet with us, they need to meet with us prior to that, so that we can make some sound decisions about the budget going forward. And that includes the selectmen's contractual needs, because this year it was definitely way, way, way too late. That's pretty much, that's really what I'm looking for.
I'd like to say it even sooner than that. I mean, it seems like it's last minute, you know?
Well, last year it was.
Yeah.
But if we, if we can have it two months ahead of the annual meeting, all done, I'm not saying a budget comes in on, on February 27th and they expect to meet with us, no. Should come in January 1st.
Should all be done before the end of January, I would think.
So part of last year's problem was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, part of last year's problem was that Denise was trying to get the information from the different boards, and they weren't very forthcoming.
And I think we, we should make it very clear. If we don't get the information, there's no changes.
You're a flatliner.
The budget is flat.
You're a flatliner.
Or less.
That's what we're having a discussion for, so this is what we need to do.
Flat or less.
Flat or less.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know...
It just seems like February, budget by February, it seems a little late. I got to go along with Dan, I think...
Well, I just use that figure because we got it the second week of April this year.
The other thing is, you know, CPA, among other things, we should do mid-year planning, you know? We should do, I don't understand why it all comes together in the last, you know, six weeks, you're putting together a budget. It seems to be like you put the budget together, you ought to maintain it as you go, you ought to tweak it monthly or quarterly or something on a timeline that's a lot shorter than, hey, you know, the end of the year, where do we stand, where do we want to be next year? I think you ought to maintain, or somehow we ought to work towards a goal of, where were we last year, what are we doing this year, and what's our projection for the following year, two years, three years? I don't think there's any mechanism in place here to look backwards present and forward. You know, and you need to make those analytical, you know, you need to do those analytical procedures and review the numbers to see where the trend, the trend is going. So I'm with you, and support you on anything that is better, and results in better numbers, better budgeting.
So you guys, you guys meet, what, two, three times a year? How often do you meet?
We mostly meet...
We meet once a week typically.
We mostly meet at the, end of budget time, from the mid, mid, or beginning of January through March.
Okay, so is there any way we could get some kind of a mid, midway point?
Sure, if we can get figures. I mean, it's not much to talk about if we have, you know, we can get the expense figures, that's always been available to us. But again, it's mid-year, and unless you've got last year's to go with, it's kind of hard to make any judgments on it.
You have to compare and contrast everything, that's what it, that's what accounting is. Compare and contrast, so you need good...
And that's why we have a business manager. And I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, throw the buck, but we don't have access to that until she gives it to us.
You need that information. I've been reading through my, you know, how to be a border selectman handbook that was provided to me, you know, and I got, the day after I got elected, and within it, it says the finance committee is the town, the watchdog, the financial watchdog, so I want you guys to be watchdogs. I want you to be pitfalls and rottweilers, and I want to know what you think.
Have you ever gotten...
And the only way to do that is to get good numbers, because if you don't have the tools, you got nothing. You're grasping at straws, you might as well be blind accountants.
In the past, in the past, have you ever gotten midterm numbers from the town?
No.
So this is nothing that's out of the ordinary, so we need to put something in place. And if Denise, we'll talk to Denise in a minute, if Denise can do it, and it's okay, and she can do it, we should put in, put in place where we have midterm or whatever we need to do, so you guys can do your job, you can be the watchdogs, and you guys can sit there and watch the budget. I don't think that Denise needs to be micromanaged, but you have a purpose here in town, your purpose is to watch the finances and watch the spending and have you, and I think that's what you should be doing. And I'm not criticizing you, I'm just trying to help put this thing together.
Well, I'm Bill Cook, and I'm the chair of the finance committee. The problem, there's a lot of variables that go along with the finance committee, and some of them, you know, are outside factors that we don't get the control. Obviously Denise asks for the budgets from all the different groups, everybody puts in their budgets, hopefully we get everything in a certain time period. I think, I agree with Andy 100%, deadlines are going to be met, if they don't meet the deadline, then that's, that's what, it's going to be a costly mistake. But you have those other outside factors, we're waiting for final numbers from the state, and to tie that into town meeting and everything else, that's that last-minute variable that is a mess. Also, did the rule, we did change the game a little bit. Denise has become more of a finance director at the selectmen's meeting more than she is with the finance, because she's, she can't sit in both rooms at the same time, it's just the way it is. So sometimes there's some questions we don't get immediately answered. We go back...
Why do we have the meetings at the same time? It seems to me like a no-brainer, why don't you just stagger the meetings, Denise sits in on your meetings, and if we need her on our meetings, it's...
We didn't run into that conflict before, that wasn't the issue before, because the job has changed, the job has changed. So there's all these different variables. There's another aspect, we get volumes of paperwork, and Denise tries to keep us informed, sending us emails and all that stuff. I really don't want to print up 600 pages of stuff at my house. I think really that there should be a budget binder. I know it's not green, it's probably not a green thing to do, but I think all of us should have the same budget binder with the same numbers on it. Selectmen, finance committee, and we go, we come in here, we all open up the same book, and we're all on the same page, and someone doesn't know something that the other one doesn't know. And we're, I know it's old-fashioned, but I think really if you have the actual hard facts in front of you, and everybody's looking at the same thing and the same numbers, it's, it would be better. I think that was part of, we had so much, what happens is, is that it ends up being a scramble just before a town meeting, and then we have different groups looking for different things. I think we have to look at, I was just discussing this in the other room, we're only 6,500 people, right, trying to pay for a town budget. And some of the, when I hear forecasting, I like the idea of forecasting, but there's some variables that affect us, that hurts us on that, but there's others that are predictable, that, you know, you can see some things coming. But you want to see if the freight train's coming down the road. I consider the freight train that's coming down the road is a new high school coming up, up the street here. That's going to happen at some point, and maybe if we see that stuff in the future that we forecast, then we wouldn't make other decisions to do other things, because we can't afford to do it. It's only 6,500 people. And I, you know, I watch some of the selectmen meetings, I don't watch all of them, I watch some of them at different times to try to keep informed as to what's going on, and I know everybody comes in, everybody has their different things that they want, they want or they need, and that's, you know, I stole that saying from somebody else that was on our committee before, but you have wants and needs, and I think we have to look at the needs more than the wants. And some outside, when you have outside factors, it makes it tough because of the way we're set up. You have a regional school district, there's demands coming down the road, your numbers change from Penn Tucket, are they going to change from Whittier because we have more students going there? You know, there were some potential numbers out there, that 400, $500,000 between the two next year, we're going to have to come up with possibly?
And I agree with you saying 100%. And what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to have that conversation all the time, so it's constantly in front of us, not at the end of the year that we know now we're $20,000 in the hole.
Right.
And we have a school coming. So I'm trying to get that constant conversation going, so we are always in front of us, we got this coming down the road, or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that we can put that together. And I, I agree with you saying, I mean, we have a snowplow budget from last year that, you know, we went over on, and we have the money, and, you know, I know Denise has been working trying to get the, you know, delinquent taxes and selling off some land and trying to bring revenue in there.
Right.
You know, we're shelling out all the time, we're not really taking anything in here. We're not, we're not a business, not bringing in.
You don't want to have the surprises either, you don't want to have, you know what I mean? I mean, surprises is something you didn't expect, that, you know, who knew we were going to have a winter that we had?
No, no, I agree with you.
You know what I mean? That's, that's a surprise. It's the other stuff that's predictable.
Right.
You know, there's a saying, if it's predictable, it's preventable. And that's really, that is true. If you can predict it down the road, there's different aspects, you can look at things, you know, it's different things that we've had, capital improvements that are coming up, that they've had, you know, they knew six years ago, at some point, we were going to need to replace a ladder truck or whatever, something like that, that type of thing, you see it's coming. So now you're trying to plan for that. But there's a lot of other variables that come from outside factors that aren't necessarily town of Groveland, but we still support the schoolchildren and the schools and all that stuff, so...
And one thing that bothers me, and I've been criticized because I try to run it like a business, but there's no rainy day money. You know, I'm trying to say, I always worry about having rainy day money, I worry about having a little nest egg, something happens, the money's there. You know what I'm saying? The way we're running, that I saw we're running, we're running pretty lean, I mean, lean, but we're not running with any extra.
Right.
And that's what bothers me. That's where I was thinking, if we had, like you're talking about the school and had rainy day money, and I don't see that because of the way the budget went, taxes or whatever, you know what I mean? Not that anyone's doing a bad job, I think we need to get ourselves set up on the right road. Like you say, when the train's coming down, we're prepared.
And some of the increases, I mean, some of the increases that are coming down the road, and has happened, we haven't talked about, you know, $50 increase in tax bills, we're talking $300, $600. You can't do that every year. You know, you start getting into crazy numbers.
And then, not to interrupt you, but what happens is, when these special interest groups come in front of us, when they want this project, if the numbers aren't out there to tell the people in town, it's going to cost you 600 next year, 300, they go to the voting box, they voted in not knowing what's coming down the road. Like people, when Bussin's property comes online, that's going to be 3, $600 when it's all, they don't know that. They vote for it, but they don't, they forget. So what I'm saying is, is it our job to constantly be saying, can we do this? What's it going to cost? You know what I mean? Can we do it? That's all I'm trying to do.
Finance tried to table that two years ago, and now, you know, look where that got us. So you know what, you know, people, you know, if you don't want to listen, you make your bed, you sleep in it, so. I'd like to see Fidya speak up, or, and I'll applaud you, even if you disagree with me, I like to argue, like to argue numbers, all right? In the end, you end up compromising things, you come up with a better solution. But two years ago, you guys got stifled, and you know what, the town ends up paying four times assessed value for a piece of property. And that still hasn't been attached to the current tax bill, right? It's coming, it's got, the can got kicked past, you know, reelections and everything else, and, you know, you can draw your own inferences, I draw mine certainly.
So when that hits the tax bills in January, and the people say, wait a minute, and then two months, three months later, they're seeing an override to pay for the schools, they're going to say, we're not going to pay for that.
Right.
And that's where we really are going to run into it. And it's going to happen in '16.
And I know what Dan's saying...
Yeah, so then you had to put a, you know, the, you know, what I call the tree huggers' interest before the education of the children, and that really is going to irk me when that happens. I got to tell you, I told you so 47 times.
The thing is, the thing is, I think if the, and I know not everyone listens, and I don't think all the taxpayers listen, and they don't all go out and vote, out of 6,000 people, you only get 900 to vote, so a lot of people don't care. But, you know, something like you say, when the, when the Bussin property comes on in three or four months down the road, and they start seeing it, maybe they'll start listening, I don't know. But maybe that's what they wanted. But I'm, all I'm saying is, the way I see the trend going, I just don't want to overspend. I don't want to, I want to make sure they understand what clearly, and the numbers are in front of them, and that's all I'm asking.
And sometimes we don't actually see the, you know, there's those unexpected expenses that you don't see that are coming, you know, to extra title insurance on a property or anything like that. There's all these extra, it ends up being 25,000, 50,000, 100,000.
When the project got approved, they didn't talk about that extra.
They didn't talk about any of that. So there's a lot of, it's, it's like the package gets sold, but you're not getting the whole package. And I really feel, and that's why I was so crazy about the land, was because that land was not presented properly when it got, when it got, with that bill of goods, when it got sold to us, and it went to the voters, and the people that want these different items, they're smart, they, they fill town meeting, and they vote, you know?
Mr. Cook, it's the leadership at this table or the lack of it that matters, all right? And I want to hear from finance, if you think that something's going to train wreck this town financially, you get in here, we're going to use these cameras, and more and more people are watching the border selectmen meetings, and we're going to publicize it. Because all you can do is give the people knowledge. I don't think they had all of the facts before, right? And that's the problem, if the information is hidden from people, and I suspect a lot of it was...
Well, we don't need to, we don't, this is not the purpose I brought us here.
Right, we don't want to rehash old history, you want to, you want to move forward.
No, you got to rehash old history, because history repeats itself if you don't pay attention.
If you don't do it.
Just to like, keep reading it over and over again.
We're going to try and put something in place right now, with me, that we're going to have more dialogue, we're going to have more conversation. And in all fairness to the project that went on there, another project I'm talking about, there were some legal issues with the property, tax title issues, the property took longer The property took longer to close, there was more lawyers, there was more this, there was more, everything ran, they didn't know when they put the project forth. And then, they didn't do it to, you know, to harm us, they didn't know it. The project took longer, there was some issues that came up, and in fairness to them, they didn't see it. But like you said, that's an expense we didn't know that now we got, that's what we have to be careful. So I'm saying, when you do a project that, do we have a buffer in there?
Right.
Or something like that.
But I think a lot of people, when they look at certain things too, is they think everything was green, about green space and open space, and that is not what really happened there. It was all about the aquifer.
We can't rehash, I know.
I know, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to start another argument, but that's the problem.
In terms of information, does anybody here know how many appraisals were done on that property? Anybody know?
We're not gonna change it, we're, we gotta move forward.
Mike Dempsey does.
We're not gonna, I said we're not gonna argue.
Yeah, one of them was under two million, right?
We got what we got, and we're gonna move forward.
Right.
We're gonna move forward with this thing, we're gonna make it positive, and we're gonna move it forward. And all I ask is, if we as a board, all of us can work together, and we know what took place, we're gonna fix it. We're not gonna try and change the past we can, let's try and get the dialogue out when we need it.
I don't want to change the past.
Joe, Joe's got his hand up, he wants to talk.
Finance Board is.
Unring all the bells.
Finance Board is responsible for the town's budget, it's their budget, not ours, but yet, they don't have enforcement capability to get departments to report on time, to your point. So you need contractual needs and department needs, that's inactionable, so that's my first question to the board and/or to Denise, is that inactionable? Is that something we can do a little bit better, you think, next year?
Yes, so I think the problem with the budgets was departments, boards and committees were not used to providing budget requests. When I'd open up the envelopes in the past few years, things were in Greg's handwriting. Budgets, people did not request what they wanted in their budget, they did not provide backup, they did not provide goals. So when I put that out to all departments, boards and committees, I required a narrative, I required goals, I wanted accomplishments from their department. I wanted their, them to find revenue sources, I wanted them to actually produce documents that had not been asked. And to this day, I still have not gotten them from some departments. So, when I did get everything and compile it, I put it in a spreadsheet and I did send it off to you. And I will say, you know, if at any time you need me to print something, but the only time was Bill at one point asked me to print out a document, but no one ever, I would have been happy to print the stuff. So no one ever said, can you print these, I just didn't want to keep printing and printing and printing if you'd come in with your own printouts of them, which I did one of the very first meetings and then I stopped printing. So I think the departments and boards and committees now understand that there is a process, that they will, and I did send it out December first or second last year is when I sent out the budget requests. And I had them do January second or third, and like I said, I had to fight, I had to call people, I level funded the Board of Health because they didn't give me one. So I do think that people know that there is a process now.
So consensus of the board is to level fund, flat fund, or negative fund, people that don't respond.
I want to ask about funding.
A little bit, hold on, Dan. So that's inactionable, you think we'll get an improvement this year so that we can satisfy that very important goal of getting this committee what they need as early as possible?
Yeah, I mean, I can send it out in November and ask for it back in December.
We had meetings after meetings and we were asking you, have you heard from anybody yet? No, it's like you gave them a homework package, basically.
I did.
And they didn't know how to do the homework, or they didn't want to do the homework, that's basically bottom line. But it's our responsibility, we have to serve this board in that capacity because we have the enforcement capability, and so we'll look, we'll look for that, we'll support you on that. The next item, is it, is it in your estimation, Bill's idea, that we can produce budget books? I love budget books also, that's what I worked with at the school committee, that's all we had was budget books, they started generating them in December.
Yeah.
And we put pages in as we moved forward.
Yeah, well, I can certainly put binders together with all the budget documents that I get, I mean, I, I gave you all packets of the budget documents, I can certainly put that in a binder and you can add to it if you need to, that's no problem.
Their new administrative person could probably work on that as well, right? Can they put that in a binder for you?
Sure.
So that's a second actionable, the next one is my question to you guys. I know that you, a big block of work that you guys had or were responsible for was the, the eight, seven or eight community preservation proposals. And I know that we, you had a member on that board. I'm wondering if you should just, we should, we should maybe ask that CPC or the CPA folks to just print documents and put them in your mailbox, physically. Because I agree with you, I read a lot of stuff online, I'm on the computer all day long, but you know, after a long day, I can't read a hundred page document on a PDF. I'm old fashioned, I have a flip phone, I need paper to study things on. So I, it would make a lot of sense for you guys to get that, and those, you can get really early, before you even begin convening on a regular basis, because those meetings began in October. And those, those proposals were developing over several weeks, and you could see the genesis of it and the, and the end of it, and they were developing beautifully, but you guys missed them. Good reason, I mean, it's just a lot, a lot of information, and you just, you weren't on a track to get that information, and going on a website is unacceptable to me, I understand that. You know, especially, especially in February, March and April.
There was a transition last year too, we had one member that represented Finance Committee, and then I jumped on board as representative, but I wasn't on board until after the holidays in January. I only saw the last two meetings.
Okay, okay.
And if, if we want copies, I mean, I don't have the ability to make all those copies, I can certainly ask for those copies, but there was no continuity last year.
But we just, if you, so if you have an expectation on your board, whoever that appointee is, you know, just, you know, get us copies. I, for example, this is my copy, I copied it at my printer at work, so, you know.
But if I, I mean, if Mike can get me copies, I can have those copies made and put in the same budget book for you. So if I can get copies, which I now have of this year's, but, you know, once the projects are approved or proposed, if, you know, you give me a hard copy of everything, I can have copies made.
And then the last one, and it's the scariest thing out there financially, even though we all support the school, I agree. How can we, how can the Finance Committee, a Finance Board of all three towns, be aware of what's coming? Not only the, the annual budget, but also the, the school, should we be looking at maybe having a liaison on the school committee, you guys?
So, so Joe, being a former school committee member, when did you get figures?
Well, we were getting figures early.
What, what's early?
November, December, things started rolling in, October, and then, you know, you guys don't get it till February, March, April, and it's like, it's too late by then, I agree with you.
And in reality, we actually have nothing to say, because we have no authority over the school budget.
Well.
They present a figure, and we eat it, and we have to figure out how to pay for it.
That assessment piece is something you have a voice in.
We have no control over that.
So a suggestion that I would make is, myself, and now I believe it's Dan, represents Groveland on the Penn Tucket Regional Finance Board. If you want to select a member of your group, I can certainly let you know when those meetings are, you're welcome to attend. So we meet quarterly, we don't really talk about any heavy stuff, but that certainly would be the time to ask questions, or if there is any preliminary information, they would hopefully share it with us. So if you guys want to have a representative, you can attend those meetings with us, with the rest of the Penn Tucket region.
Our liaison to the school committee would invite the Finance Board and say, you know, in August, we're having a regional.
Yes, so when I get a notice, I could reach out to whomever and say, this is when the date is, if you'd like to join us.
Probably a good idea, it's only four meetings a year, you probably have to pay attention to the ones in the fall, but you start getting information in advance as to what's coming down the.
Denise, is there public meetings?
They are public meetings.
Just let us know when they are.
Yeah.
Anybody can go.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'll just let you all know if you want to attend, but.
So those are actionables to me, the specific dates enforceable, the way we described, the budget books, the CPC, hard copies in advance. October, November, December, that stuff starts rolling out, and then the school through the liaison and the Finance Director, hopefully they'll put you in a fighting position. Where you, you know, you're, you're ahead of the curve, not what happened last year, where everything got crunched at the end.
My, my last piece would be, and I could be totally out of line when I say this. What I saw took place and what I think needs to be done, is kind of what I'm trying to do with a, we're trying to put a building permit book together for the town, when someone comes into town, and they're gonna build something, if they go to the assessors department, they're gonna have it. What I was gonna do is ask your board, when you meet, could you sit down and come up, compile what time you want like CPC in, and what time you want these other people all, their paperwork in? Submit it to Denise, she'll give it to us, and we'll, and we'll work on it. What I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get what you need in on time.
Right.
That's all I'm trying to do, all I want from you guys, give me a piece of paper saying, we want this, 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 baseball, whatever it is. What timeline you want it in, and then let us have the burden of making sure you get it. Well, as a selectman board, hopefully, my board will say, write a letter, you gotta get it to these guys, they need it. If they don't do it, then they get flatlined.
We can afford.
And if Denise does it with us, or whatever, I mean, what more forcible can you get than that?
Most of the enforcement.
You guys can sign it or whatever.
Most of the enforcement will be done by Denise, but she's the personnel director.
That's right.
You know, when you're talking about department heads and so forth. So we'll, we, we have to be in an enforcement capability between the two of us, this board and Denise.
I think Denise might need backup, if she's not getting the information she needs.
I think we'll back them up.
Well, I think part of the problem is, we're still dealing with a significant number of elected boards and committees. Again, there are, there are departments here that have no oversight board except for the Board of Selectmen, so, you know, they were never called in and said, hey, you didn't do this, or, you know, no one called the Board of Health in and said, how come you didn't do a budget? They're elected, they don't really have to answer to you, so that's why we level funded them. And then I got a complaint that.
We could give them zero.
They got complaints too?
I got a complaint that they were level funded because they needed more stuff, but. Exactly, exactly.
It will only take one or two budget cycles for that to work out.
I think you should negative fund, see what happens if you take a little off the table.
And I will just say, as far as the state aid this year, because we have a new governor, he did have an extension on the state aid and the budget number, so hopefully that'll be more timely in the future as well.
We have a lot of leverage, we approve pay, we appoint people, hire, we can fire. So you know what, anybody who thinks that the Board of Selectmen has to just, you know, take whatever they give us, I mean, maybe that's what you did in the last ten years, but I like to change it.
Could I just, could I just add one more piece?
If you're supposed to submit a budget and you're a department head and you don't, I mean, maybe you shouldn't be the poppin' head.
Along Joe's, Joe's comments concerning CPA and CPC money, one of the things that I don't think most taxpayers realize is, your board puts them on the warrant article, as a warrant article, we do not. So, that's where it starts.
Right, and you could override that with Ted, but.
We can't override it.
No, 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 but someone could file their own with Ted.
Yes, they can, but you don't have to approve.
I understand that, and I, from my perception in the past, was the Board of Selectmen just rubber stamped them all and just let them go to the town.
Well, I can tell you, from sitting here, and it was, it was probably one of my first budget seasons, I know I sat here waiting for you guys, me personally, sat here waiting for you to come to me and tell me what you were putting forward, you know what I'm saying? I was waiting, even in Bagno School, I wanted to see what you guys were gonna come up with, I feel you're the Finance Board, and, you know, I know Denise has her job, but I didn't want to make a decision until I knew all the numbers, you know what I mean? We kind of did that based on what Denise did, and we kind of did our own thing.
We got some of the nastiest emails I've ever seen when I floated that idea at a public meeting once.
Which idea?
The idea is that if we don't like a warrant article, we as a board just don't put it on. The tradition of this board, which is not really in sync with the law, is to just throw anything out there, that's, anybody that requests a warrant, practice, unless it's really defective in some way, we just put it out there and leave it to the will of the people. I am fully in agreement with you that I would prefer to see a mechanism where this Board of Selectmen have to hear an input from the public, and from those who propose and dissenters, and we decide we want that on the warrant or not, if it's not on, that's our vote, we voted against it by not putting it on there. I agree with you, but I don't know if this town is ready for that, I was getting vicious hate mail, and I believe our Finance Director was too. And so I backed down from that, but if that's something this board wants to take up, I'm in favor of it, because that's the legal way to do it, by the way. That is the correct rule, the way you say, you put it on, that means we, we're in favor of it, we shouldn't even be voting for it. We shouldn't even be saying favorable or unfavorable, if it's on there, it's automatically we want it, if it's not on there, that means we didn't want it. I agree with you.
Yeah, no, I just think on the whole line of you waiting for the, the Finance Committee, I think there needs to be a more defined process. You know, in the majority of cities and towns, the budgets come in, they go to the selectmen, the selectmen vote and turn it over to the Finance Committee. It shouldn't go back and forth, it should be you going through and saying, this is what we support, and then it goes to the Finance Committee to do what they want and then present it to town meeting. So your job should really, if the budgets come in the beginning of January, your job should be done, say by the end of January, and then Finance gets it completely from February on. We need to develop the process on how you want to handle it, if you want to go back and forth, if you want to have it that the board turns it over to Finance, but that's what needs to be defined. So that there's, you're not waiting next year in April waiting for the Finance, or they're not waiting for the selectmen, so that that process is already figured out.
I want to remember that point, and that's where we're gonna disagree, because to me, that's a fifth actionable. I'm gonna be in favor of this board done with the budget by January, and we give it to these guys.
With the exception of the revenue, with all the revenues, because you won't have state aid.
And then give it to these guys, it's ultimately their budget, may either trash it or agree with all of it or some of it.
And I'm in agreement with that, I'm a hundred percent in agreement.
That's a fifth actionable.
And you should be the one to have the last say in it, that's my, that's my, it's always been my opinion, that's what you guys are here for, that's what you.
We need to pass it off to them on February first.
Because all you're doing is making a recommendation to the Finance Committee, you're recommending to them, if they choose to act on it, they can, if they choose to recommend something else to town meeting, that's their right as the Finance Committee.
That's what I think should be done, like I've always said.
So the five actionable items, specific dates by end of February, contractual needs, department needs, budget books is a second one. Copies of CPC, CPA proposals, probably delivered through the, the person that will be on the board, through the liaison and through the Finance Director. Invitations to the Regional Finance Committee meetings, and other school committee meetings that are probably, because you'll know about the ones with the building, for example, so you can send out those invitations. And then the last thing is that this board, we're done with the budget by January thirty first.
Do we need a, do we need a vote on that to make sure they get it?
No, I think, I think you should really wait until like September and really form a process. I mean, I don't think you should develop a whole process right now, I think the Finance should weigh in on it, set some dates, put a timeline together, and then you decide on what the process will be going forward.
I'd like to leave here tonight, me, I would like to leave here tonight knowing they're gonna have the final to say it.
Well, they always have the final say, that's, that's, that's their job to have the final say, so, you don't need to vote on anything, that's what they do.
I think we have consensus.
I want to make sure they get their information in, in due time, so they can get, that's all.
Yes.
And I understand things come, whatever, we gotta really work hard to help them get the information in. Does anyone else have anything you want to say?
Okay, you're quick.
Go ahead, Dan, go ahead, Dan.
I'll yield to you.
All right, thank you. I, I think this dialogue has been terrific, and I hope the chairman will have it back in a, in a couple of months just to, to get some more ideas. I know, I know I've, I've learned a lot about, you know, your, your request for time, when you need this, when you need these items, and I think you're gonna get them now. And, and I talked to a lot of people over the course of a week, and, and it bothers me to know when, when I'm hearing people say, you know, I'm, I'm right about at the breaking point, if my taxes go up two hundred dollars more in a year, three hundred dollars more in a year, I, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to leave town, I just can't afford it. I, I just wish that when you're looking at it, be a little bit harder, like Dan says, be a little bit harder on some of the requests, and, so that we don't have this, so we don't have this problem. And, and I want to thank you guys, all of you, I think you do a terrific job, and you've always done a good job. And hopefully, with, with this information that we, we know the timeframe you need it, hopefully you're gonna get it, and Bill, I agree with you a hundred percent about the hard copy. Makes it a lot easier to flip through it.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
I asked Denise, I think, week one, to provide us with budget to actual, at least once a month. Would that be helpful, if you got that every month?
Yes.
Could they be CC'd or get the package? Because I was told by Denise that no one else had ever requested that, I mean.
No one requests anything from me other than you. Nobody does, no one on this Finance has ever said, can I get a report? I, I provide reports, I provide expenditures, but no one's asked and said, can I get revenues?
I'm surprised, I sat at home.
Usually getting nothing, so.
You did.
Doesn't surprise me.
I will give you anything you ask for, just ask, I will provide anything.
Doesn't surprise me.
So hopefully you understand, you're gonna walk out of here tonight, you guys are gonna understand, we're here to help you, we're here to give you the information, and if you need something, please ask. In a few weeks, we're gonna have an administrative assistant starting, which will hopefully push that paperwork out as well. So that's what I was trying to come up with, and I don't, I gotta cut this because people are in the audience waiting. Denise, did you have any more you wanted to say to the board, or any you want from the board?
I do just, I mean, I do send you guys during that period a lot of emails, so is it, do you not want emails? Do you want hard copies of everything? I mean, these budget to actuals, some of them are, you know.
They are lengthy.
They're a little bit lengthy, so if I'm emailing them.
I just, for me personally, I appreciate the emails, but it's really difficult with, and I know what I have going on in my life and work and stuff is not your problem, but to get an email of six hundred pages on a Thursday afternoon, it is impossible for me to get through that and make any semblance of understanding of what I'm reading and being able to process those numbers by a Monday night meeting, it just, it doesn't work. So having a binder that gives us time to work through is helpful, I mean, I use the email to say, see what's coming up, not to be able to do any sort of substantive work and, and decision making and, and processing of it, just don't have the time. It's just, I mean, you need weeks to do that, not three days. And I firmly believe when you say you will give us anything we ask for, part of it is, I don't know what to ask for, I don't know what you have to ask for. So that's part of, and maybe that's just me being ignorant, because I'm one of the new, I think I'm the newest one on the board, but I think this is my third budget, and I don't know what there is to ask for. I only know what you sent me, which I have to have, but don't know what else is out there that I'm missing. So that may be part of why we're not asking. I know that's why I'm not asking.
But in the off season, is email acceptable for these reports? I mean, I know mail's sitting in your mailbox for months, so I know no one's coming in here and checking the mailbox, so, now you have a pile of it.
I got it.
So email for these monthly reports is okay.
Can I just say something?
Wouldn't you like to know where you are in the budget every month?
Absolutely.
I mean, it just kind of blows my mind that people haven't.
We get a combination, it would be good, there's nothing wrong with the email, gives us a heads up, we get to look through that, but if we could come here and have a hard copy that will have a three hole punch in it, and we can put it in the binder, that would be great.
Of everything, or you're just talking the budget stuff? I'm just trying to, right now for the monthly reports.
And then for budgets.
If I email them, you can scroll through them, do you want hard copies of those?
I won't quit.
This isn't new.
I mean, I, I have no problem, like if you have a meeting in September, to make you a hard copy of the September report. But like July, August, September. Right, if you're having a meeting, I have no problem leaving you reports, but I think in the off months, if I just email you, okay.
So, I gotta get this thing moving real quick. One problem that I haven't got settled with myself, you guys are having a hard time meeting with Denise, because we're meeting with her, and you're meeting with her. Are we gonna change the date, or I don't understand how we're gonna resolve, but I do definitely think you do need to say what I said.
I have a solution for that. We need, we as a Board of Selectmen need to meet on Monday nights, not just because it's a traditional thing to do, that's a big night for business in this town. We need to be available to other boards and committees that are, departments that are doing their business in the, in case they need something from us. Secondly, I don't believe that the Finance Board should change anything, so it's just a simple matter that we conduct a few meetings a year without Denise. Real simple, we, we did that in the school committee, we didn't have, you know, the Finance Director there at all meetings, we can, we can run our own meetings. I'd be happy to help along with that, with any technical aspects to it.
We could do it quarterly.
So even if the administrative assistant could come in and take notes or whatever.
It's really simple, we have somebody recording the minutes, we can have meetings.
Well, I don't do, we don't do the minutes, the new secretary won't be doing the minutes.
This way here, they can get together as often as they have to.
We're gonna make it so she's available to you guys, and she will skip our meeting that night, and we'll make her available to you guys. Okay? And the last thing I'm gonna say is, when do you guys want to meet with us again, like, like three months, early? Like, like three months, early September, late August? And when do you think you want to meet with us again? I want to, I want to edge it in stone.
Quarterly, so probably September.
I think September is, if you guys come back with some idea of a schedule, a budget schedule and some process, like I said. If it's the board voting a final budget and then sending it to you, and then that's it. They don't, unless there's something extraordinary that comes up, it wouldn't go back to them, then you work on it exclusively. I would think about that over the next few months and see what you really want as a budget process.
That's a great idea.
Would be my suggestion.
So you don't want to have them come and meet just yet? You want to wait?
No, I think September, I think.
Sometimes, so do you want to lock something in now for September? She'll email you guys a time in September. So we're all in agreement, you're going to come back one, one night in September, and we'll have another discussion.
Don't you meet on certain dates?
Mondays.
I know.
I can tell you, I can tell you right now.
I don't know it, but she'll, she'll get it for you. She'll give it to you well in advance.
Second and fourth, or first and second, or whatever?
Whatever it is.
Second and first.
The seventh. We're meeting the seventh and the twenty, the seventh must be Labor Day. So we won't be meeting. Maybe, I don't know what meeting.
Maybe the last half of September.
The twenty first, September twenty first. Does that work?
Twenty first of September.
So the sixth actionable was the budget actuals delivered by email in between, in the off season.
Okay. I guess Dan wants to ask one more thing. I got to move it on because people are being patient and waiting. Go ahead.
Mr. Cook, I was wondering what your involvement is in the closing of the books and the year end process and the transfers. So you wouldn't, is your board involved in that?
No.
Why not?
Good question.
Where do the numbers end up at the end of the year? You're not involved in that process?
That's why we have a business manager.
Basically happens is we're, we're told that there, there needs to be some line item transfers to balance out the books at the end of the year. Basically look at those, we ask some questions to find out where, where's the money going? And we have some explanations why those line items have been transferred. There's some stuff in, some stuff you're going to see that it was contractual. Some of it was because those line items that needed to be transferred within, within the departments to balance out the books for the rest of the, to finish it out.
Yes, we did discuss that. So are any of these a surprise to you, like veterans benefits up eleven, fire department up eight, twenty-five hundred? Sixteen, sixteen grand for police? I mean.
We asked those questions at our meeting earlier.
You did, and you're satisfied with that. So you're involved in the process?
Yeah.
Satisfied is such a nonverbal word, though.
Well, you're not satisfied. I mean, if I, if I wasn't, I'd say something.
Your involvement is it's disclosed to you, but you don't have any manipulative or modifying.
Well, we don't have to, we're not here to fix this property.
I think that's what he's getting at.
No, 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 they don't have the.
This is what we needed to be involved in from here on.
They may not, I want to hear what they have to say. I mean, to me, if you're off on the budget, it should be an expeditious to why. And you use that to make adjustments going forward. So I mean.
Well, that's what we'd have to look at with, we haven't, we don't have the final, final number because all the bills aren't paid and everything else. But once we get the final, final number and we actually look at all that and figure out, you know, what, what wasn't spent in some spots.
Yeah.
And maybe we'll look at that next year and we'll, we'll.
Eliminate those.
Realize that didn't need to be in that line item.
Okay.
Or maybe, but sometimes there's unforeseen circumstances that happen that cause some of those line item transfers.
But are you cognizant of if you, if a line item's overfunded and then the department head next year submits it and it's still sitting there? Should that be like zeroed out or something? Is it a placeholder to do a budget neutral transfer down the road? Because that's kind of how my, my gut feeling is that.
I can't, I got to move this on.
You got some placeholder numbers in there?
We always look to that.
You look for the placeholders?
No, we look, we look for the fact that it didn't get expensed one year, but it is needed the following year. I mean, it very often happens.
I, I will just say, I'm sorry, I will just say that's why now in the warrant, you'll see there's an expended column. So that town meeting actually can see when they're voting what was expended in the prior year as well, so that they know.
Actual numbers.
Correct, actually expended.
Budget to budget, which are maybe to maybe.
Correct. Correct. Now it is Dan.
Okay, so Dan should probably go to a meeting and sit down with them guys and maybe get some of these questions answered.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks. I'll work that into the schedule.
Well, I'm just saying, I can't do it all right here. I mean, I just, I would like to, I got.
I've got them all in front of us here. I mean, you know, this is unique.
Thank you for meeting us.
Thank you, guys.
I've got nothing to do till midnight. I mean, you know, I'm here.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Well done.
Thanks.
Okay, so now, sorry, but seven thirty-five, that's gone an hour ago. The Bagnell summer recreation program discussions, if you guys can come forward.
Thank you.
Can you raise a little bit above the program?
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. I'm welcome.
Thanks, man.
Thank you. Okay, so we're bringing you guys in. Number one is because we haven't heard, I haven't, as a chairman of the board, have not really heard much about you guys.
Yep.
I know you're out there. I know what you're doing. I know there's a lot of money in that account. There's been talk about trying to get some of that money and doing different things with it, with have you. Number one, if you can just give us a brief description of who you are and what your purpose, your, your summer program is. You know, kind of, don't spend it out like who knows. But all I'm trying to do is give the town people on camera, let them know what's going on.
Sure.
I guess you're the chair, are you, or the?
The director.
The director.
Yep, so my name is Matt Castongway. I'm the director of the summer rec program. This is my eleventh summer as director. Here with me tonight is Lisa Stevens, who's been the assistant director since my time as director and also when Jim Day originally began the program. And this is Annie Kalashin, who's also the assistant director, and she's been with us for about eight years. So the, the summer program, as you know, was, was originally started by Jim Day, and then I took over eleven years ago. And it's really just an opportunity to, to offer the, the residents of Groveland. And now, as you know, you know, we have kids outside of, of town also attending. An opportunity to have a fun, safe summer. You know, I, I spend a lot of time ensuring that the program continues to grow as far as what we offer for the kids. We go on nine field trips every summer. We expand what we offer at the Bagnell School. You know, being at a school, it limits us with, with what we can do. So we try to get creative in, in offering different activities, expanding upon previous year activities just, just to keep things fresh, keep things new, keep the kids wanting to come back, keep the parents happy. And I think, you know, we've accomplished that.
Okay, I got a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Have you ever paid any kind of overhead over there? Have you ever paid anything back to the school or back to the program? Have you ever given any money back?
Rent or something like that?
Rent and anything. Any, have you ever paid any expense out of that account?
Expense as far as building use?
Building use, maintenance, make, payback to anyone?
Well, building is, the town owns the school.
Right.
So we don't pay any rent because we're a town program.
Okay.
We've, and Denise, maybe you can, you know, answer this too. To, to my knowledge, we, we haven't paid electricity.
Okay. So you haven't, you, you don't have to pick it all apart.
Yeah.
But you haven't had to pay any expenses?
In the building. We have our own custodian that, that we hire and that we pay to, to manage the area of the building that we use in the school.
And who, who, um, do you have a committee that gets the wages, all your wages, how people are paid? Do you have a committee that does all that? Who does all the paying, the, the help and?
That's me. So I, I do.
You're just the person that says who's going to get paid? You're going to do the checkbook yourself?
Well, I do, I report, you know, to, to Denise or previously to Denise Gregg with all accounts payable, accounts receivable. Payroll, everything, you know, has been through the town.
In this program that I understand, I don't know a lot about it, but in a little bit of my investigation, we're supposed to be hiring Groveland children, workers first, and then hiring outside of Groveland. So is it your policy to hire Groveland first?
Yes, absolutely. So I look at, I look at Groveland residents first. I have a strong belief, you know, I'm the director of a program that, you know, this year we have two hundred forty-seven kids registered. It's a big program. It's like the size of a small school. So my number one priority is safety, you know? So I look at hiring the best candidates for the job. You know, I'm not going to find, if I'm just limited to hiring Groveland kids, I'm not going to find every sixteen-year-old child that applies, you know, as mature, you know, responsible enough to take a group of fifteen, twenty kids. We're going to Water Country on Thursday. I need to make sure that my staff is, you know, understands the expectations, understand, understands that safety is number one. So this year, this year, we had a good-sized turnaround. And I think all but one are, are Groveland kids who, who I. So I do look at the Groveland names, the Groveland addresses first.
Yep.
And is there anything in your program that you think you're lacking? When I say lacking, I'm asking equipment, playground, jungle gym? Is there anything that you guys think that the program would need? Is there anything that?
Well, the fields, the fields at the school, you know, I guess is, is my number one. You know, if you compare our program to surrounding communities' programs, I will guarantee you, we offer the most. You know, I've spent a lot of time ensuring that this is a quality program. So, you know, like I mentioned, the field trips, the activities that we do, I included in your packet a copy of, of a schedule, you know, that, an example of the schedule. So as you can see on here, the kids go swimming, then they have computer lab time, the younger kids have story time, sports and games, game room. So it's a wide variety. So I think, you know, as far as the facility, what, what we need, you know, we need better fields. Other than that, I think, you know, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. I think I've asked enough questions. I'll turn over to the board, and the board can start asking some questions. I guess Dan?
I like asking questions. The programs you offer, it, it, it doesn't seem to me that they're very flexible to working parents. For example, you know, some people work. And when their kids go to school in the regular school year, problem solved. Kids are, kids are at school all day. So if you get a parent that works one or two days or three or four days a week, you only offer any three weeks. And you don't offer a program that's conducive or customer-friendly to working parents in Groveland where, say, you know, mom works on Tuesdays and Thursdays. It'd be nice if their kids could go to the summer program in town on Tuesdays and Thursdays and drop the kids off. So why is it that you're, you know, it's any three weeks, any seven weeks? I mean, why, why is it structured that way? Because to me, it just, it doesn't work for many, many people. And, you know, I got three kids myself, and they've never been in your summer program. And that, that three-week program just doesn't work at all, and the seven-week doesn't either. But, you know, so who, who decided that?
I did. I, I decided it based on parent needs, based on community needs. You know, I, over the course of the eleven years, you know, I've, I've geared the program to what, you know, that we have very few requests for, you know, drop-ins. Is that something that we can consider? Absolutely. But it's hard.
But, but even if you have five or ten parents in town that want, you call a drop-in, they want to buy one day a week. It's a public service. I think you ought to accommodate them. The thing has morphed into accommodating kids from Havrell, and I hear Methuen and all over the place. And I want to put the, the needs of Groveland before their needs.
Well, like I said, if.
So is it just you in charge of that program?
Well, I'm the director. Problem for you as far as what you can expect for cover, staffing?
It's just a matter of doing math. If people sign up and say.
They would have to commit upfront a number of days.
Okay, fine. So somebody, somebody that works a couple of days a week could say, I'm going to pay for the summer, seven weeks, whatever it is, X. And they bring their kids there on those days, and you come up with a fee schedule. And you've got kids working there that has counselors, you can work part-time hours, you can have more staff on one day than the other. They do it.
Well, it's hard. A lot of, a lot of college kids, a lot of high school kids, they want.
Business, you're doing it at McDonald's, you can do it at Kentucky Fried Chicken, you can do it at the school program. But you know what I mean? If, if, it's simple math and it's just scheduling. But three.
It's, it's not that simple.
Three weeks are taking a leave. I, I don't speak for anyone else on this board, but I think that is rigid. And I think it does the, uh, community a disservice to say, you got to buy three weeks or seven weeks. I think it's junk. All right? That's my two cents on the matter.
I think from our camp point of view, our numbers and the safety is a number one concern. We have a drop-off of eight-thirty AM, so kids that are used to going to the Bagnell School, that's school hours. So we have eight-thirty to three-thirty is the program for working parents. We have an extended day option that you can pick up your kid up until five-thirty PM.
So paying for three weeks or seven weeks is a safety issue?
No, I just believe like for us to hold people accountable.
Let me tell you.
Three through seven weeks.
My kids go to the after-school, the extended program at the Bagnell, and they only go two days a week. And it's beautiful because my wife works two days a week, long hours. So you've got a system here that just doesn't work.
Well, it's, it's very successful, so I.
It makes money because you got a free ride for twelve years.
What do you, what do you mean?
You pay zero in overhead.
Well, it, it would make a lot, a lot of money even if we did pay. I mean, you, you, you know the numbers.
What brought you before us that I think, you know, I, I pushed for it, that, you know, the, the website says it's for Groveland kids, and it's not all for Groveland kids. It doesn't, it says it's for Groveland kids. Why do we have two hundred seventy-something kids? And how many of them from Havrell and Methuen and where else are they? Why do we have kids from other towns here?
No one told me that I could never accept kids from outside of Groveland.
The website says it's only for Groveland kids.
Oh, it doesn't.
The minutes of the meeting from when it was adopted, when Jim Day started the program, it was supposed to be for Groveland kids.
No one ever told me that I could not take kids from just in Groveland.
This year, we're already in the cycle, so I don't know what we're going to do about it.
I think you, you as a resident, someone like me who grew up in this town, graduated from Penn Tucket, love this town, should be looking at this program as a positive thing. I, this rec program, if you contact other towns, guarantee you that we offer more activities. We offer more quality programming. We offer higher numbers of kids that reside in the town of the program that they attend. I get, I got contacted, contacted from Boxford, from West Newbury, from municipalities across our state beyond because of the quality of this program. So I, I would hope that you would look at the positives that this program has accomplished.
I would like to see changes that it's scaled back to Groveland kids. We, we stick with Groveland kids, and I'd like your schedule to be more flexible for working parents. That's what I want.
I would, I would like, I would say is, if the program's working, and my big beef is, if the program's working, which you say it is, it sounds like it is, I've asked you the questions, there's a lot of money in that account, a lot of money. I would like to see the money go and be used the right way. Okay? Some people have said people got overcharged. I apparently don't think people got overcharged. People got the services and that's it. They paid for what they got, they know what they got. Okay? The money is accumulating in that account for one reason. You're not paying any overhead. You're not paying lights, you're not paying taxes, you're not paying anything. So if I'm running a business and I'm taking in, taking in, I'm going to get rich real quick, and you guys are getting rich real quick.
I have something to say, Wendy.
Okay. So my whole thing was, I believe, and I would like to see, if it's something that gets put down there or whatever it is, and it's called the summer program owns it. I don't care what it is, Denise is going to have to answer this. I would like to see something put down there and the money spent down there. And if it's, you guys own it, and it said you own it, I don't know if we can do it. I think Denise will talk in a minute about that, but that's where I'm, I'm heading with it.
Can I speak? Because I, I've heard the comment a little bit about.
I'm not trying to say you guys did anything wrong or in, in the intent. No, I'm not. It's what took place.
But if you look.
But Bill, their payroll should be voted on every year by the board of selectmen. It shouldn't just be.
They've never been here before us.
Yeah, then the BOS didn't do their job for ten years.
Okay.
You know?
Joe wants to talk, and then I'm going to let Mr. Day talk.
Did you have, did you have another comment?
Well, I just wanted to speak, I mean, about the overcharge. If you look at, again, the, the calendar of what we are doing, people are not getting overcharged. If you look at the rate.
I never said that. I didn't say you would be in overcharge in any way. I said, I think the people got their services, and I think people got what they paid for. That's what I'm saying. But the money has accumulated because there is no overhead for you people. That is why it's accumulated the way it has. And like I said, if I'm running my business and I'm taking in, taking in, and I don't have any expenses, it's only going to grow, grow, grow. And that's what's happening to you guys.
Yep.
Which is fine for now. Right, but now we're going to rectify that with using that money towards the greater good of everybody.
And Joe wants to talk.
I, I, no disrespect to my board members. First of all, whatever is being suggested to you, there hasn't been no mo, there hasn't, there, there's no motion on the floor, so you don't have to change anything. First of all. Secondly, I think this program is a gem. I have a fourteen-year history with four kids going through Bagnell. I know you've been doing this for a long time. It is a gem. This is an awesome program.
Thank you.
It, it, it provides fun, it provides. It 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 provides fun, it provides safety, I always liked the counselor and training and uh program, which, you know, brings, you know, eighth graders up through the ranks to become leaders, I think it's well priced. You guys go in a lot of country, Chunky's, Mountain, day trips, and Crane Beach, you know what I do in the summer? I'm here with Dan McDonald and uh.
I'm here with you, Joe. My kids are at Disney right now, I'm sitting with you, Joe.
I'm in between both of you guys.
My kids are in Florida and I'm sitting here, serving the people of Groveland with Joe.
So so let me, so let me just say, the only thing, the only thing, there's been an accumulation of money, but that's because of, that speaks to the success of the program. The amount of money that you charge, you have a lot of people coming here, and you, you know, and there's people from out of town that wanna come here. I mean, you've got pictures of kids here, but I I'm familiar with the program, I know people that you've hired, I know kids that have gone here. This is a gem, and it needs to be preserved as a gem. The only thing that we need to do as a board, and I agree with Dan and and my colleagues, we need to make sure, just like in other areas that we're gonna deal with this summer and fall, we need to make sure that we're compliant with the law and how money is managed.
Yep.
If we get that right, leave the program alone, that's not an issue. With me, I don't have an issue, that's not an order from me, we can't order you to do anything unless we have a motion on the floor and it's approved by the board.
I like to make a motion.
Hold on, Mr. Day wanted to talk.
I wanna make a motion, cause there's no motion on the floor, I'll put one on the floor.
Well, I'm the CH, and I'm gonna let Mr. Day talk, so, go ahead.
Thank you, at Jim Day, Two Cottles Ferry Lane, also a member of the Bagnell Building Committee. So yeah, about twelve years ago, it was around um uh early two thousands, I began the process of creating this uh summer rec program with the Board of Selectmen. And I'm hearing what everyone is saying here, and it was started out as just Groveland residents. And Matt and I have talked about it uh recently, in the last couple of weeks, about how Matt was um told that he could have anyone come from other towns and do that. And I think the problem right now is, we're still discussing this and ready to leave with this meeting where um there's no committee or oversight for their summer camp. And when I was starting this program, I had to come in front of the Board of Selectmen, I came in front of the Board of Selectmen with the budget, I had to show the Board of Selectmen the budget. I had to get the Board of Selectmen's approval for everything that happened with the summer program. And then at the end of the summer, I went back in front of the Board of Selectmen to talk about what happened at the summer camp, what was good, what was bad, our expenses, all that stuff. And that's not happening again, and I feel that.
And I was told I did not have to do that.
So that is, and I'm sure Matt, if if uh if the Board of Selectmen decides that he has to do that every year, beginning of the summer and the summer.
I I have a question, because Mr. McDonald brought up a good point, that you said somebody specifically told you, you don't have to do that?
I was told that.
You don't have to mention who it was, but that 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 was the case.
I have run in this for eleven years, I have nothing to hide, you know, I I do this for the for the town, you know, I'm I'm from.
What was the reason they said, under, for curiosity, what was the reason they said you didn't have to?
That it wasn't.
Started doing that.
That it wasn't needed.
That it was, that's it, that it wasn't needed.
So case in point that Dan brought up, lack of leadership.
So I, I, so regarding the the concern about kids outside of Groveland, I specifically asked that question.
That's immaterial to me, I'm running the meeting, that's immaterial, I don't care, this one, we'll come back to it, Denise wants to talk.
Yeah, I just wanna say that Matt and I met two or three months ago, and after he had already started the program and gathering money. Um and at that time, him and I spoke about, you know, the future, and that every September, he should come before Finance and the Board of Selectmen and say, this is what his plan is, this is what his budget will be, figure out what the cost will be, figure out what the salaries will be, and that's where we had.
Of the summer prior.
Correct, and that's where we had sort of left things a few months ago, and then all this stuff started happening. So going forward, again, I can't speak for the past and what he was told prior to my getting here, but since now, you know, we spoke and that was gonna be his plan going forward anyway. So I would plan for every fall, he'll come and talk about the prior summer and what's going to be proposed for the future.
And if you don't mind me saying, when the program was started, the town of Groveland had a half day uh program run by the Rec Committee. Pam Blackier, who is still there with the Rec Committee, was there at that point, and she was the one that I was in discussions with about starting this program, cause I didn't want to step on her program. And so the Rec Committee was running a summer program, she um said that is okay, her and I had worked out a situation, we went in front of the Board of uh Selectmen, and then that's when we worked it out. So the Rec Committee had run a program, and then when this program started, it was just the Board of Selectmen and I working out that year. And then after that, as Matt says, what he had been told, and it's moved on. And I think in order to have a lot of these questions answered, who's attending the program, those types of things, there has to be these meetings with the board or some other committee that's overseeing this stuff, you know, what the salaries are, those types of things, and and that will answer your questions and everyone knows what's going on, which no one's known what's going on for nine years because you haven't, no one's asked Matt to do that.
No one's asked, no one's asked.
So I don't want you to get the feeling that you're being attacked, at least not from me, is right. Out of curiosity, of the two hundred and fifty kids in the program this summer, how many are from Groveland roughly?
Um, one hundred fifty six.
Okay, so the other hundred are from surrounding towns.
Correct.
This is a successful program, right? The the number of kids that register every year shows that. It's a good problem that we have right now, right? We have an overage of money that we can really do something good with the school finally, that that field was a mess when I was there thirty-five years ago, right? So it's great to be able to look at something to say, we actually have funds to do something positive. So whatever happened in the past, again, we can't change, right? But going forward, at the end of summer, it'd be great if you could come back and say, this is what we took in, this is now what we spent, this is our expected projected overage.
Absolutely.
Or you maybe have those numbers now, right? But instead of hashing this out for another hour and somebody yelling at you, somebody's criticizing you, let's move forward. Let's say, this is what we're planning to do with the money, let's not talk about it for six more months, let's make a decision, let's do it, and move on.
Uh, I make a motion that they accommodate uh parents and their children uh on a more frequent basis than buying blocks of three and seven weeks.
But are you getting that request, are you getting requests from two hundred people saying, oh, my kids go there too?
It doesn't matter if there's five, if there's five, you're letting in kids from Havreall and Methuen and you're excluding the five from Groveland, so.
But you're saying that those five are more important than the other two hundred and fifty?
You are excluding people because you don't accommodate people that work on water two or three or four days a week.
The program has has been developed to accommodate, to accommodate.
I don't like your development of it, I don't like it, I'm sitting here criticizing.
Needs of the parents. The program was originally on only until three, we added that half hour for working parents, it never offered an extended day portion. We offer the extended day portion for working parents, so the 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 program has been built to accommodate working parents of Groveland.
What what I would like to do.
I made a motion, no one wants to second it.
What's the motion?
I make a motion that they accommodate uh students, uh yeah, no, okay, Wood, right?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that, I don't think the demand is there for that.
I have no understanding.
If the demand was there, they would have heard it.
I don't, Dan, I don't wanna micromanage his committee, I'm gonna go someplace where you are right now, let me do it.
Micromanaging it, you got somebody that's been running it with no oversight from the Board of Selectmen, you talk about, it's not, it's not micromanagement, it's lack of oversight by the Board of Selectmen.
Just hold on, I asked you to hold on, not hold on.
Hold on.
Okay, what I'm gonna ask, and and if my board backs me, it's fine, I would like to form, you guys have to come before this board on a regular basis, three times a year. And I want you guys to form a committee. I want you to form a committee that will now, you guys, it's not just you running it, you have a committee. The committee will come before us and we'll have the discussions like Dan's saying. We'll have the the input with your committee and we can come out with the right due diligence.
Sure.
Okay, that's the first thing.
Sure.
Just just one thing, you have a recreation committee?
Yeah, I was gonna.
Use it, thank you.
The Board of Selectmen hasn't liked the recreation committee over history, haven't you figured that out? I'm trying to figure it out, in here a month.
This has nothing to do with recreation right now, it doesn't, it doesn't, if if he has.
Why aren't they involved in it?
Cause it's not a recreation thing, am I correct?
It's not a recreation thing.
I've never been involved with a recreation committee, through through this program.
So we got one person running a program with no oversight.
Hold on, so would you be willing to involve some of the recreation people on your committee?
Absolutely.
Would you go before them and ask them if they'd like to be on the committee?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, the children attend the camp.
So that's all we need, simply, it was taken care of.
We actually accomplished something in that.
Alright, well, that was two seconds for me to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Alright, so you're gonna go ahead, you're gonna form a committee, okay? You're gonna turn around, you're gonna come to the Selectmen, we'll discuss it in a minute, how many times a year we wanna see you guys before us, and that will take care of that end of it. So let's start here, how many times a year do you guys want them to come before us?
I think before they take, start taking registrations, before the the summer program starts and then at the end.
So I'm gonna make a motion?
Three times, yeah.
Three times, we had a motion for three one? You wanna get specific on times?
When do you normally start taking registrants?
February first.
It should come before February first, when you set, when, you set, you set the salaries yourself?
I I start cleaning. I'm sorry?
You set the salaries yourself?
Yes.
You you do exclusively yourself?
Yes.
You set the director's salary, you set the the staff member's salaries, you you, I I think it should be set by the Board of Selectmen.
Our our committee should have the input.
Exactly.
Mr. Day used to make five thousand for the program.
Are you there every day? Are you there every day?
Yes.
You're you're there every?
Ask him what his pay is.
I don't think he has to do that.
I I'm I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask.
I'll ask.
But one thing, you know, you you're uh, and, look, I've heard nothing but positive things about the program, I've heard a lot of about it, everything is positive. Uh and also heard that it's the cheapest program around anywhere in surrounding towns. But what what concerned me, you you're a, you you're a principal?
Yes.
And, but as a principal, isn't that a fifty-two week a year job?
Um, in my district, it, well, I'm at a small school, um so it is.
Question was, is it a fifty-two week a year job?
Yes.
Okay, it is, okay, so you you're, so how can you work at your school fifty-two weeks a year?
Because I don't need to be there all the time in the summertime.
Okay, so it's not a fifty-two week a year job?
Well, I don't need to be there all summer long.
It's a double dip.
Oh, I, we have a motion. What's that? There's no law that says you can't have two jobs.
Call it what it is.
Okay.
It's a double dip, this is only a a summer program.
That you you pay yourself.
An hourly rate, the hour?
Yes, yes.
Thirty-eight.
Okay, and how much do you make on an annual basis on this program?
How much do I make?
Yeah, what'd you make last year?
Twelve?
What did Mr. Day make, your predecessor, five thousand dollars?
I I I don't know.
So how do you derive your compensation?
I think the amount of time that I've put in, the amount of heart and soul that I have built this program.
We need to build something that's gonna change this.
And.
I tried to make a motion, I can't get anyone a second, so why don't we just squash the whole topic and call it a day, Bill?
How about the positive reputation that this program has?
I wanted a motion so that they include more Groveland kids, but you wanna run the program for Havreall kids, knock yourself out, we got ninety of them that go to it.
I'm just trying to get a committee together to run the program, that's all I'm trying to do right now.
Include recreation in it, they should have been.
Let him run the program himself like he's doing, what what are we gonna get, we're gonna get nowhere, we need to get a committee in place that oversees it, we don't have one. So what what's what's it got to do with getting Havreall, Methuen people in here, and it's nothing to do with that. The point is, there's no committee overseeing this project, we need a committee together.
I make a motion that the recreation committee get involved in running the summer program at the Bagnell.
What is your motion, please, can you repeat your motion?
I make a motion that the recreation committee oversee the Bagnell summer uh 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 program.
I I, I'm not gonna support that.
Why would you support that?
I'd just like to remind too, when the program was started, that's who was overseeing it. So the summer program, when it was originally running, before I had taken it over, the recreation committee was in charge of the summer program.
And what and what happened to it, why didn't they continue to oversee it?
But that wasn't the same program though.
Was it, was it, it was a different program, they were the ones that were overseeing it.
It wasn't the same program.
So if if we're coming in, if I'm asking you guys to come in here three times a year, the Selectmen are gonna have the input, okay? I've already asked you once that you were willing to do, we're gonna in- incorporate recreation people involved in, in the committee.
Nobody will second my motion to have the recreation committee oversee the program.
Go ahead.
I have one question, uh, subject to more, you said you wouldn't support.
Right, right.
Recreation.
Yeah, I.
Overseeing that, and I would love an explanation.
Yeah, it's it's very simple, we we don't have a content issue, we don't have an, I don't anyways, I like the program the way it is, the way it's constructed, the way it's run, the way it's managed. We don't have a content issue, what we have an issue with is the management of the money and the reporting of that money. So it's a fiduciary responsibility, it's very focused, very limited, so I don't feel that we should get the recreation committee involved, because you don't have jurisdiction over the money ultimately, we do. The only issue we have is the money, not the content, I will say, respect.
You don't speak for me on that, Joe, it's not weak.
Right, respectfully. Respectfully, respectfully, Mr. Mr. Uh Dan has issues on the quality of the program and.
I'm not saying it's the quality, just include more Groveland kids.
But I think he said he is, he did, he's not excluding them.
They can't go two or three or four days a week.
That needs to be corrected.
I agree.
Period, not that the program's a bad program.
No, I agree.
We just need to abide by the tax laws to support the town.
It's just a fiduciary responsibility that we have.
No, they're a town program, they operate under our tax ID number, we pay their bills, we pay the salaries, we collect their money.
Okay.
I don't think the recreation committee needs to oversee them, because we will oversee them with the three meetings we will have with them. Before the program starts in January, what their expectations are, before the actual program starts in June, and then after the end of the program.
Selectmen, would you really think the town of Groveland has the capacity to control the child, children's recreation programs?
I'm not, well, I don't wanna control the program, I just wanna control the finances and the expectations, I don't wanna go.
You can't go here, you can't go there, you can't do this, you can't do that.
We don't make money, we lose money, does everybody understand that?
What do you mean, who?
The coaches, the the sport people, we don't make money, these people for the summer program, the kids make money that run the program. Us for Grove Recreation, for softball, basketball, soccer, we don't make money, we lose money, but we don't care, it's for our children. Use our fields that you guys provide us, and thank you for that, we appreciate that. So I I'm trying to figure out where the disconnect is, there's a disconnect here of, why do we wanna create more committees and more bureaucracy? When we really have something really nice going with volunteers, can we just streamline it and Grove Recreation controls softball and basketball like they do now? If you need to add things to that, fine, if not, create another committee, I know Jim Day's a hard worker at the Bagnell School, and he could probably create one himself. So I don't think the town of Groveland should actually handle the committees, I think the individual people that do it now should do it.
Well, you're you're saying one thing, and someone else is saying that beforehand, they had to come to the Board of Selectmen, and then that stopped, and they should come back to the Board of Selectmen. So do you want them to come to the Board of Selectmen three times a year, or do you want them to come to the recreation?
The Jim permits, absolutely have to come to you guys, absolutely, cause it's it's your town.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the field permits, I'm talking about the summer program, he had to come, when Jim started, he said he had to come, do his finances to the Board of Selectmen. Somewhere along the way, that stopped. Now, they're saying, that should be picked up again, and you're saying, no, the Rec Committee should handle it, so which is it? Is it the Rec Committee that should do that, or should the Board of Selectmen do that?
I think the Rec Committee should do it, I think the Board of Selectmen should.
Is that the consensus of the Rec Committee?
And let us deal with it.
Even if it is.
Why, why, why should we make it? And if we need to file a separate five oh three.
Let me ask you a question, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
So there's a program going on right now, and there's no committee involved, and the Rec Committee now wants to come in and 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 work with this and they're gonna run it.
I wouldn't say our committee wants to, but we will absolutely do that.
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, can we get a summer program committee with some Rec people on it?
Sure.
That's all I'm trying to do, because there's a bunch of money in that account, which now, and I'm only gonna be honest, and I'm not saying you guys are trying to do it, you guys are gonna be blamed, the soccer people are trying to get their money at at their hands with all that money. You know what I'm trying to say, that's what's gonna happen?
I'm always greedy, I.
You know what I'm saying, so what I'm saying is, I'm trying to prevent that, I'm trying to put the stops in there, so there's a committee all by itself, dealing with, you can have Rec people go on there, no problem.
Sure.
And what have you, I think what I can see going down the road is now they're gonna say the soccer people are after all that money.
Soccer pays themselves zero.
I'm not saying, I understand what he said, I clearly understand it, but.
Steve, how much you get paid?
I'm not, no one's saying anything, you know what I'm saying?
How much I've lost.
People can say anything they want about soccer people, the people should say nothing but thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Well, they failed, so do we have another motion, or do we just move the question?
Can I just say something? I was hired by by the town to be the director of the summer program.
Right.
So whatever, and I was told that the Finance Director oversees oversees the program.
Okay.
So I hope that the program, as far as its success, has spoken for itself.
I think it has.
I would be more than happy to come in front of this board at any time during the year to discuss salaries, to discuss any planning, to discuss any accounts receivable, accounts payable, so that everything's in the open. I just wanna reiterate, I've never been asked to.
Okay.
Okay, I've never been asked to, and I would be more than happy to do that three times a year, four times a year, five.
Thank you, I think Joe wanted something first.
Just, it's really important, that's a town owned property, the financial responsibility, the buck stops with us.
Okay.
So I I don't wanna delegate something to another committee that when we have to ultimately be responsible for, it's just gonna make things more complicated. I think Mike's idea of three meetings, at least, if not more, would suffice, if there's something we're not comfortable with, as you can tell with this board, we'll tell you. If there's something we're not comfortable with, as you can tell with this board, we'll tell you.
Mike, you want to say something?
We have an idea of what's in the account now as far as overage. What is your anticipated amount at the end of summer? Do you have an idea what that might be, roughly?
We will probably, just this summer, we will probably be over, I would say, sixty, seventy thousand.
Over that initial number?
Additional, yes.
Can I ask a question? If the money's just sitting there, and we don't use it, why don't you, the town, just take it and fix the fields, or build us shade, or... I work at Bagnell also during the year, so I would love some shade out there.
We're trying, that's what we're trying to... We're trying to get there right now, we're trying to get to that point.
Where's the proposal from?
Because it's not like we have the money and we're spending it.
Good.
It's sitting there.
There's been a couple of great ideas, the shade is a good one. Maybe by the... When you meet the next time with us, maybe you can just come up with some ideas on things that you people need.
Yeah, and I already talked to Denise about that when I was planning on coming in September to have some proposals.
May I just say that the Department of Revenue puts some significant restrictions and limitations on us taking your sixty-five and doing great things on the field. We have to be very, very aware of that. I wish, they probably have a great proposal, the recreation committee, the DOR says you can't do that, it's a simple matter. Again, that's why, for me, getting the recreation committee is not the right way to go, because the buck stops here, and all we care about is the buck.
What is your suggestion? Selectmen Demore, what is your suggestion if it doesn't go with the rec committee or any committee? What does the Department of Revenue have to do with it?
They remain accountable directly to this board through a series of meetings throughout the year.
Is that what you want with all, Groveland baseball, Groveland softball?
No, 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 not at all.
What do you ultimately want to happen?
For this, right here?
Yeah, start with this and work all your way down through, because I'm confused.
Yeah.
I can speak what I want, I know what I want.
Well, obviously Joe has a point, and I wanna hear it.
Thank you, I'll reiterate it. I only care about the money, how it's managed and how it's flowing. And we got sixty-five thousand dollar problem, we can't even spend it, even though we have a great proposal here from the recreation committee. So we need to work through those issues. So we need them to come in at least three times a year, update us of what's going on with the propose... Excuse me, with their program. And then work on how we can become financially compliant with the state law. It's, that's it. And I don't have that answer, I have no idea what to do with that sixty-five. I would love to take whoever did this proposal, I'd love to take this proposal and say, go spend it and fix it back. We can't do it, Department of Revenue won't let us.
That's not true, Joe, that's not true. That's not true, Joe, the Department of Revenue won't... On revolving funds, if you have an excess in the fund, the town legislature, which is town meeting in this town, can vote, okay? What to do to transfer those funds, you can transfer it, go.
No, you actually have to dissolve the revolving fund in order to, and it would transfer it to surplus revenue, or you would have to establish another revolving fund to transfer it to.
Should I have to dissolve it?
So you dissolve it at year end and start a new one in the new, in the next year.
But you're limited to what you can spend under that account.
Denise, if you don't...
No, 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 in the board of selectmen, I read the statute, the board of selectmen with the finance committee can vote to increase that.
You cannot, you can only increase it to one percent of our tax levy, which is twelve million, so you can only spend a hundred and twenty-two thousand out of that account. They're limited to a hundred and...
What is it now?
A hundred and fifteen thousand.
You can bump it up to one-twenty?
One-twenty-two.
So you bump it up to one-twenty-two, and you bleed it over how many years?
Right, and that's fine, you can do that.
Or you increase the expenses, and you start leasing it for the summer, and you draw that back, put it back into another fund, okay? By charging for overhead, and then you spend the money on the ball fields or the soccer fields behind it.
Wouldn't the overhead go to Penticott?
You know...
As far as the utility...
You might need a two- or three-step process to accomplish it, but there's a way to get that money out of that account.
Okay.
Maybe you're right that you just can't just write the check.
And there's the proof, it's just a financial issue, we'll work through it.
Yes, Mr. Shea, thanks. So the Bagnell Building Committee, we are the ones who submitted the proposal. And Denise, I've read the Mass General Law, talking about the one percent. But one thing, can we, as a town, put, as a town, on a town warrant, can we put to dissolve that revolving fund? And then on a second warrant, that meaning to then transfer that money to the Bagnell Building Committee to do the fields and the pavilion?
So when I spoke to the DOR, what they recommended was putting something in writing, and they will provide a written response. Their feeling is that this money is user fees, and to use it for things other than the summer program is being considered a tax. That's what their words were, that we're taking user fee money and using it not on the summer program, we're using it on other items. So they have said they will not give us an opinion unless we actually provide them with what our plans are, and then they will provide us with a legal written opinion from the Department of Revenue.
But the project is encompassing the summer program, youths, the fields and the pavilion.
Yeah, but hold on, so...
We should get an opinion from our town council and not DOR.
Let me just ask a question. So, and I've said this all along, maybe I'm slow and I don't understand it. So if the summer program turns around and does a project, if it's a field, if it's a pavilion, or whatever it is, and they call it the Summer Program Pavilion Park, whatever, we should be able to do it.
But they cannot spend more than a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's fine, that's, I'm good with that.
But they're spending a hundred and fifteen on their program.
So what you do is you reduce the program for the kids next year. Bill, Bill.
So you're only talking about seven thousand dollars?
That's all their capacity is under the law, yes.
Bill, Bill, if you reduce the number of kids in the program to just Grovelander's, then you just spend the cap.
Why are you so close to kids outside of Groveland?
I'll tell you what...
Gentlemen, I did send an email this afternoon suggesting, I don't know if you received it yet.
I read it twice. Anything from you makes sense, even if I don't understand it.
Why don't you go ahead and sum it up?
I just suggest that in order to get around this roadblock, that essentially you dissolve the revolving account, get rid of it, so that the one percent does not essentially have its impact on us. So by dissolving the revolving account, making it another account, I don't know what you wanna call it, but it's just a summer program account, but it's not a revolving account. When you remove that one percent limitation, then it will allow us to spend the old money.
You cannot, you can only transfer revolving fund money to another revolving account, or it automatically goes to surplus revenue. You can't put it into a non-revolving account.
So you set up a revolving account called the rear field at the Bagnell Elementary School, and you just transfer it there and spend it on the back of the property?
But that's not how revolving, you have to take in money to spend money. You have to, it's a self-sustaining fund, if we're not taking in revenue, how is it a revolving account?
If it goes to surplus funds, we can't control that?
It depends if there's access.
You make it revolving for one or two years until you spend the money fixing up the field, you just play the game, that's all you gotta do.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Maybe I got this all wrong. Are we fighting over seven thousand or a hundred and seventy-seven thousand?
We're fighting over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, really.
Okay, so that's a lot of money.
It is.
That's a lot of money, and it rarely should go to the right place.
And how is that broken up, though? Does everybody understand how two-fifty's broken up?
No, because no one's been before, me, I don't know, me, I'm thinking myself, I don't know. This is the first I've heard of it.
Because speaking from the Grove Recreation, we have ten percent of that, not even. We're losing money.
Bill, the statute says that we could, you could, without approval, we could send that to another revolving account. And we can do that.
Yes, I'm not disagreeing with that.
I don't need DOR's opinion on that, because I read the law.
But you need a legal statute on what to create a revolving account. You need a new revolving account that serves the purpose of the law, you take in revenue to spend, to solve, what are you taking in revenue from?
We're gonna take in revenue to improve the fields. And we can collect toolbox from everybody that lives in Groveland for the next century, and we could actually fertilize them, have a sprinkler system, the water comes out of it. We can have electric lights, so we can have electric lights to light up soccer games at five-thirty in the evening in November, when my kids are walking down the street. I don't know that we have it, we don't have it, we lip service it, and we come around, and we can't do it. We can do it if we wanna do it. If you don't wanna do it, just say you don't wanna do it. Bitten around the bush, you wanna get it done, you find a way to get it done.
I will just say, we are audited by the DOR, so if they come in...
I spend my livelihood fighting the DOR and the IRS, and I learned a long time ago... You don't call the, you don't call the DOR for tax advice.
You're out of order, you're out of order.
You run the meeting.
Calm down, just calm down, you're getting, relax, it's a conversation.
Okay, conversation, there's misinformation at this table.
Okay, then say it, what's the misinformation?
The misinformation is...
You're a selectman, you were voted, say what the misinformation is.
Misinformation is, Denise, if you wanna get this done, you will get it done, okay?
That's not, I...
That's the truth.
I have to follow Mass General Law. The DOR comes in here and audits us, so if we're operating a revolving fund that doesn't meet the criteria of the law...
They gave us the answer, so create a revolving account that accomplished the legal requirement.
I don't have the authority to create a revolving account, Town Meeting does, you don't, Town Meeting does.
We can set it up on a warrant, Town Meeting doesn't walk in there and say, we're gonna vote on this, we have to spoon-feed it to them, because that's what our job is, we put it on paper.
Can I just ask a con question, Denise?
Can we get it to the piece of paper for the people of Groveland to vote on?
Let me, let me talk, thanks. If we get a new revolving, we close out the one, we get a new one, could we spend the money in that property? Can we take the money and spend it on that property?
I'm not gonna answer you, so you can defer to...
Denise doesn't wanna do it, Denise doesn't wanna do it.
It's not that I don't wanna do it.
You don't wanna do it.
But I am legally responsible, that when the DOR comes here and says, why did you spend user fee money on a field, I have to be able to provide them with an answer.
Because recreation uses it, and other people use it, and we have a revolving account.
Come on, let me talk.
So...
It's not a field, maybe it's a pavilion, maybe it's something more solid than a field, that's all I'm getting at.
It really doesn't matter what it is, as I told you, I spoke to the DOR, they said, present it, they will give us a legal opinion if you can use the funds for that. That's what I'm telling you, give me the proposal, I will submit it to the DOR and say, can we close the revolving account and start one up on the exact same warrant? I don't know, I don't know if that's something we can legally do, dissolve it and start one in the same warrant.
If you have, if you have two warrants, Mr. Day, you run the risk of one being approved and the other one not. Keep that in mind, you shut one down and then not reengage.
If the summer program decided that, all right, we have this money, we wanna buy new school buses, can they go out and buy new school buses?
As long as they're within their cap, that's Town Meeting authorizes.
Which is that still gonna be that seven thousand after the one-fifteen and the one-twenty-two?
Correct, so Town Meeting has authorized one-fifteen, they legally can spend up to one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand.
So if we go to the town and say, we want you to authorize for this one year, two-hundred thousand dollars, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars use, and they say yes, can they then go and say, here you go, go do your program?
Well, they can, but we're in violation of what the law requires, the one percent.
If they were all volunteers, you pay them zero, and you pay the money to fix the fields instead of the wages and the salaries and the payroll taxes.
So I just like...
You just spend the money differently.
Yeah, and I'd just like to know, if this is going out, like I think Matt said, sixty or seventy thousand dollars this summer. So now you're getting up there in the two-fifty range, I think we're talking about, and that's only gonna grow next summer. If we're gonna sit here and we're gonna play around with trying to get, this could be our one chance to get these fields done and get something nice for the summer camp, we're making it look nice. Whether we have to change the name of a revolving fund, put it at a town meeting, and ask people to have it changed name. But the question is, what are we doing with the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars if we're not doing this?
The goal is, I believe, the goal should be that we'll get an opinion, based on whatever proposals.
The goal is, do the damn fields, do the...
Denise, Denise, you wanna refund the money, isn't that true?
I have no opinion on the money.
I think you wanna refund the money to the customers.
I have no opinion on the money, I just wanna make sure it's done under the purview of the law.
I think it affects how you proceed with this.
If you wanna build fields, I have no problem, I just need to make sure that we're doing it under accordance. Again, I'm the one who comes in, with the, the DOR comes in and sits with me and reviews our books every year. They come in when they do the tax rate, they come in at the end of the year, they review those revolving accounts, I wanna make sure we're complying.
Okay, so, hold on one second, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. Can we write a proposal saying that the Groveland Summer Rec Program wanna hire Joe Schmo landscaping to put in fields with a sprinkler system using our money? Can we do that and submit it for approval? Oh, and how much will it cost the field?
Two, my, eighty thousand.
Very money allocated for this.
Okay, someone has a hand up.
Yeah, it was, he's gonna talk about it.
Kim Jackson, Park Street, I'm also on the Bagnell School Building Committee. A few weeks ago, we were approached by Steve and members of the Groveland Youth Soccer Program with its nice drawings proposing the improvement of the field. We have a small amount of money left in the original remodeling of the school, which was gonna use to work with the fields. We thought that the program looked good, and we gave the committee our support, as far as our committee would support the Groveland youth. We also volunteered as a committee to support them and assist in doing some of the paperwork, since we've been through it for the last five years, building the gym, cafeteria addition, and the remodel, the creation of the parking lots. What my intention was tonight was to ask the board if they support the development of soccer fields and maybe a pavilion, or all youth that utilize the back playground, or the garden club, or the gardening, or anything, if they would support this program and would empower us to continue to start getting preliminary estimates and put a hard number budget, so we can bring that back to the selectmen and get warrant articles put on the next town meeting. Thank you.
So there's plenty of ways not to do it, right? What are the ways that we can do it? From your perspective, I know...
My perspective is, present the proposal, and I would submit it to the DOR, and let them give us a written response on how to do that.
How long do you think it will take them to get a response?
I don't think it should take long, they said if they have a proposal, they will, if I give them a timeframe when we need it by, they will try and get it back by then.
What do you think is the easiest way to propose that for them, with less friction? I work with the government every day, and they can be a total pain, so you gotta find the easiest way to get things done.
Yeah, I think we just need to present them with, when the program started, they asked, they asked to see the original article, and I know you had said twelve years or so, I could only find two thousand and nine, was the first time it came before Town Meeting. Two thousand and nine annual Town Meeting warrant was when the program is actually authorized. So they asked to see the original article, and they asked to see what the proposal was, and then submit it to them, and they'll give a written response on how to go about doing that.
Would you submit the proposal, or would someone from the Bagnell Committee or the rec committee submit that to you to present on their behalf?
I would say it's probably the board, it's your property. So whatever proposal you wanna support, you would have me send to the attorneys at the DOR.
So Denise needs to do what she needs to do by the law. What you just talked about a minute ago was a proposal, good idea, we're gonna need that proposal anyway, we're gonna need a hard number, right? We're gonna need that hard number, so again, I'm not trying to get Mr. Dan upset.
You already did.
Well, at the end of the night, I'll hug you.
No, you won't, no you won't, listen to me, listen to me. Why don't we do this? Why don't we get the proposals and find Senator DOR so she can do her due diligence? And we should get the town council to draft it in such a way legally that it works. Because to go to the DOR for advice is like calling up for tax advice on the telephone, you just bang your head against the wall, I mean, seriously. I'm not gonna hang my hat on anything the IRS or DOR tells me, because seventy percent of the time it's writing the rest, you better, you better get it in writing, because it's...
The goal is, everybody wants this to happen.
You better get it in writing, because it's not binding otherwise.
That's what he's asking, do you all support it, yes or no? That's what he wants to know right now.
I support it.
We all, I support it, okay? Raise your hand, who supports it? I support it, everyone supports it, I don't think anyone doesn't support it. And I just basically told them, go ahead, but I understand, it gets complicated, though. He can get the hard number, which is great, and I think he should work with everyone, the rec, everyone, do what you're gonna do. The hard number is great, you come in with a hard number, but now how do we get the money, how do we spend the money? Now we're back into the DOR, we're back into the conversation, you know what I'm saying?
Just so you understand, you know, soccer always gets kicked around, because I'm always looking for something to try to push, push as high as I can to get certain places and build up, all right? But you've got, that back area's been bad for thirty-some odd years, all right? We turned around last, well, six months ago, we're sitting there saying, God, we just really need space. But guess what? It's not just us, that back field's been atrocious. I've heard kids, I've had going to ambulances back there, because it's all dirt run. No matter what, you're gonna have to do something about that.
We know that, we know that.
So when you say it's just, you know, everybody hears the word soccer, it's not just soccer, that's what the kids want, it's a program, it's actually for the, for the summer programs, it's not just for soccer.
Yeah, I don't think we're blaming you.
I know, but it's always, it's always soccer, 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 it's because we're asking the questions.
Right, but the thing, the thing where I was trying to head with it was to try and get it away from the soccer, I was trying to find an avenue that these guys come in with their proposal, we could turn around and call it, so I thought, maybe, you know, Denise is the one that says no, because we have to go through it's legal, I thought we could call it a summer program and get it done easily. It doesn't sound like we can do it that way, so now...
I always think there's a will as a way, so I mean, obviously, I'm actually, with Dan on this one, there's gotta be an avenue, a way to get that, the means for that money. I'm not saying Denise is wrong, I'm just saying there's gotta be a way to get that.
It sounds like we need to get a proposal together, a hard proposal.
There is a hard proposal, but could you... There is a hard proposal, but could you guys go back and actually put numbers to it?
No, the, the reason for that is simple. When you go and look for a contractor, you've gotta have bids. The bids are varying prices.
You have to get an engineer.
Preliminary estimates, yes.
That's what, that's what we're gonna need.
But put, I would put a buffer to it. I would put a buffer on. Don't go, don't go low, go on the high side, put a buffer to it. And I'm not saying blow it out of proportion, but I'm saying, whatever your number comes in there, I put a twenty percent buffer onto that number.
But you're asking us to.
The two hundred thousand in the proposal has a buffer in it, which deals with the fields and the pavilion only. It does not, we will deal with the lights, does not deal with the toilets.
Okay.
Essentially, that is outside of the two hundred thousand figure that we put in the proposal. So that figure is a realistic figure.
Absolutely.
I would just say that.
A town warrant can transfer it to building fund.
Okay.
Now, the question I, I get the question I have, I guess it's for essentially Denise and you guys is, would it be easier to go to use the town council route rather than D O R? I think if you go to town council and get their opinion, explaining the labyrinth we're in and get a way of getting out of the jam.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to get an opinion from town council.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
I was just gonna, if you put it in another revolving account, you're still limited to the one percent of the tax levy, which is still gonna be a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
But a hundred and twenty-two thousand that they can spend, that would get them something.
No, because they're already spending.
But we, we spend that in programming costs, activities.
Well, no, you'd have to have a completely separate revolving account. But if you have a separate revolving account, you're still limited to the one percent of the tax levy.
So you can't spend.
So they couldn't spend two hundred thousand, they're capped at the one twenty-two.
Okay, so go back to what Dan just said. If you went to a town warrant and they approved it at a town warrant, now can you spend it?
You can only take revolving fund money and put it into another revolving account or it goes to surplus revenue. That is what the law states.
So the surplus revenue.
So why don't we put it in surplus revenue and then we put a town warrant to spend the money at the Bagnell? You just answered the question, beautiful. If that's where you want it, put it in town surplus and we'll spend it out of town surplus.
That's why we need an opinion, because it sounds like a circumvention.
So could the money, so there's, you know, say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in this account. Now, could the town in essence charge?
Stop talking, please. Hello?
I'm sorry.
Could the town in essence charge the summer program what this proposal would cost? Say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars to be paid into a Bagnell Improvement Fund or whatever, you know, type fund you can develop that is not this revolving fund that has this cap?
No, because the, the fund would then, they'd be capped at the seven thousand, so they can only put seven thousand excess a year. And then unless you create a revolving account, it's supposed to close every year to general fund. You can't just carry money over from year to year unless it's an established.
This is a one-time project. It's not an ongoing thing. So it's, it's a, it's a one-time project. In essence, unless they stop charging kids, they're never going to be able to pay any more than seven thousand dollars out of this fund.
Correct.
The state will never allow the town to use this hundreds of thousands of dollars ever, pretty much?
Not under this revolving fund. This revolving fund has a specific purpose and it's capped at one percent of the tax levy. Any revolving fund is capped. So if they're spending a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty-two thousand is the one percent of our tax levy. So that's all that can be spent out of this revolving fund.
Denise, Denise, does the law allow it to go to the surplus for the general fund?
It allows it to close to surplus revenue, yes.
And the town?
If the revolving fund is dissolved.
Okay, so we dissolve it. You can always start a new one, right?
I don't know if you can start one in the same warrant.
You can make a new warrant, warrant number two.
May I suggest?
So you, you close it out to general fund and then the town people here on a warrant, they know what happened to the money and they say, we're gonna put X amount of dollars into improving the Bagnell fields.
Already have the proposal set, have that proposal.
Right, so they, they know it's a two-step dance. We have to close it out to surplus, but we're gonna park it there for a nanosecond.
But have the proposal already in place.
And we have it in place, 'cause we start with the answer and work backwards. Listen, people. And then you just go spend the money like you want to. So I'm not saying, put it in the wrong account. I understand that. As a lawyer, I have to put the client's money in the I O T R account before I put it in my account. If I skip the I O T R account, I get this bad. I get it. So sometimes you gotta put it in the right account and then you charge accordingly legally and then you take the money out. So you can't skip steps, you fall downstairs. I get it. We could do that, close it out to surplus, make another warrant. People will vote for it, 'cause I know people love the Bagnell Elementary School as much as I do and my kids. And then we'll just accomplish it. So I'm with you.
Do you need to have town council look at that?
I really don't think we need to spend town council's money when the D O R sets the law. I, I really think the D O R's attorney can easily say, yes, that's the path to take. If you don't like their opinion, we can go to town council. But I don't know why we need to spend town council when the D O R has attorneys that, that do this.
So let's go with, let's go with, I'm suggesting, let's go with what Dan says. His motion is, or whatever, he makes a motion.
I'll make a motion to close.
He has a motion on the floor. Let's finish this other motion first.
Okay, and let's have a discussion on it.
Read the motion again.
Read the motion again.
Oh, there's a motion?
Well, it seems to me like the path of least resistance, so like.
Are you changing your motion?
So like electricity, no, I'll go with a motion. I make a motion, hit the excess funds, okay?
Well, can I, so you're making a motion to dissolve the existing program, right?
Dissolve the existing program.
Yeah.
Okay, pour over all the money that's left over, every dollar, every penny, into the town surplus.
Yeah.
Okay, add it to the other whatever, seven hundred grands in there.
Well, that's stabilization, that's different.
Oh, how much is in the reserve fund?
Twenty thousand is in the reserve.
So we'll add it to twenty thousand, so we'll have two hundred and twenty thousand. And then.
Airmark.
Airmarket.
Airmark his proposal.
Airmarket. We airmark a proposal that we think is gonna be a slam dunk.
This sounds like a circumvention.
We hope.
Right? Alio, alright. And then we'll have, we can talk about another warrant at another point if we wanna resurrect the, a new program and with recreation involved.
Does your, does your proposal mean that you wanna close the entire account and leave them with nothing?
Yes, it would have, unless we can start a new revolving account under the same warrant.
Like Bill was saying about a rainy day fund, you don't wanna leave them with absolutely nothing in their bank account.
They will have a new warrant with a new revolving cap.
Set the right way.
Set the right way. And we can talk about programs and what's good, the bad, the ugly, and.
What does that mean for the summer?
Nothing for the summer. We're daylighting a dollar short on this summer.
And, and you'd be looking at a special town meeting, correct, in the fall? You'd be looking for a special town meeting in the fall, correct?
And I, yes, to resolve that issue and among others.
So, 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 okay, so let me be clear. The motion on the floor is to engage with town council, not, not to review proposals from.
No, the D O R.
No, no, nothing to do with town council.
My motion is to.
His motion is to engage town council.
The original motion was to engage town council.
Okay.
Town council for your idea.
My proposal.
His proposal.
Ask town council.
That's the motion on the floor.
To.
So if town council refers me to the D O R, you're okay with me then following there?
That dope slap town council if they did that. Just. Have them call me.
Okay, I will, let's get through that. Let's, let's move the question.
So special town meeting in the fall, dissolve the revolving account.
Big box, I tell them.
Let her talk.
Dissolve the revolving account, transfer to surplus revenue, a warrant article for field, for field spending, and then create a new revolving account for the summer program?
Yeah, for a, a, a new, a new revisited one.
So what happens if the, if the new revolving account starts growing? We gotta set it up so it doesn't.
We have to set it up so it's managed properly and at the end of the year, you say, hey, what do we do with the extra money, guys?
I, I, I just wanna say that.
Use it or lose it.
I just wanna say that I've been in government, in small government, for ten years now and, and, you know, I know that some of us, I've owned a catering business and some of us have owned pizza shops and we own practices and this and that. This sounds like a circumvention. And I think that the law is designed, the D O R is gonna look at something like this and consider that to be potentially a circumvention of the law. We're not, we're not meeting the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law is, you have a revolving fund, it has to support itself for a very designated purpose. Now we're going to try to circumvent that by some sleight of hand. I'd love to know what council would say to that. I don't agree with this at all. I won't support this motion. I think we should accept proposals. In fact, I even like Dan's proposal, let's send that to the D O R. I like the proposal to send to D O R, but not to spend town council money to say, you know what, this is crazy or defer it to D O R. I don't wanna spend hundreds of dollars for that.
Is it practice to send it to the D O R for, for?
Sure, free legal advice with the auditing authority.
Before to send it to the D O R, I don't think so. I think what Dan has proposed is a smart, conservative way to do it. Why send it to the D O R, open a bag of worms?
I think that's a circumvention of the spirit of the law.
I think he's trying to correct the problem.
Why don't you get legal counsel from someone other than your own advocate? You want an advocate giving you legal counsel.
The Bagnell School, which is a dust bowl for the last ten years.
Joe, let me ask you this. Is the D O R the advocate for Groveland or is our town council? Who's the advocate?
I don't have a, I don't have.
Who's the advocate?
Alright, alright, hold on, hold on. Denise, would it cost thousands of dollars to go to the town council or what?
No.
So, so.
It's based on how many hours they put in, I don't know.
So do you think this is gonna be a big hour subject to bring before them?
It's a two hundred thousand dollar problem.
It's uncharted territory.
Throw five hundred bucks at it.
It's uncharted. This hasn't been done.
Right, exactly.
So there are issues that have to be addressed. I understand that people wanna take the easiest way. I'm all for the easiest way, but you can't circumvent the law.
I'm not circumventing the law. You know what? Listen, Mr. Wood, listen, Mr. Wood. I read the statute. Did you read the statute? I sent it to you. Did you read it?
If you're gonna yell at me, you can, you can address me at selectman.
Mr. Selectman Wood?
No, I did not.
Okay, I read the statute and everything I said appears to me legal and it's not a sleight of hand as the, a, a former caterer like to say. Okay, I got a law license and it's on the table. I don't check it at the door when I walk in here. It's in my pocket.
Alright, so Dan, your motion is what?
To ask town council if we can, at a special town meeting in the fall, dissolve the current revolving account, transfer to surplus revenue, create a warrant article to spend the money on the fields, and then create a new revolving account for the summer program. This is his motion.
Okay. So someone wanna second it?
I'll, I'll second it.
Ed, second it? All in favor?
Yep. No.
Okay, so now we got that taken care of.
So. Let me, let me just ask one question. I know about a half hour ago, forty-five minutes ago.
We're trying to run a meeting here, it's not.
In the last couple of years, any Groveland kids been excluded from the program for one reason or another?
Um, no.
Okay, so the hundred and fifty-six kids, no, no, no other Groveland kids have applied that. You didn't accept the kids from out of town in, in place of Groveland?
Over, absolutely not.
Okay, okay, alright, good, thank you. Scheduling issues.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to where I was trying to go with this. Number one, you guys have already said you will come before us three times a year.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm gonna start with a small motion. I'm gonna make a motion before the board that these guys will come before us three times a year. Oh, you started it? Go for it.
Forty-five minutes.
Okay.
We all love track, so go ahead.
Alright, so I have a motion on the floor. Does someone wanna second it?
I'll second.
Second. Joe seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, good. My second thing is, I want to, I'm not trying to say you're doing anything wrong and I'm not picking on you. The best policy for you people is to have a committee. This way here, you have checks and balances. No one's gonna point this and say, hey, well, how much would you pay yourself this year? You know what I'm saying? You gotta have checks and balances. So I still think that we need a board in place for the summer program, only to protect you guys. You gotta be protected.
Can you just, just so I understand, because, look, going by what Mr. Wood, you said, you know, we, we will report, or we should have been, and, and we will be reporting to you guys, so you guys will oversee. So what, what's the, the reasoning for another committee?
Your committee comes before you, you're gonna talk, they're gonna talk salary with you, what you pay the people, salary, program purchases. They're gonna run it like a business. You're gonna run that like a business through that committee with you guys. And when you come before us with the committee, we're gonna sit there and say, a, nay, no, whatever, you know what I mean? So you're gonna have a little program. And like I said, you three could come in here three times a year and do it, but guess what? You're the director, you have no checks and balances. You don't want the town people come and say, this guy's paying himself a good hefty wage, you know what I mean? Who's determining his wage? You don't need that. I'm just saying, you don't. This is gonna give you some, some, okay? And I think it's the way it should be done.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
Well, well.
Oh, go ahead.
It's a good motion. I'm just trying to understand, do you have the personnel to do that?
To have a committee?
In your organization to do that?
No, he.
To have a committee?
No, we can bring someone from the rec program and maybe someone from the.
Well, I think it, it, my opinion is it should be staff members and, and it should be parents of children who attend the program.
And also I'd like to see the rec involved in it as well. Like they just did here when they, on the, on the Bussin property, we just put a committee. They, they made a list of different people around town they wanted involved, and I definitely think the rec should be involved in it. And I definitely don't think it should be all one-sided toward the summer program, all parents.
Are you making that part of your motion?
I'm gonna, I'm going to.
Okay, fine, make, make, let's, let's move the question. We have a process, so we're gonna move the question.
So move the question.
Well, actually make the motion.
I was trying to make the motion, but we've got even more discussions. So, go back to my second motion. I wanna form a committee with the summer program, which you will have a diverse group of people. Rec, parents, whatever, some, some of your staff, maybe someone from the school on that board. That's my motion.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Joe seconded it? All in favor? Okay, good. Um, what else do we have left?
Can I ask one question, Mr. McDonald, because you brought this up a few times about children from outside of Groveland?
Sure, sure. Uh, here's my feeling on that. The district experimented with school choice. Okay, and it's along the similar parallel lines to my thinking on this, my rationale. School choice was a financial disaster for the district, okay? The, Joe was on the school committee that approved that. He can tell you about it too. Cost about twelve thousand dollars.
You don't know my full voting record, so I, you, you shouldn't, shouldn't say that.
Yeah, well, you can say if you voted against it.
I actually did.
Yeah, okay. So you got a twelve thousand dollars to educate a student. You don't need to be a C P A on this either. This is very simple figures and toe stuff, alright? Twelve thousand dollars to educate a student in the district, rough numbers. This, they thought it was a great idea, 'cause you get five thousand dollars. Oh boy, you get five thousand. So you lose seven thousand on every kit, okay? At a peak, I believe the number was around a hundred and seventy-seven kits. So you do the math on one seventy-seven times seven thousand and you lose millions. You could've built a new high school Groveland and put a big dent in the side of it with that money. But because people of town, alright, weren't paid attention, and your elected officials weren't, uh, 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 working and advocating for their constituents, the people that live in the district, including Groveland, they allowed outsiders in. And it's a great liberal concept, everyone should have equal opportunity in education and we're gonna be one world and all that. That's wonderful. But if we're gonna be one world, we're gonna open the door, all the Haverhill kids and the Methone kids and the Georgetown kids and everything. We shouldn't have to pay for their kids and subsidize them, okay? Shouldn't have to subsidize them. What you got going on over there is you, you've admitted, okay? You got kids from outside the district, alright? What are we doing? Why are we catering to kids from outside the district? They don't pay for any overhead. The fields over there have been a sandbox. My kids play on those fields, alright? It's all sand back there. My son was on the, the Tigers that we practiced on Tuesdays over there, the team, okay? I wasn't coached, Mr. Campbell was, thank you, alright? It's a sandbox. It's overgrown weeds. It's pathetic. So the point I'm trying to make is, those kids from the other town add zero to the infrastructure. And they add zero to the brand name of Groveland in the Pentica School District. Why should you come to Groveland and pay Groveland prices for a house when you can buy a house across the river and you can get all the amenities from Groveland and you pay half price or a quarter price or maybe zero price? Do you need to be a financial wizard to figure out that that's, that is not the financially smartest thing to do? I wanna build the best brand name for Groveland and I'd like to see it more exclusive. And it's not to be snobby and say, I wanna exclude and maybe we'll put up a, a gate around it or something like that. But we have to be careful in who it is we serve in this town and what does it mean to the taxpayers that live in this town? Have I answered your question?
Let me just say, let me say one thing.
Well, I think that, you know, whether, all this surplus of money that we now have is partially due to the children that came from outside of Groveland. Now, this program, just, just so everyone knows, this program, we did not advertise outside of this town. The only, the brochure that I gave you goes home to Bagnell students only, and that is all. So all these, you know, students that, children that come from Georgetown, Bradford, Haverhill, it's all.
So, all these, you know, students that, children that come from Georgetown, Bradford, Haverhill, it's all by word of mouth because of the quality that this program offers.
We should be fortunate that we have.
That's why these children come. It's word of mouth. That's all.
You can make a profit on anything. If you give me a free restaurant building, I'll make a profit out of it. You give me a free elementary school, I'll run a profit.
All right, all right.
You can run anything if it comes with a free twenty million dollar building or fifteen or thirty.
Done and over with for this year. The program's set up, the program's going to run. We have our chance, we have our chance to change it. We're not going to change it tonight. We have our chance. We've got it set up now.
This side wants to change it, that side wants to frustrate it.
Okay.
People are out there Groveland.
I'm going to close after this.
Come down to the meetings, get involved.
Yeah, Mike Dempsey of Tackro. So, Denise, the most they can spend is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year, right?
Under a revolving account.
Yes, so, it seems to me, I, I, I don't know, but the program should be designed never to spend more than a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year and should be taken in more than that.
Correct.
So, eventually, they're going to reach a limit on the number of students. It's going to be limited by that, not by anything else.
Yes, when I had met with Matt a few months ago, I had said, you know, when you come before the board in September, we really need to start with what your expenses are and work back into the tuition cost. We need to figure out how many students can be allowed and figure out what the correct tuition cost is to reach that. Currently, it's one hundred and fifteen thousand based on town meeting, but it could go up to one hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Which of course should be Groveland kids first, and if there's room afterwards, expand that out to the other towns. It's not a big deal to do that. Okay, and like I just said, the program's set up for this year. It's off and running. We now have in place the stops. We're going to come in before us to have this conversation again at another night. And we have somewhat come up with a, the spending of the money. We've got something in place now. We got the, the building committee is going to do their due diligence on hopefully getting a project together and some numbers to it. I think we've made some, some legwork on it. I'm going to close it at this point because we spent a lot of time on this and there's other people waiting tonight to talk to us. And again, I thank you for coming in and I can tell you personally, I wasn't here, okay?
I don't, I, I think it's, uh, just a good practice to take the photos back. No need to have the, uh, photos of the children go into the public record. You made your point and wonderful pictures, nice kids and, and, you know, there's disclosures and all kinds of things that you have to do with parents to, then these become public records and want to return them.
So, again, what I started saying was, I wasn't here to attack you people, and I hope I didn't. I was here to try and put this together. I think we've done it. I think we made some good, you know, movement on this tonight, and I hope you have a successful season.
All right, thank you, Mr. John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you all.
Nice chairman, uh, could I ask you a favor, please?
Where do you store it?
I, I assume from the, um, discussion, prior discussion, you've seen our proposal.
Thanks for coming in.
I mean, that might be an, that might be an avenue.
That you liked the proposal. I'd like you to make a motion to accept the proposal as written so that we can hopefully move ahead on this program.
I honestly, I honestly haven't seen it. I'm not trying to prolong it. I haven't seen the proposal. I didn't see it.
I sent it to you as an email.
I didn't, I was out of the office this afternoon.
No, I sent it to you two weeks ago.
I didn't, I didn't see it. I read, I read his, I, he gave it to me earlier. I read it.
I read it. I remember the details. I went on vacation. Mike, he likes it. He's seen it.
I don't have, I don't have a problem.
Bill, Bill, can we, can we look at it next meeting?
Yeah.
And then we'll hold off on the legal opinion, and if that works, we can incorporate it with the legal opinion.
Do we need a number to get to the legal opinion? We do.
No, we just need to know the process. So, I can call the D O R between and have them ask for something in writing by the next meeting on the process itself.
I think what they're saying, Dan.
Or I guess town council is here.
I didn't know if it'd be helpful to see it.
Town council is here.
What they, what they want to do is they want to get our good graces to move forward. That's what, that, that, all you guys, look, that's all they want. They want our good graces to go ahead and move forward, to go ahead and put some proposals together down there. The building committee.
To agree to the proposal we presented.
To do some preliminary budget.
To do a preliminary budget.
Why not?
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Hold on, I'll, I'll make a motion to proceed with that. Give me okay.
What's a cost? What's a cost?
I don't think they know that yet.
They don't know the cost.
No, what's the bu, budget? What are they going to?
They're, they're requesting two hundred thousand.
No, we, we, all we were looking for this evening was the board's approval so that we could
Get numbers.
Proceed to start contacting and getting different preliminary numbers in so we can put together a hard budget
Right.
to present back to you folks.
Yeah, I want to clarify. You're not asking for a dollar today.
No, 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 just, they just want our good graces to move forward.
Yeah.
I think they have it.
What do you got in your account left?
Motion's on the floor.
Motion in your account?
In, in the Bagnell School building account, we have at the moment around twenty thousand dollars.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Has it been seconded?
I'll second it.
Dan seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a discussion on it?
No, good.
Okay, go.
Thank you.
Get some info, we're back.
Great.
All right, so, sorry, everybody would spend so late here, but, um, I think we're under eight forty-five with Aaron Pinkham and the G B L regarding the C P A proposal.
He said eleven, right?
Well, good night. Hello there.
You're late. You're late.
So, you wanted to come before us with the G B L regarding the C P A proposal?
Well, I think I was sort of forced into coming.
Okay.
Um, so, I guess the reason why I'm here is because I believe that I should still be allowed to run the C P A project with Denise for the Washington Park project. And apparently, G B L does not feel the same way. So, I'm here to see what you guys have decided.
We haven't decided any.
We haven't decided any. This is the first we've heard it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know the whole history behind what's going on and what have you, um, and maybe you don't want to explain it, but I know you've done a lot of work. I know I followed the whole thing last year and how much work you put into it. I would definitely like to see you be involved, uh, however. Um, I don't know the whole history behind it. So, without crying and asking, I don't know.
What do you feel is the selectman's authority here, if any?
Well, my opinion was, which I said to Aaron, unfortunately, my opinion is the proposal that went to C P A was from Groveland Baseball. As much as I know Aaron did the work or a majority of the work, it didn't come from her. It didn't go to town meeting from Aaron Pinkham. It came from Groveland Baseball. When there was a change on the board, I had said to her, now it's, I'm working with Groveland Baseball. It's their project. At which point she said, well, I really want to be the point person. I did all the work and so I, and then, but then I heard from Groveland Baseball saying, no, we're the point person because it's Groveland Baseball. At which point I came to Bill and I think you got involved, Mike, and I said, well, let the board make the decision who I should be working with on this proposal because now I have two conflicting sides.
Okay, is there anyone here from Groveland Baseball that wants to talk? Who's the chairman? Is the chairman here?
Bill can jump in as well.
Uh, come up.
Can they state their names?
State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Joe Sullivan. Uh, I'm a resident at eleven Apple Blossom Way. I'm president of Groveland Baseball League. I've been part of the league for many years. I'm surprised that this is even, is even coming up, uh, quite honestly. This was never a one-person project. Um, I have a timeline I can pass out to you that shows everyone that was involved with this. This was not a one-person project by any means. It was our board. There was non-board members. There was many people involved. I can pass this out. You can take a look at it. Um, there was no way this was a one-person project. Um, Aaron did a lot of work on this, okay? I will not take that away from her. But this was something that, as, as a group, as a board, as volunteers in this town, we, we put this together as a group. Uh, we met two weeks ago. Uh, we, as a board, Groveland Baseball League, um, voted in Lisa Sewup as the chairperson of the Groveland, uh, Washington Park Revitalization C P A Project. So, we're planning to have Lisa as our chairperson. We're going to have board members and non-board members, uh, on this committee. We invited Aaron to be on the committee so she could also contribute. So, I, I don't really understand why this is even just a discussion at this point.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
When, when the project first came about, did Aaron present everything or did you, did she come in with the group?
All of us, all of us participated.
So, everyone came in and presented?
Myself, Lisa, Eric might have been there.
I remember seeing, I remember seeing her in front of me with maybe one other girl. I didn't remember seeing the whole committee.
I'm on Groveland TV if you want to go look at it. I, I was at the meetings. So was Lisa. So was Marissa Vantreska.
Do you have a copy of the warrant article?
I don't have it with me, but I, I.
It's specifically rough.
Would you like it?
Yes.
It's Groveland Baseball.
For every meeting that we had to come to, it was at least me, Lisa and Marissa. Joe was at a couple. He was out of town for a few. But for the majority of every meeting, it was me, Lisa and Marissa. The amount of board support, they were in the audience to support the project, to show that, yeah, Groveland Baseball was on board with this project. But I was the one that got the quotes for every single item on there, to the exception of two, the lighting and the, the warning tracks. So, to say that it was not a one-person job, I will totally agree with you with that. But to say that it was the entire G B L board, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
I mean, I, I, I know you and I appreciate it, you know, you volunteered on G B L, but I mean, it's tough to serve two masters and when you were president, you had standing to represent G B L. Once you step down, I mean, though, that, that kind of goes with it, I say it. The, the Article twenty-two is clear on its face. It says the project is to be managed by the Town Finance Director and the Groveland Baseball League under the C P A category of recreation. So, that's the, uh, 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 the legislative, uh, piece here that's binding, the binding authority. And I think it must be unless it's modified. I don't think that the board of selectmen can, um, deviate from that. It's, it's as simple as that. It's the Town Finance Director, Denise, uh, with and G B L. So, you know, I understand you put a lot of time in it. I'd be frustrated because you feel like the door might be closed on you. Maybe there's a way you can get back on the board or maybe they could give you some recognition and standing. I'm sure that's something.
I think we've already, we've already extended an invitation for her to be on the committee.
You know, i, i, and, and legally, I think they, with a corporate resolution or sub resolution, they could say this is going to be our liaison or agent or something like that. But without that legal standing, it has to be an authorized agent of G B L. That's my interpretation.
Dan, what did you read? Was that the warrant?
Yes.
That one's a town meeting.
And that was approved by town meeting?
That's it. It's, it's clear on its face. So, you know, uh, I think G B L will include you. I can't speak for G B L, but you're a good person.
Well, I can say one more time that I know that all the work you put into it, and I can see your frustration, and I'm in business myself, and I, I, as you sit there, I go through the same thing in business. It's rotten sometimes. It doesn't feel good, but I think, you know, the only thing like Dan just said is suck it up and all you can do is go in there and just try to put.
I will not, I will not suck it up.
No, but they extend, they extended the olive branch, yeah.
But the way that it went down was an anonymous email that went without the entire board knowing about it happening. The people that were involved in the project from the get-go were not consulted at all that this was going to be a situation. It, it's, it's just, it stinks. I, I don't understand why they have such a problem with it. If it's because I'm not officially associated with G B L, I, I don't know why they don't think that I can handle it or they don't want me to handle it. I don't, I don't understand what the big deal is. When I started the project, I was just a board member. And my catapulting into presidency just happened at about the same time that the C P A project was getting submitted. I didn't do it because I was associated with G B L. I did it because the park needed it. I had the force of G B L behind me to be able to, you know, perpetuate it.
The, the warrant wasn't written that way. I mean, it might be poor drafting.
That's fine. That's fine. If, if that's what they want, that's, that's fine. But I will not just be a part of a committee. It's like a consolation prize and that's, that's, that's just not. It's not, uh, uh, that's not okay.
I think the bigger issue is the, how does someone go from being so involved and being so enthusiastic and being so passionate about the position in Groveland Baseball League and Washington Park and all the effort to ultimately resigning overnight?
It got ugly and I didn't want to be a part of that. And this project was always kind of separate. You know, it was me, Marissa and Lisa, just, we got everything that we needed to get done, done. And when we had something to report, we came and reported, you know, claps on, on the back, great job. Anything you need, we'll let you know.
I, I do the development of this project with you, Marissa and Lisa on, both on the board of selectmen, plus also being a voting member of the Community Preservation Committee. But, um, I agree with Dan. We, you know, whether it was poorly drafted or whatever, we have a jurisdictional issue. If, if you were the only person on earth that put this proposal together, it wouldn't change the fact that that warrant article says that this is a project of the G B L. So, if you step away from the G B L, if, it seems to me rationally that that, therefore, you, you lose your control over the project.
You know.
It's a, it's a technicality that no one is comfortable with, but that's the reality.
I usually try to say it the way it is, and when you had come before us originally, I kind of looked at it and said, why is this a G B L project, not a C P A project? Because it was more in my eyes for that whole swing set, parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. And I know G B L was going to get some perks out of it and what have you. And I, I always thought, me, I kind of thought it was a C P C project, you know what I'm saying? And I guess the technicality of it, it really isn't. From what Dan just read, it's G B L because it was written up that way. So, it's really an ink era more than what you and I conceived it as, you know what I mean?
We have Mike, I'm sorry. We have Mike on the, here as the chair of the C, C P A. Give us a little bit of history, uh, how the proposal originally came through. Was it authored by the G B L or was it authored by Aaron? Do you remember? Because I don't remember. That's a critical piece.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it was my impression that, you know, Aaron was bringing this forward with the backing of G B L.
Right.
But obviously, some things like the playground and the parking lot maybe aren't so close to being G B L. And the reason why I think that that was put in there on the warrant article that way was because, um, Denise and said, you know, we shouldn't name specific people. So, let's try to keep it organizations. We always used to name specific people, you know? Appointed Bob Guptill to be in charge of the Civil War Memorial Project. But, um, this year, I believe Denise gave me a little bit of guidance, said, you know, let's try to move distinct personalities from the management of them. Let's stick with boards or committees. So, that's why we did it that way.
I mean, I, I think in very simplistic terms, I, I, from my experience on the C P C, this seems like a project from three very passionate, committed women. Lisa, Marissa and Aaron. That's the way I looked at it.
I'm sorry to see what happened because, you know, without the three of them, I, I don't know that, um,
That's my impression.
The proposal would have been as acceptable as it was.
So, so we have Lisa, we have Marissa, we can have Aaron. We're going to have other board members as part of this committee. It's a big project. What, it's really not any different than the way the project started, to be quite honest.
I'm not trying.
The project did started even before Aaron was president, and there was other events that took place even before she kind of took over that and as president. So, we're trying to come up with a solution here by having this committee, which is G B L and non-G B L board members, to help complete this project. And I, I don't really see why that's not a good solution.
We, we haven't said that. I, now, on that side, I, to me, that appears to be a very reasonable resolution. You don't feel comfortable working under those circumstances?
I understand where you're all coming from and I will let you guys make the decision. I think that it's clear where my position comes from.
Okay, so we, we are not going to sit here all night, and we've heard both parties, both sides. Dan, you read your paper?
I, I, I think we're stuck with what's in print. I'd like to see you guys come together, whatever the, except the offer they've extended to you. I'd like to see you guys come together, whatever, accept the offer they've extended to you, bury whatever hatchets there are, it's for the kids. You didn't do it for yourself.
I know I didn't do it for myself. I've been in town for a long time, and I've seen the huge changes that have happened at that park.
Yeah, so just-
And I've been a part of it behind the scenes, so I know all about the hard work that GBL puts into it.
You're still involved if you want to be, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, but-
All right, so, do we need to take a vote tonight?
I think we should.
Okay. So, someone want to make a motion what they want to do? You want to-
I'll make a motion that we have to follow the warrant article.
Okay. So, any more discussion?
No, I think-
I second, I should say, anyone want to second?
I think reluctantly, I think we have to follow that.
Okay.
Is that the discussion?
Okay. So, is anyone going to second it?
Yeah, I'll second.
Ed's going to second it? And any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. All right, so moving-
What do you need?
Joe had it.
So, moving on down the list, we need to vote on the minutes on the June 1st, 2015
minutes. I'd like to make an amendment to it.
Okay.
An amendment, page two, looks like third paragraph. We were talking about VZ Park, and just to read it here, the facilities manager was living in one of the apartments and not generating any rent. And the way it reads here, the last line, "The possibility of tenants paying insurance costs was briefly discussed." I mentioned that I didn't see anything on the sheet that VZ Park was paying any insurance. Dan McDonald brought up the fact that VZ Park probably should be paying any, there was no mention of the tenants. It was, maybe strike out the word tenants and possibility of VZ Park picking up insurance costs.
And that is correct. I double-checked the meeting, so that is corrected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Good find.
Anyone else have any discussion on the minutes? We take a vote to accept the minutes as with Ed's amendment?
Can I say one thing on the VZ Park? The last meeting, Dan Stewart, for Matthew Drive Groveland, there was a discussion on weddings and receptions and parties, and my suggestion to Claire was that, as we do for Groveland Day, anybody that is home drinking liquor at VZ Park, please give certificate of insurance, naming Groveland as an additional insured.
They already do.
They do that.
Yeah. So, for their requirement to have them buy liquor liability for any vendor coming in is not needed. If VZ Park does their own selling of liquor, they need their own policy, and I just wanted to clarify that, and I did not get to do that at the last meeting a month ago. And I would be more than happy, as an insurance person, to review the certificate to make sure it's authentic and true, so the town is not held liable if it's false, to protect VZ Park and the town.
What we're trying to find out is, would it make sense for us to buy one certificate? If you can answer this, it'd be great. One insurance policy that we pay for, and we would roll the cost into our banking, rather than have two people who are renters have to come forward with a certificate of their own insurance.
When you say renter, do you mean people that are living at the facility? No. People that have an event must have somebody that has a serve safe bartender with a certificate of liquor liability with name of the town of Groveland and VZ Park Association as additional insured. If VZ Park is doing it themselves, then they do need a liquor liability policy, which you do not do currently, so you do not need that policy.
That's what they're exploring, is obtaining their own liquor license from the town and being their own server and hire a bartender to work for them.
And that would go on gross annual receipts, so if we have a million dollars receipts, the premium would be about five, six thousand dollars, and that is just a hedge guess. I'd have to run the numbers and the underwriting process and so forth, but at this point, I don't believe VZ Park is doing that, correct? And I really don't think it's feasible for you to do that. I think it's better to have vendors come in and provide the certificates of liability insurance.
All right. Would that be a good revenue source for you to do that one? Well, it's easier, you know, when people are renting things for an event, you know, it's another stumbling block for them where they have to go get their own certificate of insurance, you know. They're not expecting to do that.
So, VZ Park would have its own liquor license, and you'd just control that whole process?
Or at least we would have our own insurance policy.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, so we're trying to get the minutes approved. Do we approve the minutes?
So you're, I'm sorry, just, so you're not in favor of that?
Unless the Board of Selectmen and the town is in favor of approving a liquor license for VZ Park, which, do you need a liquor license now to serve the liquor from a private vendor? I don't know that. BFWs and elk clubs, they all have the town liquor licenses that are signed off by the town annually and renewed, and they must have at least a million dollar occurrence limit for liquor liability. And again, it's done on gross sales of beer, wine, and liquor. So, you know, if you're going to go down that route, the attorney needs to look at it, and the insurance person needs to look at it and make sure it's done properly to protect the town.
Okay.
Period.
All right. Good point.
So, one last time, can we get the minutes approved? All in favor?
I'm sorry, someone didn't make a motion yet.
Motion, a motion to approve the minutes.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Ed seconded it? Ed seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we got a property use permit for the amateur astronomy club request to use for our rebuilds.
So we've discussed this in the past, when the moratorium was lifted. At the last meeting, I reached back out to Ed Burke, who had submitted his initial request, and he now provided the proper form, so.
Okay. So, everyone in favor of that?
Can someone just formally make a motion? Thank you.
What is that group?
It's an amateur astronomy club. They go out from like 7:30 at night to 2:00 in the morning on random nights. It's both. They go out on random nights, they check the forecast when it's going to be clear. So that's why the permit is technically open-ended, June to November, and he usually calls and says, these are the nights we're going out this month.
The Groveland group?
Yep. It's a Groveland resident that runs it.
Do they contact you?
They do. Because they have to get the key from the gate, so they'll call me, we'll give them the key, then they drop it off, and then the next time, they'll come and pick it up.
Okay, so we got the end-of-the-year transfers.
So these transfers, and I will tell you, I'd given you a new sheet because I reviewed it after I sent out the final one, and one of them was put through the incorrect line by the police department. So these are, and I can give you, the finance committee approved them earlier this evening. Their end-of-the-year transfers to cover deficits in certain lines. I did put down explanations. I can give you a brief update. So, the map updates and assessing, we pay annually to have our GIS maps updated, but it was never budgeted for. They've just found random money every year, but the assessing budget actually has a map update line, so that's really where it should be budgeted for going forward. In my line, it's, we're covering postage. I think with so many certified return receipt mailings for the tax title, we just, you know, exhausted postage. So I'm just moving from my other lines over to cover the postage. Police officer wages, you'll see, they have had one officer in particular, but several that have been out on sick time, have exhausted a significant number of sick time. When they're out, they have to use reserves, which comes out of their other wages line. So they have money in the patrolman's line, and they actually have expense money, but I didn't move that over. Plumbing and gas, their salary is based on a percentage of permit, so you never know from year to year what that salary is going to end up with. Veterans benefits, we've talked about, we talked about through the budget process several times. The way the state Veterans Agency works, if a veteran lives in town and applies for benefits and they're granted, we automatically pick up the cost. This year, we added three new veterans and one moved out of town, so we netted two new veterans, and some of them have a pretty significant monthly expenditure. So this $11,200 is as a result of where we ended up at the end of the year, and one of those veterans just came on in May. So, we did increase the budget line next year because we were expecting some of this. We still may be underfunded on that line, given the new veteran that came in in May. The fire department, the expense line, for several, well, probably for the last year, the chief has looked to move the generator. There was a generator inside the south station, fire station, and he wanted to have it moved outside where it should be. That was an expense of $8,000, but he saved money elsewhere in his budget to cover that cost, to make sure that that generator could be moved outside. The Mass Fire Academy training was something that the previous board agreed to send so many firefighters to, the firefighter 1-2 training, knowing that he would have money in his budget to move, so that's just a standard. The health nurse exhausted her budget by 64 cents, so that transfer is to cover that.
We need to bring her in.
64 cents, I know. The cemetery commissioners, they actually gave up their stipends and asked to transfer that $300 stipend to plant a tree in Dickshack as memory on the cemetery property, so we're taking that money from their stipend line and moving it into their expense line. The Penticott supplemental assessment is just moving from one Penticott line to another. They bill us, it really doesn't matter how it comes out, it's all Penticott money, so that's just a standard bookkeeping. And library, part-time wages, that was something that was discussed last year when we were without a director, and a children's librarian for so long, they were using pages and part-time wages, so they knew they were going to have excess money to move over and cover that. So it's $47,217. I'm hoping that there will not be any additional transfers after the final warrant, which is on the 16th. We tried to go through and forecast what, where we would be in some of these accounts, especially the ones that were over, and try to plan accordingly to cover those, so.
I looked at those.
Thank you. So, we've, the-
So you actually need to vote on it, if the board chooses.
So, do I have a motion to accept?
No, this is on the year-end transfers.
Do I have a motion to accept year-end transfers? I'll make a motion to accept year-end transfers. Any further discussion?
How long was that generator in the fire station?
I think, actually, Tracy, you may know.
Why did you need to move it for eight grand?
Well, it really should be outside.
Was it a fire hazard, the fire station?
It should be outside and freeze-up storage space inside.
And the plan was to move that-
So it was to make storage for eight grand? Just asking. I'm just asking. I just ask the questions, you know?
Okay. Any further discussions?
What if I disapprove of the eight grand? It just seems like a waste of money.
That's your vote.
We go line by line, approve everything but the eight grand?
Has it already been moved?
Yes.
So if we don't approve it, it doesn't get paid for?
If you don't approve it, then our free cash would be hit by the $8,000. Any negative line would come off of our free cash.
The eight grand would come out of the fireman's budget?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not touching free cash.
It comes out of his budget?
Yes. He's just moving from his other lines to cover that, so we're not taking from someone's.
Budget's neutral.
Yes. But it still requires a vote.
But next time, if he can find eight grand to cut, maybe he should cut it without moving the generator. How about that?
Well, he won't have a generator move next year.
It's amazing to me, when you want to find money, you find money.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor?
In a second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay. The reserve fund transfers?
So these are, so there's $20,000 put in the finance board's reserve fund that they can transfer for unforeseen expenditures. So there are several of them. So one of them was the renegotiating of my contract. I didn't think it was appropriate to put it on special town meeting when it didn't come up until the town meeting warrant, so I waited for a special town, a reserve fund transfer. $8,000 is the property and casualty insurance that it costs us to add the title insurance on the three properties we purchased. And then the town clerk has two requests, unforeseen expenses, her date stamp went in the middle of the year, which was several hundred dollars to have that replaced. I think part of it is, as I said, some departments don't really analyze their budget requests when they're submitting them. They, you know, think that they're fine from year to year, but don't increase when the cost of expenses may increase. I think the town clerk may have been one of those. She submitted her request, not really taking into consideration the cost of her supplies, her election expenses, so that's why both of these requests have come before them. And these were not a standard transfer because they exceed the 3% budget transfer allowance, so that's why they are in reserve fund transfers. And the finance committee did sign off and approve all of them this evening.
They did that tonight.
They did that tonight, yes.
So, I get a motion.
Motion to approve those transfers.
Second?
Question? Yeah, on the administrative assistant salary, it's a reduction of $17,700?
Yes.
If you leave it there, will those funds be available in January as part of the same fiscal year?
Those funds go away tomorrow at midnight.
July.
Tomorrow's June 30th. Those funds go away tomorrow at midnight.
So there was an excess there?
Correct. The administrative assistant retired in September.
So if you don't transfer it, it adds up in excess funds, any?
Correct. So anything that's left, so right now, we have about $370,000.
It's like fund balance.
Correct.
Retained earnings.
Correct. So $370,000 right now is our fund balance. We do still have one more payout, we have three days of payroll, and we have one more final warrant. So this is really, if it, you know, if we transfer it now, it comes off of our available fund balance, or it would have come off of free cash if we left a negative in those other accounts.
And one more question, you said, there's a triple asterisk, several new veterans were added during the year.
Yes.
Retirees? What do you mean added? Can you, am I missing something?
Yes.
What do you mean they were added?
Came into town.
Yes, so-
Somebody retired and they're veterans, so it-
No, so, this is through the Mass Veterans Program, so-
Okay, I'm not familiar with the program.
And that's fine. So veterans, if they live in your community, can apply for Veterans Benefits. If they are granted Veterans Benefits, the town then puts the bill for those benefits. So we really have no say. Our veterans agent is Mike over in Haverhill. So he would approve the veteran if they meet the criteria, and then we get the bill for it. So we had, no, so we had three veterans come into town, and we had one veteran leave town. But the-
That's a great thing that we provide veteran services, but does that come into local aid and we can't any of them back, or no?
No, there has been some discussion from the state that they may pick up the cost and then hit us on the cherry sheet with it. I don't know if that's going to happen. For us-
Because I'm curious, because I've advocated for veteran housing, but if you bring in 1,000 veterans-
Yeah, and it's actually, so this year-
Does it come with a price tag and no revenue?
So I think our budget last year, or this current year, was 35,000. Next year, we've budgeted 50,000, and I honestly don't think that's enough, because one new veteran came in in May, and it was a significant hit, so.
One more question. What is it per veteran?
It depends. It's all based on their earning capacity. So we could have $1,500 a month, $2,500 a month, or a couple hundred dollars a month. It really varies. But we get a monthly, we have to sign a monthly payroll that we get from the state that shows what their benefits are. So that's why, if it's someone who comes in, you know, maybe that's not as much of an expense, obviously it's not that big of a hit, but the veteran that moved in in May was a significant amount, so.
That's interesting, and there's no federal funding to help us.
Unfunded, man.
That ain't nice, huh?
So I think the 50,000 in next year's budget is already underfunded based on the new veteran that came in.
Great.
Okay.
Yes, it's hard to plan for that, then.
It's very hard to plan for that.
Wasn't it talked that the, when we had the Senator, they were talking about helping us fund that?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. The state, they've been discussing it, trying to help communities deal with it.
The state may fund that back for us.
In theory, it could have 5,000 veterans move in.
Correct.
It would be broke.
Correct. Correct.
You need a, we need a circuit breaker like we have with special ed costs.
Yes.
That's interesting, though.
So as much as you want to invite veterans to live in your community, help them, it does hurt us on the flip side when we're paying their benefit. If we had, if we had an estimate going forward, it would be great, but you never know when someone's going to come in or move out, that it's just going to adjust your budget.
Quality of service there, you're going to need.
That's, that's crappy.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'm done.
Okay, so we've had enough discussion.
So you have a motion from Ed on the reserve fund transfers.
I'll second it.
Dan seconded it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on to the new old business, I have one thing.
And I have one thing.
Okay, I spoke with Mr. Arcanyan, Bob Arcanyan, the road commissioner tonight, earlier on, and he wanted me to publicly announce that the pines will be getting paved within the next two weeks. So there'll be pavement down and the project will be at pavement and then finishing up from there and buttoning up things from there.
If I can just add to that.
Get it done by the fall, so.
Both floor, can I just add to that real quick? Go ahead. We received notification today that the Army Corps of Engineers has extended our permit for the boat ramp. So now that we've got that extension, we can go forward and start on the boat ramp.
We can go boating.
So we had, the permit had expired in January because it was up for five years and the project wasn't completed, so now we will go back out to bid on that.
And when do you think, when do you think they can start construction?
They still cannot start until November first. So our plan is to go out to bid early, have them order the concrete planks, so it takes a lot of time. So we'd like to award the bid, let them have all the planks, start storing things here, and then on November one.
Okay, good idea.
Will be our plan, after they come back before the conservation.
We're sure that the removal of the remainder of the sand and how the fields are going to be left are going to be left level and usable, as far as being able to go forward and seed and.
Yes.
Do all that stuff.
Yes, that is correct.
Say that again, I missed it.
I just want to make sure that when they're done taking out the sand that they've been contracted to do, that they leave the land level and usable for us to go forward and not have to go back and re-level.
Yeah, that was part of their contract.
Yes.
Right, but that's one of the concerns that many people have, is that it's not going to be left in the conditions to move forward with.
Yeah.
Yes, and some of it.
Is there a plan laid out yet here?
There's been a plan laid out here.
There's a plan laid out in some place.
So some of, just so you know, Mike, some of the piles over there are the highway department. So the front piles closest to town hall are, I guess, the highway and the back piles are the sand, so. But the, he, Bobby has talked to TW Excavating and they're going to make sure that it's all level when they're, they are expecting to wrap up.
They were supposed to bring it to, I think, to loom and seed, weren't they?
I think so. I don't know about loom and seed at all, but it's supposed to.
I think they're going to bring it in to be usable, so.
Stabilization.
Right, but I think the concern is that someone like that doesn't know how to lay a field completely for use as a soccer field.
It's not going to happen.
Right, no, that's not right, that's not, that's what, I guess Bobby would probably do that, um, yes.
It's supposed to be bid later or something, I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, it depends, I mean, it depends what, you know, if Bobby can lay the seed and stuff in the loom or. They're supposed to level the land, so that all we have to do is go in with like a topsoil. No, 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 that's not their job. Or if our department can do that, yes, that's correct.
So we have correspondence.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't even see him raise his hand.
Do the correspondence, because I'm, I want to quickly mention that we did reach out to board of selectmen as we agreed to. We did reach out to Mr. Fields. Mr. Fields was the gentleman who presented to us about the off-road vehicles and quality of life impact to him and his neighbors, and he did get back to us, I won't go into the details, but he basically gave us some suggestions and generally indicated that there were some improvements, and he ended the letter by, you know, gave us a lot of details, and he ended the letter by saying, my thanks to you, the selectmen, the Groveland and environmental police, improvement is noted. Please do not let up, we do not want your good work to go for naught, so we did respond. The police department in Groveland has been extremely active with identifying people that are using off-road vehicles, riders, bikers and so forth, and, you know, alerting them as to what the law is and what the consequences are if they were to continue. And basically, they stepped up enforcement, so we did get a reasonable result, but it's not a completed project. It's not like, you know, everything is hunky-dory and there's no noise out there and abuse. It's just that it's been cut down to a point that it seems like Mr. Fields, in a letter dated to us on June eleventh, is that it's more tolerable, and he commended us and the police for their good work.
I know that I've, my shop is right there, and I've seen him at least two to three times have kids pulled over, environmental police with the Groveland police, and I've actually seen him load the bikes up. So I think if they keep up the measures they're doing, I think the message is going to get out and the kids are going to stop going out there because they know they're going to get in trouble, so I think it is working.
And, and to, probably to what Dan would probably be thinking, it doesn't seem to be, well, it hasn't impacted our budget, so it's not like the police is racking up all kinds of extra hours that we have to pay for, so so far, we're still within the budget with all this, all this stepped up enforcement, so we'll see.
Okay, so, we move to finance director's time?
Oh, sure.
Old, new business?
Kind of skipped that. No, he had done new business.
You have something?
Yeah, instead of doing a selectman's time, I'd like, if, if it's possible for the next meeting, I'd like to have, I'd like to ask the board and the chair to support me on having on the agenda just a discussion regarding the status of the collection of back to, back taxes. And I also would like to introduce some concepts in terms of, I realize what is, what is legal and what is not legal, but I'd like to talk to you about potential concepts in providing payment plans for some people. There are ways to do that, so, just to put it on the agenda so we can discuss it, if you don't mind. And the reason for that is this, we, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town to collect unpaid taxes, and I examined the list, in my personal opinion, without mentioning any names, I feel that some people should not be on that list. In other words, I think that they, you know, decided to, to not pay taxes, that's fine. However, I also can believe, I don't know anybody specific, but I have to believe, based on my business, that some people are on that list and owe taxes because bad things happened. There was a disability, there was a death, there was a loss of a job, there was loss of a business, and I think it's possible that we can enter into contract with certain people and go into a payment plan.
There is no authority under the law for tax title.
What about contract law, if we just decide to do that as a local?
But I think you're circumventing the purpose of the law, which is to take, it's to take discretion out of that process. Everybody is treated the same, every taxpayer that comes before us, until they are actually in tax title is the only time you can legally put them into a payment plan. And that's why, it is to protect the town and myself as tax collector from deciding that your situation is worse than Mike's situation, and it takes all impartiality out of that.
So maybe during finance director's time, instead of putting it on the agenda, can you give us an update?
Sure.
What are we doing, are we actually foreclosing on people, what exactly are we, you know?
I mean, I can tell you that briefly now, we're not, so we haven't, you still have, we're still going through a process, so. The people that had outstanding taxes from two thousand and two to two thousand and fourteen, they had until June nineteenth, I think, and then I was waiting until, I have to get through the end of the fiscal year. Beginning of July, they will get the letter of advertising that gives them thirty days to pay, or else they would be advertised in the paper. After they're advertised, there has an actual taking date on it in which we would actually place a lien at the registry. That's all at this point that I'm looking to do. Then I need to do the two thousand and fifteen taxes in that same process. Once we get cleaned up, then we go back and reexamine the properties that are out there from two thousand, two thousand one, nineteen ninety-nine, and actually start looking to see what we could foreclose on, if that's something the town wants to do.
And, and it's fair to say, there's been deals made in the town of Groveland.
There has.
Where people have had the opportunity to make payments and they, for whatever reason, didn't keep up with the, and it's beyond that point now, is how I understand it.
Correct, people can pay, if, if taxes are current, people can pay whatever they want as frequently as they, so if people want to pay fifty dollars a week, they can do that. There's no, but again, there's no legal authority under the tax laws that you can put someone in a payment plan. It doesn't stop the interest, it doesn't waive the interest, but they can make payments if they want so that they don't come up with a thousand dollars a quarter.
If the person was making payments, let's say the person was making payments, were they, they're still going to go into the tax?
They are, yes.
Okay, that, I'm satisfied with that unless somebody else wanted to bring more information out for the next meeting, so thank you for that.
I mean, you have to treat people equally, so I read the list, and there were some household names in there and there's some former government officials in there. So, you know, I don't know what happened, is the truth, is the truth you can prove, but certainly in my own mind, I asked the question to myself, was there leniency because certain people are in the.
Right, and that's, that's the benefit to the law, right.
You know, it, it, to wait to the last minute, the last second of the three-year statutory period, that's just fiscally irresponsible for the town. We fight all the crumbs here, we really do, we shouldn't. We need people to pay. There's a lot of people, you know, that might fall on hard times, but there are also people that, you know, they got the brand-new car in the driveway and they don't pay their other bills.
And, and my feeling is, when you're looking.
They'll take the trip and take a nice vacation. I see them in my office, I mean, I see these people as an accountant there. They're all show and they'll go, and they'll pay what they want to pay to live their lifestyle, and they let all the other stuff just.
And when you want to take into hardships into consideration, that's something you could do at foreclosure time. At, at that point, you have judgment to decide what properties you want to foreclose on, if any.
That was the discretionary piece that I was looking for.
Correct, but, but going through the process of tax title, there is no, there is no discretion.
You can withhold on foreclosure.
Yes, correct.
But we should still lien everyone so that you perfect the interest.
Ex, and we're protected if that property sells.
If it's foreclosed, it ends up in the land court, ends up in bankruptcy, we have a priority claim to the lien.
That is correct.
Without that, you, you, you're subordinate, you're nothing, you're extinguished.
Correct.
I, I agree with you, Dan, that's the way to go, and I do believe, I do believe that there, you know, there's been abuse. I, you know, I don't have a specific case, but.
You can't, we can't prove it anyways, it's conjecture.
I'm speculating.
So if the town decides to foreclose, at that point, this board could say, you know, you could set limits, you could say how many years someone's out, or, or at that point, you could decide if you wanted to put a hardship.
That foreclosure point is where you can apply the discretion.
Correct.
And that's what I was looking for. I think any than over a year, you got to lien them.
Right, and everything over a year should be, every September, I think I've said that, every September.
Every week, I mean, you're not sending them threat letters, I mean, you know, you just, you know.
We're looking at some of the names, some of the names on that list, I mean, it, it comes down to fiscal irresponsibility on their part. And also a problem with the town that they would allow those to go back, so sometimes, two thousand and two, correctly?
Correct.
And that's, that's irresponsible on the part of the town, he should have been doing something quite a while ago.
Right, because even though they were lien, those taxes that backed to two thousand and two were leaned, but they were never removed from our system, so our free cash has been hit every year for no reason, because we should not have been penalized for having those as outstanding, but we did because they weren't properly moved into tax title. All that's taken care of.
My opinion, we have.
That's the director, the finance director's job, right?
Correct.
The other guy.
I have my last opinion of the evening night. This, this board is a little weak, a little wobbly, we've got some inexperience, but we're a good board, and we don't have any personal or property or financial interests that we harbor, that would benefit from our service here. And, and, and I, you know, I commend us that we have been able to take this step because no other board has been able to do this, and we also have a great finance director that has shown us these steps, and to her credit, this was a discussion item during her interview. So this is, you know, this is not anything that this board has created, this is really a great collaboration with a new board. Like I said, we're a little weak in the knees and we're a little unruly, but we're a good board and we're able to make some tough decisions, so I'm, I'm proud of that and I'm glad that we're on this track.
And I'm unruly, Joe?
I am.
I think only Bill is unruly, I'm just kidding.
I just spot issues, it's up to people to do something.
So let's move on before we have another unruly argument. Finney, extract the time, are we at the, are we there yet?
That was it.
Okay, you all set, Ed?
Hold on.
I didn't get any selectman time.
We're moving there, we're trying to get there.
We haven't got there yet.
The whole meeting is your time.
Are you ready to do your time?
I don't know, are you all set with?
We're going to ask you about the bathrooms, the Steve Merrill email and, and the bidding process. Now, we could buy a fire engine that's one of a kind, why can't we buy a toilet that's one of a kind?
Because the fire truck vendors are on the state bid list. The green bathroom modular vendor creator is not, like I said, I haven't found. Correct, and the proposal that was written actually used the, the green bathroom specs. I mean, it had the name of the bathroom module being proposed.
So if they were on the state bid list?
If they were on the state bid list, we could buy them tomorrow.
Basically, a list of vendors and go shopping with them.
Correct.
I can't find it anywhere, no one bid on it, I can go shop off this list, is that how it works?
That is how it works.
And I learned from Ed the other night that they don't necessarily give us the best deal, is that correct?
They may not, but they, most of them have either negotiated prices with the state or a negotiated spec sheet.
Negotiated contract, which makes it easy.
Yes. Correct, for the process, you sacrifice price for process at some point.
Can we lease it to own it and get around that legally, Joe, not circumventing any of that, or being, so can we lease to own on a capital lease with a one-dollar bargain purchase at the end of the lease?
You talking about the bathroom?
Yes.
Well.
Can we lease it?
No, because town, leases have to go to town council and they're still going to require a bid, because we, when we leased the snowmobile, the sidewalk snowplow, I had to provide them.
I thought that didn't get put out for bid.
We used the state bid list, but I had to provide them proof that it was on the state bid list because they wouldn't sign the lease. Town council wouldn't sign the lease without either the three quotes or the state bid list documents.
So what's wrong with that company getting on the state bid list?
Well, as.
Well, that's a process they have to go through, it's not something that's going to happen.
Correct, they can't, right.
It's paperwork in time.
Right, that's why I said, it's, I, it's a, what I hear is it's a fairly lengthy process to, and time-consuming to get on the state bid list, but it can happen.
It would take longer for them to do that than for Steve to rewrite it and not put it so descriptive to that company.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think you're right, but.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you not write it?
Will you rewrite the bid?
Yes, I just have to try and find a way to change the specs that he gave me that actually has the model ID and documentation from.
Make a generic, like men's room, ladies' room, one bathroom, one sink.
Well, no, because we did that, he wants the modular and the green with the recycling rainwater septic system underneath. I mean, that's what he's looking at now, because we've gone out to bid three times and it hasn't worked for us.
Isn't there more than one company out there with a modular bathroom that you can put out the bid?
Modular, yes, I don't know what's out there for green modular bathrooms.
Is it Steve's, him, that wants green, or can we just, do we need a portable bathroom to get on the bid? Does it have to be green, does it have to be?
No, I don't think it has to be, but.
Well, I know, and all we're doing is confusing the issue, we just put out a generic bid.
Well, I think because it was a self-containing, yeah, it was a self-contained unit.
There's got to be more than one green company out there.
If you and far between, I mean, it was.
How fast does it have to be green?
It does not have to be, but this was a self-contained unit that had like a septic tank built in and.
I'm sure it's well thought out.
Correct, there was no plumbing needed, there was, you just drop it and use it, so.
I think in the long run, it was cheaper to buy it that way and cheaper to maintain and hook up.
If you rewrote the bid and it kind of the square peg would fit through this, is that like cheating, or is that permitted?
Well, it can't be so specific that only one company in the world can bid on it.
No, but you can leave out the description.
Correct, so we can leave it out and try and solicit prices and see if there's anyone else that wants to bid on it.
Yeah, it's close enough that you can take it.
Yes, correct.
So is that something that we can do easily and soon, or what do you think?
Yeah, well, as I had said to Steve and Dan, I mean, now I'm trying to get through, I have interviews scheduled all week long, the end of the fiscal year, the beginning of the fiscal year, I said I just need to get through these things to then go back to.
We need that administrative assistant.
I have the Washington Park people that want proposals, the cemetery people want their proposals, everyone, the cable advisory people want proposals by tomorrow, so I am trying to get them all done.
I think we should get that administrative assistant in here sooner than later.
I'm working on it.
Just so you're all aware, Steve is on his way back down.
Oh.
Just to clarify his proposal.
Steve, go on down, I think that ought to be on the front burner, because the ball's coming up and the kids play soccer there.
Let's get through the finance time, we're in finance, we're not in.
Believe me, I would like to get it out as much as you, but every time it goes out, it's more time and energy, and then we get bids back that are overbid and then we have to start all over again. And we're, every time it goes out, we're wasting money because we have to advertise and, so.
Let's go back to the finance.
Really want it to be right the next time it goes out. The only thing I really had was just, which I touched on earlier, was the interviews, so just so you know, I am interviewing this week. I believe we had eighteen-ish resumes, fifteen maybe for the administrative assistant, I think I have narrowed that down to ten. I'm interviewing ten custodian, I think I had eight, I've selected five to interview, and we had three candidates for the building inspector. So all of those interviews, except for one, is this week, I have one next Monday morning, and then that will wrap up all the interviews on all the positions, so on the meeting on the thirteenth.
State your name, please.
We will be ready to move forward with.
Home to the television?
No, I didn't.
You've got to get a life, man.
I was outside.
So on the, so on the thirteenth, we should be ready to present this board either recommendations or if you want to conduct interviews. I did ask the cleaning company to stay on one additional month because they were done as of today, and we would be stuck without a cleaning company.
If it's, if we have to and if it's okay with the board, if we need to squeeze an extra meeting in. We did that, we did that with the fire chief and we did that with Denise, we squeezed an extra Monday, Monday meetings to get all the interviews done.
Yeah, well, like the assistant to us, I mean, you said you had a legal background person, you got some other people, I'd like to see.
So we're going to, are we still in agreement as a board, Denise is going to narrow it to three on the administrative position?
I'd say five on that, Joe, how many you got, fifteen?
I think five's kind of a lot.
Can I see five and then?
You can, I mean, I just think five's a lot if we're narrowing it down to another.
You can sit in front of five people and have interviews all night?
No, you're going to have to keep one. No, you're gonna have to keep one in it, they can't interview people in a.
It's public meetings, though, they could certainly sit in here and listen to the interviews if they wanted, they're public, so.
Give everybody an hour.
Steve will listen.
Can't do five.
So, so do you wanna, so as a board?
So, I guess whatever you decide, if you want five, I'll forward five, but.
As a board, are we going three or five? Let's make that decision now, or? I'm good with three.
I'm good with three.
Ed?
I don't care.
You gotta make a decision, buddy.
I'm at five, but you know, I've been covered up empty tonight, so I might as well take twenty.
He's at five, Joe?
I'll go three.
Joe's going three?
Yeah.
Ed? I'll go with the majority, I'll go three, okay, so three it will be.
On just the administrative assistant, or is this on?
Well, I'm trying to.
Okay, sorry.
I'm trying to kick you. So are we going to sit down with the building inspector?
Well, the building inspector, I would say, I will tell you, so one is obviously our existing building inspector, one is a builder that has some ties to some, in my opinion, might be some ethical issues with existing projects, and one is an existing building inspector in another community. So, you know, I will interview, I I actually will not interview Pat Skeena again, just because I know his work and what he does here. But I will sit down with the other two, and then I would say if you would like to then interview Mr. Skeena and the top candidate of the other two, you certainly may do that and select one. Or I can forward you one, however you want to handle that.
I think that's a big deal, I think we ought to talk to all three of them.
Okay, if that's what the board wants.
One of them really, we, one of them has ethics problems, like.
Well, I mean, they, you'd have to, you'd have to, right, maybe a conflict of interest issue.
It'll come up.
I mean, I'd let him defend himself, I mean, I'm more of a judge, but.
You know, if we say, me, I said three, I mean three, I agree, we should interview all three.
Okay, so all three come in for the building inspector?
That might be, you got four then.
I'm good with that, Joe's good with that, Mike, you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Three?
Three.
Okay, okay.
That's all you got.
Now we're going down to the maintenance. Maintenance person, you got maintenance person coming in, all set, okay? Are we gonna, are we gonna get into interviewing them, or do you?
I'll, I'll let Denise crack down.
I mean, my personal opinion is you shouldn't be interviewing.
I'm good.
Mid-level, you should be dealing with executive level staff, is my opinion.
So that would be just the building inspector, not even?
Yes, department heads would be, would really who you would interview multiple candidates and select, would be my opinion, yes.
Right, the others we should not, right.
So I'm good not being involved in the maintenance person. Ed? Sure, in involved, or out, not involved?
No, no, I, I.
Joe, not involved?
Yeah, not involved, and.
Mike, not involved?
Not involved.
And also.
Involved or uninvolved?
I mean, I still have no problem sending you the resumes and explaining the process, but, I know, I would exclude you from that.
It's all up to you.
That's a good idea.
I just don't want to see him to, for my other concerns.
Yep, and I have no problem doing that, but I will exclude Joe, and I will explain to the process.
Just for awareness.
Alright, so are you good with?
I want to be excluded to stick very strictly to the advice of council, but it's.
On what?
On not receiving information, personnel information.
No, I don't think we should.
Yes, I read your statement at the last meeting, so.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna, when the person comes in front of us, we're gonna talk to them, but.
No, the discussion at the last meeting was that you would all receive resumes.
You're gonna receive resumes.
Beforehand.
You're not gonna have the person sit here.
Well, I would still have anyone come here on the night of the appointment, but.
The candidate.
Correct, but Dan had asked, and the board voted, to receive the resumes a week beforehand of all candidates, and that's when I had said that town council said that's fine, but that information is strictly confidential and cannot be disseminated.
So when I was away, I, I had a statement.
So he chose to.
I understand.
Because I would have voted to abstain from that, that's all.
So.
I don't need the resumes.
It's just a procedural thing, so, whatever your comfortable level is.
And it's okay to delete that, right?
Delete the email?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, it would still be public record on our server, but yes, you may delete it on your side.
You can, you can delete it, yeah, you can delete it at home, wherever.
Okay.
Well, we'll still, the people we're interviewing, obviously, will get the, uh.
Yes, the people you're interviewing, you would get.
Yeah, but the purpose of that, in my mind, was that, how can we, I mean, we can defer to Denise if she's gonna be the HR services, and you can trust in that.
Yeah.
In the interest of caution, Denise isn't a part of this, it's the old boys, I want to make sure there's no cronyism and all that, are we hiring just Grovelanders?
Right.
Yeah, but we have Grovelanders going to the, only to the, to the project, the Bagnell summer program, it's.
I support that, I, I'm.
Right, regardless of what the process, you should still be interviewing department heads.
So when it comes to the teenage kids at the Bagnell program, I support the the townyism there, you know, but.
You're a real townie.
You should always, you should.
When he wants to be a townie, but he doesn't, he doesn't want to be, he doesn't want to be a townie.
Otherwise, it's no good.
He's a townie when he wants to be a townie.
You should always, you should always interview department heads, regardless of who's here, that should always be your role.
We have a five-member board, if you want to engage in that level, I think you should, and I'm comfortable that you are, and that helps me make my decision even better, even easier not to get involved.
Department head, the big jobs, we should know who's coming and going.
Yes, you are, we should be involved in that.
Department heads, yes, absolutely.
But also, if we hire somebody, we should know if they, they got a family member in town, cousin Ed.
I agree.
We should know, I want to know, are they getting the job because they live next door?
I'm good.
Okay.
I agree.
So we're gonna go to selectmen's time?
I want to make a suggestion that in the interest of time, that we just not have selectmen's time, we let Steve talk about the bathroom project.
Well, I gotta talk a little bit. It's not gonna be long.
It's not gonna be long either.
If you want to talk about time in the meetings, I say that we shouldn't start at six thirty, we should start back at six o'clock, because.
Well, at this rate, we should start at three.
Well, I know, but I mean, there's been a lot of, a lot of information.
That extra half hour is not gonna make much of a difference, because.
I want to start at seven thirty.
Okay.
We need to control the meet, not, I'm not saying you, we need to control, we need to control ourselves a little bit better. Like I said, we're a little unruly, but that's okay, we're passionate. But we can't, we can't oppose that extra half hour, because our main IT guy here can't get there.
Alright, so, so the point, the point I'll make.
Well, we can do what we did on the school committee, we had to take a vote to go beyond ten o'clock, and sometimes we couldn't, the vote was no.
Okay, okay, so maybe, maybe if we have a lot on the agenda, and there's a lot coming up, we can add another night to try and cut, cut the nights down.
All in favor of that.
Okay, okay. Alright, so we're, we're on selectmen's time, I know everyone's getting anxious.
Actually, can I say one more thing? So just, you brought up something about the next meeting, so just so you know, the next agenda is already quite full. And one of those items, just to give you a heads up, is the earth removal permit renewal for Mr. Angelini. That has to come before the board annually, and in a technicality, the permit last year was dated July sixteenth or fourteenth, even though it wasn't finalized until December. But the date on his permit is July fourteenth, so it's been advertised, we have to hold a public hearing, this board has to hold a public hearing. And at that point, that would be when you could make any suggested changes to that permit, but that is a public hearing at the next meeting.
We'll get it in advance to be able to read it.
Yes.
Okay.
What, what does that have to, does that have anything to do with the contract?
So each year, Mr. Angelini has to come before you to renew that earth removal permit. It's technically the water department that's coming before you, because it's their permit.
Do we have to?
I think you'd want to.
Well, I think in his purchase and sale, it was a five-year, but you still have to do it annually.
Every year, it had to be, it had to be renegotiated.
Part of the original gravel permit.
Okay.
It's required.
It's required to be done annually, but I know, I don't know what the five-year.
Remember that now, yeah.
Or if the board says no, was that a breach of the agreement, I mean, what is it?
That's kind of procedural more than anything.
Yeah.
I don't know, I will tell you, we have had some neighbors starting to complain about the work being done, so you may actually have a crowd show up to.
I'll say one thing, I'll say one thing, not that I'm trying to throw a wrench in this, it's an easy fix, but I can tell you, when that permit was issued, the trucks would have gone to that driveway and take a left, I can tell you, all day long, from night sharp, I've been seeing up and downs.
That's not the issue, the issue is the amount of trees that he's taking down, that's the problem, that the neighbors have been complaining about, so.
Those trees are part of a re.
So we'll discuss that when the time comes.
Some of those trees are part of a reclamation.
I'm voting on that, though, I want to clarify, what are our obligations?
You don't have to vote at the next meeting.
Under the contract.
Yes, I, I will have to find that, you don't have to vote at the next meeting, but you have to actually open the hearing. You can continue it to the following meeting if you need more information.
Continue with that and find out what our responsibility is.
What are our rights and obligations under the agreement?
I, I have to go back and look at the purchase and sale to see if that's mentioned in there. Like I said, it's with, it's actually with the water department, so it's the water department that will be coming before you. I'm sure Mr. Angelini, I'm sure their engineer, Woody Cammott, will be part of it, because he was involved in the original permit.
Well, and just in preparation, maybe the, maybe the board in conservation should go out there and do a, a site walk through the property.
Find out what's going on.
If I don't, yeah, exactly.
What happened?
No, we know what's going on, and he's in full compliance, the people didn't pay attention, they never came to any of the hearings. And it, and it always happens when the bulldozers start rolling, people start complaining, that's what happens. You know, he's not doing anything that he isn't supposed to out there.
He's in compliance.
You're, you're keeping an eye on it, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Interesting.
We're on the selectmen's time, which everyone's gonna frown when I say this, but Steve won't, but eight o'clock on the thirteenth, I was gonna have that discussion with the board, with the board, for the rec, but it sounds like we're too full right now?
I don't know, you and I sat down and looked at the agenda last week.
And I wrote down, eight o'clock on the thirteenth, to have the discussion about the rec.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's on there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I think you put that on there, yeah.
Thirteenth of July, we're gonna talk about recreation.
Amongst us?
Yeah, I understand.
And amongst, what we need to do, and then we're gonna have them come in afterwards, remember, we had to have this conversation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, so we're, we're good with that.
Can I just, do you, Mike, do you think an hour for that public hearing is enough time, given the neighbors? Okay, so then eight o'clock is fine.
Okay, so that's taken care of. So Mike, you wanted to?
I'm giving my time to Steve, so he can get out of here.
So what are we, what are we talking about on the bathrooms? I've talked to Denise about the, the contract, she said we have to do some rewording of the contract with the, well, the specifications. I mean, it's, it's mostly generic now, throwing out the word Durango being the name of it, that's fine. We can, I can rip it apart and just take off whatever I think is close, but there's gonna be some things in there that, I mean, when we looked at all the different projects, it is, it's the green, the, the reason why we're going with the septic system being with all, all-in-one, all-inclusive building is because we just don't have the funding to go from point A to point B with the se- the sewer system at this time. I just want to get this project in, and then we can worry about how we're gonna connect later on, if we decide to.
So what I would recommend is if you're willing to handle that part of it, you really need to take those drawings and put it into a narrative. Explain what we're looking for, the module, male, female, septic tank underneath, sort of describe it, we just can't use those drawings. So if you can, you can come up with a spec sheet, then we can go to market with that.
We can't use the drawings even if we pulled off all the information, that does kind of weird, because, I mean, I can do a generic, I can pull a generic drawing off of anything and pull it out and put it on.
I, I have to look at them once everything's off of it, to see if it's something that we could use.
So the septic system.
Yeah.
Are you gonna, is it, how much is it gonna cost to put a septic system in for this thing?
The septic, it's all-inclusive, it's all.
All in the price of the unit.
Right, you know, if you want to know, like, companies up here, right now, the closest one to us is Amesburg, Shea, and, and they're, they're like ninety, ninety-five thousand for the base, the base cost one with, that, that's the base, without any septic system with it. That's just a connection where you, you tie in to a sewer system, so you're talking expensive.
And you can.
We looked at that first, and, and, you know, and Greg LeBreck and myself, we went through the whole thing, that's why they're doing, they should be doing one for down here, because that was planned on the project.
It's even too expensive for there, so.
So.
So there you go.
So what I'm saying to you is, this unit, it's gonna have its own leaching field, tank, nope, self-contained, it's.
Self-contained.
It's like a cement slab.
So somebody comes out and pumps it once or twice a month, or whatever?
It's once a year, it's a decent size, yeah.
Once a year, pump, okay, okay.
And, and that was my question, and then if you wanted to, if we could later, you can tie it into town.
I wouldn't see why not, it's a self-contained system where we, I think we could figure out a way.
If you have funds next year or the year after, you can just tie it.
You can tie it into the town.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that would, you'd go to a mechanical engineer and say, this is what we've got, tell us how you can change it into connecting to the sewer system.
That sounds.
They must have a connection on, I'm sure, somewhere.
The only question that they had, and I think they're trying to get a hold of you, is the combis, or what, it's very, the state sucks, excuse my language, but they do, when it comes to certain things. They just need to know exactly where they gotta go for where you want them to sign up for the state bid list.
But I don't know that, I don't know how to get on the state bid list, other than it's a process.
And that's the thing, is I, I don't either, and I work for the state, I work for Mass.
Yeah, there should be a, it should be on the mass.gov, how to register as, as a supplier, I don't know where.
Well, it's under combis, it's under their site, combis, but.
Combis also states, within, if you look at some of the reading, it says, they don't have to be on that until after a bid goes out, and they get, they get approved.
Right.
So you tell me what you want to do here, I, I, they're saying that they're more than willing to do it, whatever you want them to do, but they just don't know what the hell we want them to do.
Right, but just so it's clear, it's not our bid, it would, we have to be something the state puts out to bid, and then they would put them on the list, if that, if they take that process, it's not something I can control, so.
But that's, that's what I'm looking for right now, is, because the both gentlemen that, that are interested in bidding on this, they're, they're sitting there saying, just tell me where I gotta sign, and I'll start the process, but they, they don't know where to start. And they've went through the whole website as well, I've sat there, and it's, it's very, it seems like it's, it's a no-brainer, but then all of a sudden, you look for the list, and you can't find it where you can sign on.
I have to be on the state bid list every year, I sign up for it, I'll ask my wife tomorrow.
There you go, if you can tell me the.
I have, I have, maybe I, I get on the state bid list, so I, I'll see how she does it.
Yeah, just tell me how, and I'll put them on.
They want to make it difficult, so that's all.
You have to fill out, it's like.
Well, they want to make sure you want to do it.
It's this one form, probably, it takes thirty seconds.
It's simple, it's very simple to get on, I know, it's like two or three pages.
It is, it's not a tedious process.
But maybe it's different when it comes to merchandise.
And his email, grab his email.
Yeah, I have Steve's email.
I want it all union prevailing wage stuff, that's all they want, union jobs, that's it.
We're doing more of a labor construction, and they're doing selling, I don't know.
It's a, while they're constructing a, a building, so.
No, I mean, it should be the same thing, then.
And just so you understand, we went through every single process, we went to.
Yeah, I don't think a Monday meeting can go into Tuesday.
Where do you attack everybody, there's, there's nothing that's gonna be cheaper.
Man, you gotta hit it four thirty.
Alright, so.
I think we need a bylaw change if a Monday meeting goes into Tuesday.
Call the Teamsters or something.
After I do, you can.
Does anyone have any under selectmen's time anymore, under selectmen's time?
I'm just gonna plant the seed for somewhere down the road, okay?
I can hear this.
I want to reel it in.
Welcome, Steve.
Where is that draft that Jim Free did on the, on the zoning bylaws, did that go to the law firm, is it in the black hole, what happened to it?
To my knowledge, it's with town council, but that was not handled by me, so, but I believe it was with town council.
Can we get it back?
Well, I think, I think their understanding was they had until next year's town meeting to make all their proposed changes.
I don't think it's, I think it's so premature on that, we never had hearings on it, the board of selectmen met on a Saturday or two. I think that the big picture, the zoning bylaws should be part of a comprehensive review of zoning in town.
Okay.
And have town input.
And have town input, and we, you know, we heard tonight, you know, maybe we need a committee for the Satter Street project to, you know, solicit input from the town, or what, people, just brainstorm. I'd like to see a town brainstorm on, maybe there's some people that live on Main Roads, Salem Street, some other routes. Maybe they would want to consider changing residential to retail, or office, or some business use.